There we go. Does that sound good? Good afternoon, everyone. A call to order the work session for the Albemarle County Planning Commission. And it is March twenty twenty, it's twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, a lot of twenty fives. I'll start with establishing a quorum. Could we have the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Vivens.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Clayborne is.
Walking down the.
Walking in the door.
Good time.
Right now.
All right. With that, we'll go into the work session for CPA twenty twenty one dash two AC forty four comp plan facilities and infrastructure. I'll turn it over to Stack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Benish, Development Process Manager. We're going to go over the community facilities chapter of the comprehensive plan today.
Well, if we give more volume, I can't hear too well from my. Speaker, but it's not you personally yelling.
How's that?
Oh, there we go.
And I, I need that. All right. Thank you. So we're going to start off by going over some general feedback on what we heard. The planning commission previously on the community facilities plan, some of the community input, then a very quick overview, since this is a pretty long chapter, I'll just hit some highlights. Talk about the upcoming schedule and then we do have a couple of focus questions for you that we'd like to go through with you. And give a quick heads up to what those questions are, as you may have read. Through the objectives, objective one is intended to be sort of an overarching objective and those actions are to apply across all facilities. So we want to make sure that you're kind of comfortable with. What's in that or whether anything's missing as it might apply to all facilities. And then one of the sort of subtle or not so subtle changes within this chapter is a little bit more. Guidance as to when public facilities can be in the rural areas. So we want to check in and make sure we get your feedback on those two areas. Generally, we'd like to just go through and maybe get your observations on all the objectives and actions, but if you could keep those two focus points in mind as we go through them. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we are going to be joined by FES staff to help us answer some of these questions. I think Jeff Dumars is going to be late.
Just for those people online, FES.
Are they online? Oh, Facilities and Environmental Services, sorry. Yeah, that's a department here in the county. And they work with a lot of the public agencies in developing their facilities. So they hopefully will be here shortly. I did also want to point out that we work pretty closely with each agency in developing these sections. So. We did not invite them or require them to be at this meeting just for efficiency sake. I think we'll try to field your questions and answer as best we can. And we'll get back with those agencies as necessary for things we can't answer. And certainly input from you, the commission and the public will get back to them as we fine tune this chapter. So what did we previously hear from the planning commission? One was that public water and sewer connections for housing was important. For properties within the development area that aren't connected or nearby properties adjacent to the development area. We tried to address that through some of the actions. In Objective Two. We also heard that there were a need for other places, sort of community center and meeting places, things that were not work or home, where communities could get together. We tried to address that in this section and also in other sections of the chapters of the comprehensive plan. Consider wireless service to public parks as a safety issue, and we've addressed that as an action in the plan. Other comments that we heard have been. How we've addressed those have actually been within other chapters of the plan. Actions to address natural hazard mitigation. Criteria, objectives and actions addressing solar. And local food systems have wound up in our resilient communities chapter. So we feel like those comments we had previously heard during the community facilities this chapter has been addressed in that chapter. Themes from the public, more library services, potentially more mobile services in the rural area or some type of services serving the rural area. Concern with school capacity and transportation to schools, bus access. More recycling options within the county and better education incentives regarding how to recycle and reuse and better treat our managers on the waste. Improve options for access to community facilities. That is addressed here with some actions, but is also going to be addressed in our transportation sections and in our. Development area land use section of the plan. That's more walking, biking options and transit. And options to single occupant vehicles. Community themes continue with improved stormwater management and flood control. Low impact development was heard ensure adequate water supply and. Concerns remain with potential drought conditions and how to be prepared for those concerned with above ground power lines and losing power during storms. And address failing systems, excuse me, septic systems. Especially when they could impact public water supplies. And that has been specifically addressed in the stewardship chapter, and I believe in the rural areas, but land use plan chapter as well, definitely in the stewardship chapter. Goal statement, I won't read through it here, but we feel like the goal statement is consistent with the county's mission as it relates to public service provision. If you have questions or comments about that, we'll certainly welcome that goals statement. We got a number of objectives in this chapter, and I'm not going to read through all of them here. There's eleven total. As I. Alluded to earlier, the first one is a set, an objective and a set of actions that's intended to be kind of overarching for all facilities. And then the other objectives sort of address specific areas or clusters of types of facilities. So there's an objective and actions for public water and sewer, for library services for schools. Emergency services, which is police, fire and communications. We have a section on broadband as well as cell cellular service. We have one for communications and electric and other utilities. These are non-county types of utilities, public but or. Probably nonprofit type utilities. For stormwater management, and then we have three that sort of address climate action and resiliency. So the themes. In this plan, as it relates to the two thousand fifteen plan, the themes that continue is that the objection, objectives and actions. Are focused in on implementing the growth management policy and recommendations of the. Development area in the rural area and. Probably for all of us here, in our experience, we're aware that the provision of community facilities and infrastructure remains one of the primary implementation tools for growth management policy. Where you locate those facilities or where you don't can guide growth. So decisions are. And guidelines are important to implementing our growth management policy. The plan has always had some level of flexibility to allow for a location of public health and safety services throughout the whole county, but. Not in much specificity or detail, a little bit more cryptically, but that theme continues and is actually enhanced in this plan. The areas of change from the prior plan is greater clarity and allowance for public health and safety facilities in the rural areas. Or the comments are a little bit more overt that allows them and encourages them in strategic locations. Greater allowance for serving rural populations, again, those first two bullets. There is a greater recognition that private central water and sewer system maintenance may be an issue or is becoming an issue in the county. Those are private systems, but are considered quite a kind of quote public because they serve more than one or two users. They serve communities. And those communities think of them as public services that serve those communities. And there are emerging issues with those, and that's sort of a new emphasis in this plan. The other thing is the depth of detail in this plan. There's fewer actions related to service standards and operational issues where previously we had. Officers per capita standards, which are really more operational issues, and those agencies deal with the board of supervisors more directly and in budget processes in a frequency that's a little bit. Quicker than a conference of plan or more often than a conference of plan. So we've stepped back from that level of detail in this, in this version of the. Community facilities chapter. So that's the overview of this section. What we have upcoming are. As it relates to other aspects of the conference of plan is the development area land use and community design guidelines. Continued discussion with the board is scheduled for April second. We also have the thriving economy, which you heard just recently, going along with this section at the same time. With the board on April sixteenth. And those are the, and again, community facilities, both with thriving economy are going to be held at that same time. So that's the overview of other things going on with AC forty four. We also have. The public engagement opportunities that will be taking place. So trying to keep us on schedule here, I'll try to wrap up the, these are the, once again, the sort of focus topics. That I mentioned before, I think perhaps the best approach here since the first focus question is objective one. Perhaps a good way to go through this review would be to just begin with answering any questions you have generally about the format. Anything you've heard here, but then maybe just stepping through each objective and action and getting your input on those. That objective one being that one is the overarching standard and through throughout one and some of the other sections. Of the chapter, there are the recommendations regarding rural areas that you can comment on. So that would be my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, and I'm done. I'll answer any sort of general questions you have, or we can go right into objective one.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, that's great stuff. So. Why don't we start with a typical, as you suggested also, just go through to see if there are any questions in general about any of the. Formats before we get into, or any of the sort of preamble before we get into the implementation section. Did anybody have any clarifying questions? You can start with Commissioner Moore.
I was wondering. If and where it's addressed, some of the hazard mitigation you mentioned is added, although I think I lost track of exactly where that is. And just kind of where we're emphasizing in here, how we adapt to climate change disasters, whether it's strong storms, flash flooding. Are the most likely wildfires, maybe a number two.
Yeah, I think that was mostly addressed in the environmental stewardship and. Oh, the resilient community chapter.
All right, thanks.
And I can, we can grab those if you want to, someone else can come up, but that's.
I've got access. I just, yeah.
Most of those initiatives were moved to that.
Clarity on the delineation. Thank you.
Great. Christopher Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Good to see you this evening. I just have a couple of questions on, on sort of on page. Two, where we go through the eleven objectives and just trying to get some clarity there. If this is the time to talk about, should they be mixed? So on objective six, it kind of looks like objective six could be with ten, since you're talking about. Service providers, or no, excuse me, nine, could be with nine, so coordinate with service providers, ensure adequate and reliable communications, electric and other things, or at least on the document I have. It looks like six and six is about service providers, and so does nine look like a service provider. So could you just sort of collapse those two together and put them together there?
Yeah, you could. I think broadband had been separated because we had a broadband authority, which had a particular directive. That their directive has pretty much been achieved. So arguably, that broadband service is provided by private providers. It could be combined.
I was just thinking, given that, okay.
There's actually, there's several objectives here that were brought out as objectives because there was some level of importance.
Right.
To them, particularly the resilient, the ones I've termed resilient ones that could also be compressed. So there's some massaging that could be done.
So, so is that when you say that one, are we talking about objective seven, which looks like it could be combined with objective ten? Because it's all in the, in the, in the document that I've received, it has objective ten, blah, 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 and then it has seven. Reduced green, it looks like it's repeated the objective seven bit.
It is, yeah.
So, so just put one together and make it just objective ten or make it objective seven.
It was a level of importance of that objective was raised, but yes, they, they can also be combined.
And then Chair, I appreciate the having the conversation about equitable, because that was running through this whole thing. That was the underlying comment, that was my underlying, lying sort of equation that I was trying to balance. How do we do, and this is not equity and what's being banned from the people up north. This is equity, how do we balance between sort of the rural part of the community and the development and thinking about? How do we do that? Since it also seems in public hearings, often we get people who are residents of the rural part of our, of our community. Who want services that feel as if they, at another point in time, not necessarily going forward, but at another point in time, there'd been some attempt to sort of. To limit what those types of services in, in the, in the rural part of our community. And I think we may be reaching a point where some of that. May, we may not be as frozen in our restrictions as we used to be.
That's true. Fire and rescue have been increased in the rural area. And also even in the evenings, when most of those accidents are happening.
That's right. That's exactly what I was thinking about. I was thinking about that also.
And police too.
Yeah. And I was also thinking about some of the investments that have been made in rural schools and sort of what's, you know, that's not us, that's the school system, but eventually it is the supervisors because they're the ones who. Who apply a CIP to doing some of that. And so the whole idea is where does that investment? I know everybody's saying, oh, I'm not trying to say that the rural school should not have an investment. So everybody who just got all up and down on your phones, please put it down. But it's about how do you balance a limited amount of resources between these two jurisdictions? Because I think that's really basically when you talk about equity, that's what you're talking about. What's the formula that the supervisor and asking us as we walk through this? To think about what's the equation that you're asking us to balance when we look at some of these, particularly around community and infrastructure? Because that's the, that's the global public good, I think.
Yeah, you're talking about specifically the piece related to equity.
Right. How do we do?
Yeah.
And I just think one comment since we're, we're on getting on sort of that objective six, objective seven, objective ten, objective nine. Come combination, because I was tracking with you on six and nine, that makes sense. Because nine still says coordinate with providers to ensure adequate and reliable communications, because I think even though we've made progress, right, we're not really done. In this, under the heading of broadband access.
Broadband, we're about ninety seven to ninety eight percent done.
Really?
Yeah. So the next step is to ensure quality and the upgraded service, but actually there's better service in the rural area than some of the development areas.
That's true. That's true.
Now it's sort of balancing that service is sort of the next step. But yes, that I don't remember exactly, but we're, they're close to have met that goal that was set for the authority of.
They said by the end of twenty twenty five, they would have.
That's great.
That's what staff said.
Is that all a firefly?
It's a combo. And that's good, because as we know, the people up north have just said, everybody should go with Starlink, and that's just like, somebody, please save me. I wish I could have a monopoly like that.
And then on, but the only place where I might differ a little bit is on objectives ten and number seven. They feel different to me more so.
But do you see, do you see the seven on ten, go to objective ten?
Oh, you're saying just take that off.
I wouldn't. Functionally combine them or, or take that one, the second message.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you. My point is that urban stormwater management, drainage and flood control is still an issue, even the standpoint of like resilience.
Yes.
And reducing greenhouse gas emissions from local government and school facilities feels different to me, but I get it.
I think it was a typo.
It's literally a typo.
I would just remove seven from that part.
Okay, easy, easy. Got it. All right. Sounds good. Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, the only thing, I agree with some of the comments that have been made. But, you know, looking at the goal statement, I noticed that, you know, we have. You know, we have resilience and we mentioned climate action plan, but there's nothing that specifically calls out sustainability. It's sort of referenced in there, but I think it would be nice for in the goal statement for there to be something about sustainability, because I think that is an important thing that, that does occur in a lot of the objectives that you're doing, but it's not, not in the goal.
Okay. So in that sense, so even though objective nine talks about utilities that are resilient to impacts of climate change and blah, 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 blah. You're suggesting that maybe there's a general climate change objective in addition to the climate change. The, the separate section on climate change, or how does that all, I'm just wondering how that all fits together.
You're speaking to the goal statement, correct? Just in the, just in the goal statement.
No, I was just speaking to the goal statement and.
Not the objectives?
Not, not to the objective.
Okay, my bad.
I mean, I think that they. I think there can be some reorganization of the objectives to make them more clear. Some of the concepts have already been, been made, some consolidation, but I mean, otherwise I, I'm fine with the objectives.
Commissioner Clayborne?
Sure. Thank you. I was curious if you could explain a little bit about maybe the agency we have, particularly around the public schools? And how we're starting to frame that, like, where's our, where's our agency? Where's that stop and start? I would see things such as, you know, the maintenance of facilities or. Things like anything to do with the construction of the building. Is that really us or is that the school system? I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that.
Well, within the time that we have, there's a couple. I think. The schools really, the school board really pretty much governs what decisions are made about those facilities. I think there's in, in. There is interaction regarding the budget with the school, with the board of supervisors, but it's largely the school board. And their facilities management, they look at land use and try to adhere to our land use and location guidance. We have had in the past, if you look at the current comprehensive plan, there's about three pages worth of design guidelines for schools. But there are just issues with school size, security. That make implementation of those difficult and generally those decisions are left with the school board and the design. So we focus more on where the schools are going to be. There are infrastructure recommendations, again sidewalks, access, like, you know, connectivity to the schools. There are some standards for school size that we would encourage, but it's more related to infrastructure access and location.
Okay, that's helpful, because when I was looking at the objectives and actions, I'm not sure how much we're getting to this now, since we're at the preamble. But a couple of them stood out to me as like, oh, can we really do that? So it might be one of those things when we get there, we can just talk through, you know, does that belong here or is that? What's we're looking for? Aspirational, maybe. So.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of. General comments. So in the organization, when I, so when I looked through the objectives, you know, everything is fairly clear, I agree, was the comments that have been made. I, I then expected that the. The document, the body would, would somewhat follow, and it does to some degree, but not all of them. So all these objectives are not in the body. So I just want, maybe. We were talking a little bit, like, for instance, nine, the coordination of, you have the broadband, so you talk about broadband, but you don't talk about. The electrical grid. So there, there are some things, it doesn't follow the. The logic of the objectives. I just wanted to.
Some background information in the front doesn't correspond to some of the objectives.
Correct. I mean, it's, it, a lot of them are in here, right? So you, you have, you know, you, you have stormwater, you have. You have the wireless, you have solid waste management. You have a lot of the components of them, but they're not organized the same way. And I, I guess when I was first, I was, I thought I was going to go one, two, three. And you had a write-up for each of the objectives that you were summarizing here.
Right.
So just wondering your thoughts on that.
Some of them, we, the emergency services, we did combine three components into one there. Others were objectives that were, I, I think, topic areas that were addressed in other chapters that maybe we didn't emphasize in the, in the front section. We, we can take a look at that and see if. There is some missing continuity.
Is there something specific that you're seeing? Make sure we're.
Well, I do think there are some things that are missing that you don't get, for instance, the, the energy grid and resilience around the, the energy grid and power. And sometimes we take it for granted. And there are some areas of both the rural areas and the development areas. That are better served and they can be backfed. If you lose a line, you can regain it and, and so forth. So I know that you're coordinating that. I would also say that there's a heightened, I, I would, well, I would encourage a heightened coordination. Because of the demand that we're going to see on power. In Virginia, in, in general, but even in our, in our county in the next five to 10 years. So it's, it's actually not even 20 years, but. Even in the next five years, we're going to see an enormous amount of demand. So, so not only looking at capacity, but then the resilience, because it's not, it's not. It certainly is not equal throughout. Throughout the county and where you, you can be backfed or not backfed and so forth. So that's one that I saw that was missing. And, and again, I was looking for it because I, I saw it in the objectives. And that's one of the ones that triggered it for me, but I'm sure there may be others. And I couldn't quite find it in the write-up, any kind of description of that.
Basically adding a little more discussion in the upper part about that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, or at least make sure that they're all being covered in some, at least at some level in, in the document, the objectives that you're putting in the front. And then just another, just for my edification. So when, when we're talking about low impact development for, for county facilities. How, so how does that differ in terms of the requirements from a typical development?
I can answer it.
Yeah.
If you notice in a lot of our development applications where they talk about, when we do talk about stormwater. They talk about the fact that they'll be doing volume controls and doing off-site credits for water quality. And so there's kind of two parts to answer your question. The sort of low impact development also tries to treat water quality onsite. So for example, the rain garden that we have here at the county parking lots, treating the volume and the quality of the stormwater instead of buying credits from somewhere else. So. Kind of more fully treating the pollutant. And then low impact development is smaller scale. Stormwater management closer to the source, rather than say, a large stormwater pond or dispersed treatment that lies on underground pipes that are expensive. So in other words, a series of small rain gardens placed around a facility means you don't need to have all that piping. You don't need to, it might not even be discharged to a stream because it's all absorbed on site. So it's a more environmentally sustainable way to go. So that'd be, sorry if that was long.
No, no, that's my bad. I thought the Chesapeake Water Act now required us to do both quantity and quality.
We can buy offsite credits, so I can sit here and pollute the stream right here, but I can buy credits in some. Wetland, you know, miles and miles away and wreck my local stream, in my opinion. So it's, it's, and this was, no one cares at this point, but. Years ago, when they updated the stormwater law, the committee that wrote the law wrote this and this and this. And when it got to the legislature. Somewhere in the nefarious processes they made, or, or, or. And so that's how water quality be, so anyway, we have a very, our, our laws now for stormwater management are very watered down from what they were 15 years ago.
Yeah, and just.
Yeah, and, and just to add, to just add something to that, the, the distance, this credit's gonna be traded is, is really huge. I mean, you're talking, it's, it's almost Northern Virginia or almost to Richmond. Um, it's, it's two hydrological units, right?
Yeah.
Um, so it's, um, so I mean, the, the, the impacts are occurring here, but the mitigation is, is nowhere near here.
So, and certainly the, the water management is one, when I, when I read low impact development, certainly that's one. But there's also a lot of other ways, uh, where are you sourcing your materials? Where are they coming from? Where? So what is the impact of that development overall? And so I'm just wondering if you guys had some specific guidelines for county buildings versus other buildings that you're following. I mean, it could be, could be lead, could be lead buildings.
We have a green rooftop on this building, but do we have a, a policy to try to put green rooftops on other county buildings in the future?
Right. I just, I guess I'm just wondering, what is the overall approach to your low impact development? Do, do you have it codified somewhere or just something you're working on?
I don't think I can speak to that directly. I think, yeah, thank you.
No, yeah. Okay. Hi, Greg Harper, uh, Chief of Environmental Services. Um, I just wanted to, um, let you all know that there, there has been, um, development of some draft policies that we're considering adopting within FES and other departments that would, um, address, um, buildings, um, our fleet and kind of like the way we manage landscapes to make all of those things more sustainable. So we're looking at, um, some policies and some plans to, um, to, 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 I guess, build buildings in a more sustainable way. Um, looking at lead or green buildings, or there's a third one that's I think for, for Virginia. I forget what it's called, Gold Globe.
What? I don't know.
But, um, so anyway, just to let you know that it's, I guess, not written into this comp plan update, but it's, it's something that we're considering internally.
So maybe we should have a, a more in our comp plan to support what you're already trying to do.
Yeah, we're, we're sort of at the consideration stage and not the adoption stage, but, um, we can, I can talk with the planners more about this and perhaps incorporate something into the comp plan.
Our comp plan is sufficiently vague at this point that I think we give you some policy backing.
Yeah, I, I think some of the dialogue with particularly this section of the plan is the balance between detail that needs to sustain itself in a five, 10-year, 20-year plan and what is a little bit higher level guidance that says we're doing actions that recognizes the work that other agencies are doing. So we can certainly look at whether they, we can add some level of specificity, but, um, from what I understand and what I think I heard Greg saying, there, there's still kind of internal work on what specifically those are.
Could I jump in though on that point? I mean, one of my comments was gonna be that this is the infrastructure chapter and some of you will not be surprised to hear me say that I think we should mention green infrastructure. All right. And we could specifically address natural infrastructure. So for example, I'm not gonna ask you to write this in the plan. I'm just saying like, for example, one large mature oak tree can soak up thousands of gallons of water per tree per year. Multiply that by all the large mature canopy trees. That's a lot of water that are protecting. And as we grow and develop and we pave, we're getting less of that, we're getting more runoff. So, you know, talking about harnessing and utilizing natural infrastructure and, you know, talking about green infrastructure. If you, I owe Mariah some definitions she asked me for, for green infrastructure or something else she's working on. Yes, I know I'm late, tardy, bad me. But, um, I could provide something simultaneously to you that you could put a paragraph or two in here because I think we should mention it. And we have green infrastructure right outside this building. You know, we have, um, lots of opportunities and we should just state it.
Yeah. Um, I think that was part of the intent of, uh, objective 11, decrease environmental sustainable management practices in the county.
Yeah, I'd like to call it out more specifically and, and maybe explain how important it is to have this.
Perhaps the background section that alludes to what.
Yeah, I'd be happy to write a few paragraphs.
Yeah.
And they were trying to keep the comp plan short, but it, to Greg's point that he was making a moment ago. And, and literally all around our county. And we did a better job of it in the past, to be honest, when we had a certain water manager employed here, and you know who I'm talking about. Um, working with developers, getting them to put in rain gardens, getting them to do all this, but, um, I just think that we're doing it, but why can't we say it and continue to say that for the future? Cause if we want to be resilient, then we should be using these natural systems as much as possible. And I'll just also say really quick, and then I'll get off my soapbox, that, uh, if, if you, if you have, if you preserve a grove of trees, that's a heck of a lot cheaper than taking them out and then building some constructed green infrastructure. So I work with developers all the time to minimize footprint. So I just, anyway, I won't go on and on, but I think we should at least say green infrastructure in here and have a paragraph to explaining what that is.
Yeah, and maybe with cross-references where we have mentioned that in other sections.
Yeah, and that could be fine too. That could be fine, but it just struck me like this is the infrastructure section and we haven't talked at all about nature as infrastructure.
Well, I, I think there's a, there's a convergence, crosswalk, what have you too, in terms of, you know, um, you know, you mentioned trees, about green streets, you know, and I think about a good example is, is Croze. We have, they've done a great job of, you know, including native plants and stormwater management as part of the, the streetscape and, and Croze. Um, and I don't know whether that falls in this chapter or this falls in transportation, maybe transportation, but, um, but I'd like to see more of it.
Yeah, it's the infrastructure of stormwater management in the street and what, what's going on in Croze is beautiful, but we're not necessarily routinely doing that everywhere. Hardly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just really a follow-on on, on, um, Firehawk, Commissioner Firehawk's point and, and, and the one that I was bringing up, uh, with the, with the low impact development. I mean, w- we're saying all the right things in here, right? I mean, we're using the right terminology and saying the right things that we wanna, how we wanna move the county forward. I, I do think that it's helpful to, to actually have some tangible examples.
Yes.
Here's, here's how you achieve this. And that's why I asked, do we, do we have a policy? Cause if we had a clear policy for low impact, uh, development, then we can say, for instance, this is what we require, A, B, C, and D.
Yeah. Can I just jump in really quick? Like an example of that would be at the new recycling center. Um, we have one down in, um, what's wrong with my brain? Down where I live, down, uh, Frau 20. Thank you, Keen. I'm like, where do I live? Anyway, um, and, and I, I saw that as a missed opportunity because it would have been pretty easy on that site to resvest that turnaround vegetation in the middle, direct all the stormwater into that and have a beautiful native plant display. Why not? So when we had another, uh, facility come to us for Northern Outmarl, I brought that up and I said, could we look at that as an opportunity?
Yeah.
I don't know if they'll do it, but I mean, if we had a policy that said, when we have public facilities, we should do them in the greenest way possible.
Yeah, and.
Then, eh, why, and why, why isn't there permeable pavement for parking in front of the, um, you know, the bids? Whatever. Anyway, so many things could have been done.
Yeah, that's.
And a lot of it, I think it's because maybe that we don't have the, the clear guidance.
Right. It doesn't say you have to do that.
So this is a good first step. We're saying we wanna do this.
Right.
And I think just having the guidance on how you do it. So in parallel, we, we don't want to spend another five years before we actually adopt the policy, right? So we want to put this in, in here and then make sure that we're following up on, on having some guidance on what this is mean. Wha- what is, what are the words that we're saying here actually mean, whether it's green infrastructure? Uh, whether it's low impact development, I mean, those, those can go hand in hand obviously.
Yeah, Commissioner Murray, can I just follow up on one thing before you do?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm kind of on your soapbox with you. I think we're all kind of grouped on there in some way or another. The one thing to, that you were heading exactly where I was thinking, in, in addition to examples, I would add thoughts about resources. So if we're gonna be requiring, if we're gonna be, what's the word, increasing the use of environmentally sustainable management and maintenance practices in general. And we're putting those recommendations out there. We should have somewhere a way to understand the resources that are available to the development community. Whether it's learning tools, whether it's grant opportunities, whether it's other ways that they can actually get these things implemented. So that it doesn't appear like we're just layering in sustainability requirements and saying, good luck.
Well, what's really, it's really interesting is that, I mean, when Dave, Dave Hirschman is who I was referring to and he used to work for the county city. And he did all these workshops with developers and taught them how to do this and put demonstration sites out.
Exactly.
You know, our cement company in town, you know, they didn't used to be able to make permeable pavement. And we said, well, get that shaker machine that shakes the stuff out. And so it creates porosity. And they did, and they can build that. So we, we, Luckstone makes bio, uh, biofilter soil. You can go get the biofiltration soil mix from Luckstone. They make it for the Piedmont. So it's like, all these things already exist here. And we've kind of, I don't want to be like melodramatic, but we've lost our way a little bit. Like we used to be doing this stuff all the time here in our county. And we've kind of slacked off a little bit. I don't know, it's my opinion.
Well, that could be a great objective.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to get back to that.
Or maybe not an objective as much as a, an action. Somewhere to revisit those types of things where resources and examples can be shared with development.
To do, if you had done a bio, if you, whoever, who had done a bioswelt, the recycling centers in the, you know, in the turnaround, and you had made permeable p- parking for the people to go and park and do their recycling. That, that costs less than digging a stormwater pond, putting in the pipes and then having to come with the backhoe and scoop out the dirt from the stormwater pond. In other words, it's not more expensive.
Right.
But it's, it's harder to bid. You might have to, you know, like it might be like three contractors that can do it instead of 10 or something like that.
Yeah, or, or maybe they don't even know that's an option to do.
Right. Or that the county demands it, so they should go get someone to help them.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to find a bit, you know, just as, as an example, I I believe in the current conference plan, there's even a, a percentage goal in terms of native plants. So we're even like, when we're talking about something like native plants, there's a specific, there's very specific language and, and goals around that sort of thing. So. Um, and, and you know, I, I think to, um, call out that people always go to lead, but there's also, um, and the landscape architecture standard for, um, um, for sustainability, um, sites.
Yes. Sustainable, it's called sustainable sites initiative.
Yes, sustainable sites. Yeah. So that's something else that should be considered.
Great. Um, I don't think we went to, although you did have a lot.
But I, okay, I'll just leave it. I have like one minor comment on the wording of one objective. I'll, I'll be like less lofty and more specific. Objective three, I just, in reading that, says provide high-quality, modern, welcoming, comfortable, fully accessible and community-oriented library services and facilities to promote accessibility for all community members. You could literally put a period after facilities because you've already said that you wanted it to be fully accessible. And I assume it's for everyone. So it just seems like you.
I think the meaning was two. One was for the building and one was for, uh, equity probably. So, but we can get back with the, I, I see your point.
I don't know. It's just, it's very, it just sounds redundant. I'm sure it could be wordsmithed.
We can get back with the director.
Okay.
I just had a couple of additional thoughts or questions, I guess. One is, uh, and maybe this will happen anyway. There, a lot of what we've been talking about, I think, especially in, I'll call it the preamble, this, this front end would be helpful to have, if there's a way to do it, and I just thought of this, and maybe it applies to other sections of the comp plan, and I hadn't thought about that. But like hot links to certain areas that might give you more information. So we're talking about things like climate resilience in some of these. And it would be great to have sort of a direct connection to that, so that if you're reading the comp digitally, hopefully, you can click on it and it takes you right there or the small area, whatever, whatever that sub-plan is that those connections all occur.
Yeah, we can consider links and callouts.
Yeah, I think it tends to have some hyperlinks in the document, right? Especially the stuff that'll be in the appendix. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A biodiversity plan, the other section will be a link to that plan, which would be in the appendix of the conference plan.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it'd be so easy, like public water and sewer, it'd be cool to have a link somehow or a hot link to, you know, the RWSA's master plan. That helps to build on that or something that could be continued. And then you start getting into the nightmare of changing, you know, when an address changes, the link doesn't work, whatever that is, but the best we can do. Um, I think on that slide you just had up there, there was a second bullet in the first half that was to talk about extension of public services. Uh, facilities in the rural area district to serve existing populations. Is that the same as the section in the public water and sewer of the preamble, which talks about the county's policy for extending the jurisdictional area? Also allows for service to be provided in the rural areas in limited circumstances and locations based on the existence of health and safety issues and where there are no other reasonable options? Is that kind of the same?
I think that bullet also covers that. There's a number of, um, a little bit more overt language about allowing certain services in the rural areas, schools adjacent to the rural area. But it would include that one as well. That's a long, that policy actually has not changed very much. That's a longstanding policy. And I can explain it if you're not real sure how that works.
Up to the group. I know, I, I just happen to know, cause I had a conversation recently about it, but. You guys want to talk about that at all? Extension of the public services to rural areas.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we have had, I know that the supervisors have had conversations about this. There are certain places, I can speak to a place that's near me that was built well before any of this, any of these, these, these ordinances were in place. And I know by the owner who, who, I know whether or not it was the old owner or the new owner, they spent, I don't know how untold amounts of money to correct both the sewage issue, because when the places were built, some of the sewage systems were, some of the, some of the sewage systems were bought, built on top of each other. So I can't even, I don't even know how that even gets approved, but probably back then it did. And then, um, they've had some issues with water that if, if, and everything flows down to a creek that then flows into the Ravanna River and to the reservoir. And so, you know, there are, I can see that there, there could be situations where, and it's a mile from Albemarle High School. So there could be situations where extending just to someplace like that with 20 some odd units, which are affordable right now. That if it gets corrected, they won't be affordable. They're gonna take them off the market and the, the developers, the owners has, has said that. But if we could get something there, we'd do a couple of things. A, we'd preserve some affordable housing. And B, you would keep sewage from going into the Ivy Creek, which then eventually just goes right down the, right down the road and goes into the reservoir. And so the whole idea is how do we do that? How do we get those conversations in front of the supervisors? Cause they're the ones who would have to make the decision there. So that they have sort of a decision, sort of network on, on when those come to us, we can, we can rationally make a decision to improve both the safe, safety in house and also in this case, also preserving, um, preserving affordable, uh, uh, a very affordable housing. And I think that's the kind of thing that I've been trying to figure out, that we have legacy housing that in our community was built at a time when it was not as well scrutinized as it is today. That has systems which are failing. And you have individuals who, you know, this is, this is my whole piece about, yeah, I can get you in a house, but can you, can you, can you afford to live there? I can get you in a house, but if something goes wrong, where are you gonna get $6,000 for a new heat pump? Um, where are you gonna get, from what I understand, the, the work that's been, being, that's been looked at off of Georgetown Road, which is an area that has, that has public water, but doesn't have public sewer, that in order to connect up to a, to a, to a public sewer, it was gonna cost people $20,000. And the county's put some funding aside to try and help that. But $20,000 is the big check to write for a whole host of people, a whole host of people. So how do we facilitate some of those under the eegis of this is better for health? And this also sort of takes some of the, takes some of the pressure off some of the environmental conditions. So I'm, I'm not saying we need to solve that, but I think it would be helpful to be able to say, here's the process by which a community or an advocate comes, comes to, to the county to be able to set up, at least open a discussion about that.
Well, the, the, there is a process in place. It's called, uh, jurisdictional area amendment. So, and this is an example of, actually of two places where that occurs. Uh, under the policy as it's written, i- if a property is adjacent to an existing, uh, line and, uh, there is a documented health or safety issue, water service can be provided. The issue is proximity. The purpose for that is to not, uh, continue to extend water lines out where you don't want development to take place. This is a location in Croze that's, uh, Beaver Hill Mobile Home Park and then a residence um, adjacent to it or close to it. That, um, that request came in, they had a failing septic system, a small parcel. They were adjacent to sewer line. They got serviced. Um, Beaver Hill Mobile Home Park actually got serviced 10 years previously. So, um, the sort of olive color there was a change in the jurisdictional area map to provide sewer service to Beaver Hill when they had failing systems. The, um, the example that you bring up is when something's not adjacent, uh, the costs are borne usually by the property owner. Sewer costs are extremely expensive. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if that extension of one line to that particular site would have probably been a half million dollars or more. It's very expensive. Um, but it, this is a policy that you have in your comp plan, just like all comp plans are. So it's. So it's guidance for individual decisions that boards make. So Key West subdivision, which is about three miles from the boundary, and I didn't have a map for it, it had contamination of its water system. The board chose to add it to the jurisdictionary to allow for public service. Large subdivision, a lot of potential health or safety issues with it. Grant funding was found to help build that. So they got water service to replace their failing central system. So it's really a, there's a process in place. The guidelines of this comp plan help with those decisions, but it is not a checklist, yes or no. So the board has the ability to look at the realistic circumstances here, and in any case, make those exceptions. I know, I'm sure the county attorney would want some consistency and care about precedents that are set, but exceptions have been made. And so I think that process works. This is a very conservative process that says only in these circumstances. But in practice, over the years that I've been applying it, there's good reason for applying what is a true health or safety situation and what exceptions can be made. That helps.
So, so is the proposal basically to continue what we're already doing?
It's to continue what we're already doing. So it, it, it isn't changing it, but wanted to, to make sure that you're aware, since you don't, the planning commission doesn't deal with them. It is not a frequent, but a regular situation, and it's a board determination as to how something more closely meets those criteria. And we've approved that adjacency issue, has been anything from 800 feet to, well, the, the mile that I was talking about.
I think one, one factor that should be mentioned there, that's, that's not mentioned there currently, is age. And possibly even putting a date in there, just so that we, we're very clear that if someone puts something new on the edge of development area, and it's, and there's a failing septic system, that we're not, that's not our problem. That that's, that's the problem of the developer, or, you know, the, the community, that, you know. So I think that, I think age is a factor. You could probably even get that down to a date, you know, systems before, you know. I think, you know, looking into that, you can probably figure out what date that is.
Yeah, the, the way you would typically do that is set it upon, like you do in a zoning ordinance, you set it upon a certain date of adoption, and then anything that's approved after that date. So there are ways to, to do that, if you, if, if that was a decision the board made to do that.
As we look at the objectives and actions, is objective one, action 1.2 intended to address this issue? Or does it go over to objective?
For utilities? It's more specifically for utilities. This one does apply to public safety facilities.
And so, I'm sorry if I missed it, the, the question of extending water and sewer to rural areas.
That's 2.2 here.
Point, yeah, 2.2?
Yeah.
Got it.
So the way that it works under action 2.1, that's the statement that says rural area property should be served by private services.
Yep.
Action two gives, gives the grounds for exceptions in a way. It says where services to be provided in the development area, but allows for that circumstance for exception. And then the third one is the alternative that we discourage, which is a central system, but in some cases may be the only alternative
Yeah.
to some, someplace remote that has failing.
So while we're on 2.2, number three of 2.2, onsite private water septic utilities for are cost prohibitive or not actually viable. Is there any chance that there may be a developer who may say, well, private water and septic utilities just aren't the best approach here? We'd like you to extend water and sewer to our site, and it says here, I'm telling you it's cost prohibitive, and it says here that you'll extend it in that case? I'm just wondering, is it, is that number three the right wording? Has that changed? Has it always been?
That actually is, that has been added to allow for specificity by practice. What, what we've tried to do is what's, what's reasonable for a property owner is a single property owner drilling three or four wells to get adequate water is cost prohibitive. Or a package plant may not be a reasonable cost, given the topography and constraints on that property. But a commercial property would be different. A commercial property raises revenue. So without putting one bar for what that is, is to say what, that's, that's a judgment that's done on a case-by-case basis.
And this is for existing, so it's not for new.
For new, this is all existing construction that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Or existing rural areas?
Well, it's, yeah, it's. It's for replacing existing systems in the rural area.
Okay, I got you. Okay, that's, yeah.
It wouldn't be for new construction.
But, but I also think that that section specifically, 2.2, is, is where you should reference, reference age, if not a specific date, systems before. I think that would clarify. And I think another criteria that's important to mention is that, you know, we have a lot of development area properties that don't have water and sewer. I mean, well, maybe not a lot, but we, we definitely have development area properties that don't have water and sewer. And I think that those have to take priority before expanding the jurisdiction out to the rural area. So where, you know, where we have limited funding, I think we've, we've got to make sure that we are adequately serving the development area with, with water and sewer before we expand those jurisdictions.
I think most of the things we're talking about, these exceptions are going to be mostly funded through private investments. If you're referencing, I think I may have understood you to be using public dollars to serve some of these problems in all the rural area. That's generally not what we do.
Oh, oh, no, no, I was saying that there are, we, we've had some, certainly remember the exact circumstance, but we had a couple areas, you know, applications that came before us. And it was called that, that there were areas in our development area that don't currently have water and sewer, right? So I'm just saying that where we, where we have areas in the development area that don't have water and sewer, I think we should look at, you know, expanding those areas first. You know, where we have limited funding, and, you know, I think that it makes sense to really look at those areas and get full coverage of water and sewer to our development areas.
But it, it also relates to not trying to extend, to avoid extensions into the rural area, because there are very high operational costs, relies particularly dead-end lines that tend to be the ones that go to rural areas. And that, that creates budget issues that are constraints to serving the development areas.
It seems like 2.2, the first sentence, use the development areas' boundaries to guide the Almarcon Service Authority jurisdictional area for the provision of public water and sewer. I think that kind of covers what you're saying, right?
Yeah, yeah. I guess that's true.
All right, any, we've got about a half hour left. Any shift to implementation? And go through the objectives there. Steph, is that what you'd like us to do next?
Yeah, I mean, we can step through these objectives and the actions as we go through. The first one is that overriding overarching set of actions. So if there's any comments or concerns about what you're seeing here, appreciate hearing from them.
I had a question, not about something that's in there, but I've been talking about infrastructure. And I was at the CAC meeting on the, looking at the budget last week. I guess when we're providing more police. And so I was just wondering if there's any interest in, you know, having more substations. You know, for police, you know, they're just, they're in their car, and they're going all the way from Afton Mountain down to Scottsville. I mean, like, for example, Yancey, Yancey Community Center is a county facility. Is there any interest by the police department in have, and then maybe they have a substation there, and I just don't know, but.
What I understand their, their biggest interest in is to have satellite facilities that are useful to the officers when they're out on their beat. So as an example, at Croze, in the village of Croze, there's actually a, a picture, I think, of that site. There's a small office space in the village center. And so it gives them a small space for storage to do interviews as necessary.
Right, yeah, but I'm talking.
It's not a substation per se. I think there has been a growing interest in perhaps a need for substations, but at this point in time.
Police forces I've worked in the past, that I've, we've been involved in giving them a substation. It helps them have a place they can go and get paperwork done, or, you know, when they're not out on a call. There's a huge gap between, you know, like Southern Alboral, and my district in particular, there's just not a lot of places to go. And I'm just suggesting that we invested in Yancey School, maybe that would be of interest to them.
Yeah, the 5-1 speaks to the satellite offices, and I think that's where their focus is. Also, up in the first objective, there's an action that encourages multi-use, use of public facilities, with the idea that fire stations can also serve that purpose. Maybe not so much schools because of conflicts, but.
Well, yeah, Yancey School is in a school, you know, it's, they have office space in there.
Yeah.
So anyway, I don't, just, just wondering if there's need to be more specific? Because I did see that it said something about substations, but nothing about where they're, where they would go, or maybe that conversation is still going on with the police, and we don't know what they exactly want.
Right, and I, again, I think stepping back to what the expectations are for community facilities is that that dialogue often takes place with the board of supervisors as needed during budget, and it's operational oriented, even though it's a physical facility.
Right.
It more relates to how they operate as opposed to a specific. And it's an infrastructure need, but it's also small enough in scale that is more operational.
Okay.
So I think the, the preference in this draft of the plan is to leave that guidance with the agencies and not be so prescriptive in.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting like that to put one there, I just was wondering if we were going to get to that level specificity about where, but.
I don't think right now. We are going to be developing a map of facilities that, existing, potential future facilities. And as we work with agencies, we're gonna, we think we're gonna identify public lands we own, and we might identify what uses might be on that. So you may actually see something.
Or maybe that's part of the, a resilience hub, is that it also has a
Exactly.
substation. It would make sense.
Yes, exactly.
Chair, if I might, I would encourage, I would encourage that if I could come alongside that, because on page nine, under the police where it says, you talk about giving them areas to be, this allows officers to foster and strengthen relationships within each district communities. I would say we do not have sort of community policing here.
No.
Maybe, maybe in Croze, they've got community police policing, but not in the rest of the development community, they don't have community policing. And so anything that would allow that, allow police officers to be able to connect to those particular areas, I think would be helpful.
I agree.
And so I think that's just coming along there. And since they're, they're saying that that's something that they want, then I would sort of step up to that and say, I think that would be helpful in our community, particularly under, under some of the stressful times that the community is sort of sensing now.
Page nine, by the way, is the map, is the picture of the Alboral.
Was that it?
Yeah, it's the one that's in the, the old trail village section. And those are, I think, the types of satellite facilities we're looking for.
All right, so continuing with implementation, let's start with objective one. Provide public facilities, infrastructure, services, and a responsible, equitable, and cost-effective mandate to serve existing and future community needs. Any questions or comments on any of those actions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one I think I'd like to bring up. I was making sure it fit here. But it was going back to the question about rural areas as well. And for the commission, is there a moment, or are there building typologies that, when you look at the hierarchy of need, and, and talking about like, if you're going to expand any kind of construction to the rural area, there's a hierarchy. What, is there a critical type of facility we ought to be thinking about, right? So like, I read something about libraries in one of the sections here. You know, in rural areas, libraries, like during COVID, you would get COVID testing there. They serve for education purposes, workforce development purposes. There's all kinds of things that a library in a rural area might serve as different than in a development area. So I'm just wondering, are there any typologies that make sense, right? If we're going to say, you know, for comprehensive planning purposes, that, hey, we would like to see something here if it were to be developed? Are there any kind of building typologies that make more sense than others? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just throw out one that we talked about, I think, before, which is crossroads communities, and how that's tied to resilience, and whether there's medical facilities, fire and rescue, you know, a convenience store, those kinds of things. That might be an example where those could be, I don't want to use the word expanded, but they could.
Right.
Courage?
I just, just a point of clarification, please, on 1.7, where you say proactively rezone county-owned land that is being used for, is designated for public facilities, blah, blah, blah. Are, are you saying, like, for instance, at the Lamb Lane, Lamb's Lane campus, when we just talked about, it's not, it's no longer called Center 2, but when it was called Center 2, that, that was in the rural part of that land is actually in zone rural? And so by, I don't know if we actually changed, did we change the zoning of that? So is that what you're talking about, to go through and make it institutional?
Yeah, generally, a lot of the public facilities are on land that's zoned rural area as an example, which creates setback issues, building height issues. So this was an action that just, I think for us, it really says when we're doing our zoning modernization, is there a way to, to be a little bit more reflective of what's needed for public institution facilities to make it easier for them to locate? It, it, it may or may not require rezoning. It could be tweaks to existing zoning ordinances, but that's what that intent is.
And would that, would that set aside properties such as at Ravanna Village? Or not Ravanna, excuse me, I don't want to get my guy upset here. Ravanna Station, although I'd like to set that aside. A Ravanna Station where I think it's rural, but we, would we, would we expect a request or, or an idea from county staff to say, we should change that to institutional? Or to corporate, to, to commercial, or research and development? Because right now, I think most of that land out there is still rural.
Ravanna Station?
Rural, what we just bought, the 45.
Yeah, well, we, that we've rezoned for industrial purposes.
Okay.
If, if there was a school facility on it, I, I think what we're looking at here is more broadly is, perhaps, is there a zoning ordinance, or there's some changes in the zoning district that can make some accommodation for public facilities, which have some unique location issues with it? It's probably less that than just wherever the next facilities are going to be.
Any other comments on action or objective one? I think Commissioner Flaburn was kind of referring to 1.3 a little bit, right, where you might.
That's where it's signaling, yeah, 1.3.
Yes. That's the different methods to provide for public services in the rural area.
Right, and I was just saying, is there a hierarchy, if you will, to building typologies that might fit that, right?
Yeah, I don't, we haven't articulated that here per se. I think the, I think rural area, if I recall, there, there's guidance that you can find in both the development area land use plan and the rural area plan about scale and matching scale of the area. But I think as a specific building typology, I'm not aware of, other than what most likely the zoning ordinance for rural areas permits. We, I don't think we've gotten into that. That probably is the closest one.
Can you expand a little bit on 1.7, where you meet, where you say update zoning regulations to better accommodate institutional uses? What do you mean by?
Well, that's what we just discussed, that schools, public facilities lots of times are big. They're, they're kind of sprawling in urban areas. Their setbacks can be an issue. Obviously, there's value to setbacks, but.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, this is just to take a closer look at whether we can better accommodate public facilities so that we don't get into that campus situation where the old, previously called High School Center 2 didn't build tall enough and couldn't meet setback requirements on a campus that was already developed as a campus.
Got it, thank you. All right, moving on to objective two? All right, moving on to objective two, public water and sewer to development areas. We talked a little bit about that before as well. Yeah. Any other comments or questions on that?
I.
Go ahead. Go there first, sorry.
Uh, I I was just gonna ask, two point five is kind of an odd thing to include in a thing like this, like prohibit access to this thing. Uh, that kind of stood out as like, isn't that just like a thing we just have not in the plan, but just we have.
There's two aspects to that. Um, well, one, there's a history that this has been in the comp plan for a number of years. That that um Croze line goes through our water supply watershed area and rural areas. So the intent from many years ago back to our um conference of zoning in nineteen eighty-two was to not allow that extension to be a catalyst for growth. But secondly, and probably almost equally important, it's a it's a it's what's called a force main in order to to get the stuff to the treatment center. Uh, it requires a number of pump stations and it has to be pressurized. And there's an engineering difficulty. I think it can be done, but it's costly and difficult to do and creates complications to uh connect to force mains. Prohibit is not language that you typically use in the conference and it would be discouraged. But it it that that's the history. It's been pretty, pretty um uh specific for a number of years, but we're certainly can entertain modernizing or updating if that's what you want to consider.
Mr. Five?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, just staying on the topic of sewage. Are we in the in the text, I don't remember what page it's on, it doesn't really matter. But in the text of this chapter, it did mention that, you know, packaged treatment plants are not recommended by the EPA. In fact, they detest them because they fail, because they require someone, an operator, and people don't maintain them. And so they're sort of like automated wastewater treatment plants, little mini plants. I feel like we that we should perhaps even go as far as saying we prohibit them. I I mean, we 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 give references. I mean, basically, they're not a good idea.
Yeah.
And could we, is it necessary or should we or could we adopt some an objective saying since we're prohibiting things?
Yeah, two point three is the one that says allow central systems only when existing public system. We could be more specific to say it's they're precluded. The one um complication is that um systems will ultimately fail and public is not going to be an alternative. So there may be in certain circumstances an exception where essential systems are the less of an evil.
Yes, maybe in the text and and you could say it may use stronger language in the general text, not in the objective to talk about the fact that they have a terrible history of failure and they're not encouraged or not or discouraged in our county. Because people are still building new ones and they're failing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still, it's not like a thing of the past that no one does anymore.
And it's it's an issue that we documented in that background because it's becoming more of an emerging issue. For us, we've had to recently uh deal with it. So I think it's some, I think we can make stronger language in two point.
Yeah, I'd like to see stronger language. And then the other one um is um I don't, this might be getting more into like the territory of the Department of Health, but mounted septic systems is another um rural sewage treatment method where you, when you don't have soils that perk, you you pile the dirt up on top and then you you make your septic system basically in a mound. They're not very attractive looking, but the um the the um, I'm just brain dead today, the the Association of Municipal Governments, whatever it's called in Virginia, they they disavow them. They say they're terrible. The only study talking about their efficacy is done by the manufacturers. So I'm just wondering, is that is that something that that people like permit in this county or I I I see it more on the coastal plain where they have really terrible soils, but it's it's actually allowing sprawl and development into places that where the soil doesn't perk and.
I I think our health department has become um accepting a more alternative systems. I can't say whether sand mound systems are used much here or not, but I I know that they are more open to them when they used to, they used to be an exception and not approvable. We do have in our um environmental stewardship section, I believe, a recommendation that regards improved um septic system standards. And perhaps that's something we can.
Maybe to investigate, investigate later. Yeah, I just, it's something that's being pushed. Um, and I I get it if your system is failing, but they, you know, there there's very questionable technology that is being used across Virginia and other places. Okay, that's it.
Yeah, can I jump onto two point eight for a second on the, I guess it's the next page? Um, just jumped out to me, continue the RWSA Board of Director's current policy that biosolids produced by the RWSA should not be applied to land such as fertilizer for agriculture. Is there, first of all, that um I struggled a bit, and first of all, I support that a hundred percent, but I also struggled a bit as to why it's in the provide public water and sewer to the development areas and county consistent with the growth management policy. Is that because of water quality, potential issues with groundwater?
It it could go in other places as well, or we could, we could move it to something more appropriate. It's just because this section, um, a lot of within it governs what the service authorities do. And since it's a service authority effort, it was put here.
Okay.
The service authority is fine including it, but yeah, we we could find a a better location or cross-reference it to others.
Or is it a, is there a better place to put a general policy about biosolids that's talk about considering eliminating use of it on county land? Just generally as opposed to just RWSA.
Yeah, I'm I can't speak to what we've been working on with biosolids within this comp plan. We can certainly look into that.
Great.
Uh, we wanted to make sure that it's something the service authority does. This is sort of the service authority section, so we acknowledged it here.
Yeah, got you. Um, let's move down, just looking at the time to uh to objective C C F three. I just had one comment um on three point three, provide resources for renovation of the main library, kind of to the question about prohibiting access to the Croze Sewer Interceptor. That just seemed like a very specific item. Um, and I don't know if there's a that's, if there's a reason for it to be so specific, number one, or number two, should we have a more general action item that talks about providing resources for continued or ongoing renovation of, you know, of libraries as needed? I don't know. It just seemed very specific.
So why are we calling out, why are we calling out the one on on Market Street?
Yeah, I mean, I figure there's probably some sort of a capital plan somewhere for libraries that puts that up front.
They're jointly, it's a jointly owned facility with the city. I think in working with the director, there was a thought that um we're not, this recommendation doesn't recommend a new facility. They're very costly. And I think this is maybe a indirect way of saying supporting the existing facilities as your primary lib, your primary large-scale library of facilities. And because it's co-owned, I think it was important to the director to just to have that acknowledgement that the county is committed to that facility.
To your point earlier, if this is a ten or twenty-year plan, I just wonder, it feels like it might sundown once we do that. And then it's like, well, now we need to go to another library and figure out what's that. So maybe a general.
Yeah, it is specific and we can, I can, we can talk with them about the importance of leaving that.
Yeah.
Or making it a little bit broader and more general.
So I have something in our plan that we could measure if we did.
I know.
There, I've criticized this plan as being overly broad and vague.
Anything else under um objective, objective three?
Yes, I was gonna go on with the the quantification, if we can put something in there around, you know, we expect to see this many more visitors or increase in visitors. If we do these things with libraries, we expect it to be used this much more, just something to kind of quantify some of the results. I was actually trying to look on my phone. I just judged a competition for AIA Iowa action. I saw a really good write-up about some of the things that were results of like great design and some of the things we're talking about in here. And I was trying to find it real quick, but ran out of time. But I'll email it to you if I find.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Biff? Yeah, this is one of those areas where I was trying to figure out about the equity piece and about about facilities. Because when I looked at the library map, I sort of noticed there was this glaring place on in the county where there it would probably take you a good thirty, forty, forty minutes to get to the library, and that's the Northside Library. And so we seem to have very, we seem to have no library resources up around the Airport Road, sort of either east or west of of twenty-nine there. And so when I'm thinking about equity, I'm thinking about, and I know they're expensive, but there's probably some developments up there or some developments could be that could designate a library. I'm not quite sure where that development is, but I'm sure there's a developer in the room that could put a library up there. But in any event, not to not to not to push that that point. But that's what I'm talking about equity, because so we're pushing all of this development up twenty-nine to be our new Main Street. But yet there's just basic things that that aren't up there. You know, like there, there, there isn't really sort of a community green space. Yeah, you can go to, you can go to the park up there, but you know, don't stop, don't look, I'm trying. I've got the boss in the room right now. I have to try and behave, at least for seven more months. Um, and and because that's the kind of equity thing that I'm I'm trying to sort of figure out. We're encouraging development, but at the same time, are we encouraging county resources up there to be able to sort of to support the the people who are going to be living there? You don't have to answer, but that's that was my point about the equity. How are we doing this?
I was just gonna point out, we actually have a proffered site in the North Point site for a library.
We do?
Yeah, so that that is a site that's subject to a rezoning request where that might change. But we had previously approved a site um for a future library.
Because there's a school up there, right?
It's a light, a school site and a library site.
Well, I'll.
So again, that's that's a rezoning that's come in. There's some discussion about changing zoning. But that's one of those things that would be depicted on the map so you could see what potential future proffered sites are. Um, but again, I'll caution you that there that that might change based on um that rezoning request that we see. Libraries are like all public services are very expensive to operate. And so the commitment to make sure that they're operating in an efficient way comes into play. Um, and users uh from other localities that use those facilities also factor into their decision-making. So.
Commissioner Moore?
Sure. Uh, first of all, thank you for all this and for the attention to third spaces. I saw that scattered throughout, including here and libraries serving that function for sure. Um, I wanted to, I was reminded of how ten, maybe eleven years ago, uh, Almaral reduced funding for libraries, and now we don't have any Sunday hours. Uh, and that's been a real personal, you know, thing for me. And like on Sundays, I want to schedule a meeting room and I can't because they're all closed. Um, and I don't know how to sort of put into this something like consider seven-day-a-week access or, you know, like, like, study, investigate, something like that. I realize it's strictly a budget issue. Um, and, you know, planning documents don't typically speak directly to budgets. At the same time, it is something that uh does speak to some of the other access and availability points.
Cool. All right, we're down to six minutes. Um, I don't want to rush this, but keep your comments consistent. You would see F four, public schools, high-quality equitable and inclusive educational system for students. I'll just throw out something I noticed in terms of the way the preamble is written under the school system, and this gets back to something Commissioner Clayburn, I think, mentioned. Um, that's on page seven. AC forty-four has recommendations for school buildings, including their location form and recreational amenities. Let's see, recommendations include that new schools be located in development areas or directly adjacent to development areas, while noting that schools can be constructed in a rural area when physical constraints, land area availability in the development areas, or existing service considerations may necessitate it. So it feels like that's pretty restrictive on rural area schools, which I get, but then it says about half of the county schools are in the rural areas. And so I I just don't want to shortchange the schools that are there. You know, that there's enough that talks about and supports rural area school. Maybe not so much growth, but we're not going to have that much growth in the rural areas, but um, just want to make sure they're not shortchanged. So you don't need to make any comments on that, but wanted to call that out. The wording in four point one is a little different than the preamble.
Okay, and and Chair, I would just sort of offer, I I suggest, I don't know if it's true because I've been trying to track this down. I don't know how often the long-range planning advisory committee still meets because their last, their last, their last, their last report on their site was in twenty-four, and I couldn't see any meeting time since then. So you might want to just confirm that they're still, they still are vigorous in their meeting.
Yeah, my understanding is they're and they meet annually, but that my understanding is they still meet annually. So, but I will double check.
Any other comments on C F four?
Just reiterate, agency four point three stood out to me as, and we actually control that. But that's just a general comment, agency around the topic of schools.
But C F five, provide high-quality and responsive emergency services, police, et cetera. But six?
I'll just kind of speak to this a little bit. Six and seven both, which both start with reduced greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, yeah, I know we've got a climate action lens on this whole process. Um, sometimes I feel like things like this are lenses. It's like dad's glasses uh when we need like a new set of glasses to look at the climate crisis more accurately in this era. Um, I I I I do understand the desire to reduce emissions. I feel like even if we got down to zero emissions tomorrow, it's not going to change a thing globally. So I I I do want us to not take up all the air in the room with emissions. Uh, and I think looking instead at things like, how do we thrive and support one another? And the actually things like what Commissioner Firehawk was describing is cost-effective bioswales and things like that that actually both save money and address the climate crisis in smart ways. Um, but also even at the household level, getting people so that we have like safety backups feels more important to me. And I was leaving at that. I realize that's a bigger thing than probably the state warrants, but just want to get it out there.
Any other comments on six or seven?
I'll offer up the AIA framework for design excellence as something to go by um in terms of guiding you and getting to that goal that you're sharing here or your objective.
Awesome. Um, okay, how about eight? Hearing none, I'm just moving through. Just how about any of the rest of them? Nine?
Okay, so I I I do have.
Eight.
We have one.
We have an eight.
Yeah, I have a, I have one for nine, um, for nine point two.
No.
Um, you know, when we we talk about um you know, I realize that that um that even when we talk about electric providers that, you know, we're, we don't do that as the power companies, but we have a longstanding pilot policy of discouraging herbicide use and right-of-ways. Um, and it's been a very successful thing. I don't know if anyone notices when you when you leave Alamo County and then you go into adjoining county, you notice that their their right-of-ways are all brown. And so it'd be nice, even though that's been sort of unofficial thing, it'd be nice to call it out here and recognize that that great thing that we're already doing about discouraging herbicide use um and and encouraging those right-of-ways to be used for um for biodiversity.
Sure, I think this would be a place that the broadband should be should have thrown in there too, because it is, it's, I didn't see it in here. And nine point or the nine section that you're talking about communications and things like that. And since since we're seeing that it's at the end of its of its install, it'll then become a place that's going to be for maintenance, and this should be a place that you're talking about maintenance. So I would suggest you put something about maintenance in here.
I think, well.
Mr. Karazan?
Yeah, it's continuing in nine point two. And so this is where it picks up a little bit more where we were talking about the distribution of electric, yeah, and the electric grid. And so this is what I didn't see in the body, but obviously you have it here in the objectives. It's what I don't see is the mention of of capacity. And I I want to stress that because I think there's an urgency. I believe there is an urgency. Uh, particularly here in Virginia, how we think about capacity and that has to do obviously with resilience as well. And so I I would echo um Commissioner Moore's comment. I think we we get over fixated on on emissions and and the source of our electric. For instance, in nine point three, you talk about eliminating gas facilities. So, you know, gas-fired boilers is probably going to be one of your largest energy users. Uh, gas-fired boilers are extremely efficient. In fact, you're going to pay a lot less for a gas-fired boiler than you're going to pay for an electric. In fact, you're going to pay a lot less for a gas fired boiler than you're going to pay for an electric boiler. It don't last as long, electric boilers, and they cost a lot more money. So weigh all that and then consider where is the electric, where is electricity coming from? It's feeding that boiler. So what are you actually doing? Right? I think sometimes when you just take, take a little bit about, take the emotion out a little bit about in this conversation and, and. And think about what we're actually achieving. So I would just, and so capacity is, is something for, with, with the electric grid resilience that we need to. Think about because if we're, if our demand is exponentially growing in the next five years. And the priorities are going to go to things that are not your home. We need to think about that.
So, so is this, is this sort of following up on this piece where we sort of did the first read on the, on data centers and part of, I think, in that whole thing is that, and that, and that, and that potential. Ordinance is that data centers have to be able to sort of generate or they have to sort of be able to sort of. Manufacture their own energy in some shape or form or be able to claim it because if they don't, then in fact, we're going to get there a lot faster than what you're suggesting. I think it's going to be a lot faster than five years before we get to this, we get to a capacity issue.
So there's only one county that, that is currently considering a provision for. One gigabyte centers.
Right.
Or larger.
Right.
That's, that's enormous amount of energy.
Yes, it is.
So if they're at one gig, then they would require, but you could be at.
You'd be below that. Right, exactly.
And which is still a very large facility.
Right.
And you don't have to provide your own.
So for instance, I understand the, the data center that's going in at Fontaine, I think it's going to take off of the. The geothermal or whatever you're building out there, the GMO thermal, thermal center. So, so that they're in fact going to be able to supply their own energy to the data center there.
No.
No?
Not, not exactly. So there's a geothermal. A central energy, energy plant in Fontaine. Uh, the geothermal will, will provide a source of to provide cooling. So it's, it's for, it's basically a cooling and heating in that facility. It's cooling. So that will reduce the energy cost. But you're, it's still being fed by.
Still needs to be driven.
It's still being fed by Dominion.
Yeah, okay. I thought, yeah, so that's right. They're, they're cooling, they're cooling the property that way.
Right, which is a huge part of the energy.
It is, it is, but you still have to run the servers. I mean, you still got to run a server farm. And so that's the piece that.
We still need to. So the, the chillers.
Right.
The chillers.
Right.
That feed Fontaine.
Right.
Are fed through.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I am asking that question in the, in the, in the draft that we saw, not the draft, I mean, the piece that we saw that Bill Fritz brought to us. Was there a piece in there about being able to supply power to data centers? I don't, I just don't remember it. And if not, there wasn't. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
There's a size limitation that we, we put on. Before special use permits, which would allow us to evaluate the impacts. Perhaps Andy might want to speak to this. I know that there is some limitations on what we can do in terms of. Controlling and approving based solely on power. We also have limited abilities to influence overall regional capacity issues. So I, I think that's things we have to be aware of. We certainly can, in our recommendations, address. Our ability to approve uses that generate capacity, that generate certain capacities, but. I, I'm not, when Jody's can clarify or correct that, but there are some limitations for what we can do regarding to utilities.
Jody Filardo, Community Development Director, just wanted to let you all know, it's our understanding that we cannot regulate. These data centers that are possibilities for the county based on power. We have a lot of other options that we can use, but not power. So we, we can eat water, you know, the use of water. We can regulate setbacks. We can regulate setbacks to keep data centers away from. Adjoining properties so that the low frequency hum from a data center doesn't impact neighbors. But there, so there are an array of things we're looking at on data centers. We've got a two step process in mind. We have a, first, we're coming forward with a zoning text amendment, which will have a phase one approach on data centers, which. Establish a couple of different thresholds for sizing and places in which we would allow data centers to go. And the expectation is we will do the evaluation of those and then come back with a phase two. Following outreach to stakeholders and experience with what we find as data centers come forward to Alamo County. So there's more to come on that.
Awesome. All right, we are about five, five, six minutes over. Any last minute quick comments?
Yeah, I just, just have one real, real quick. We mentioned they had to plant some, several places in here. I think it's also important to mention. Management of invasive species. I know that we called that out in some other chapters, but. We do have some big problems with invasive species at some of our county schools and other county problems, other county properties. And so that would be a good thing to call out here.
Awesome. Mr. Benished, staff, everybody. Thank you so much. Really helpful. Great job. And we will go into recess until six P M. Good evening, everyone. I will reconvene. The March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting of the planning commission. We are all, we have all returned to the dais. Glad everybody's back. So I don't think I need to call the roll. Good to go. We'll move on to a public comment on matters pending before the commission, but not listed for a public hearing on the agenda. Are there any matters that the public would like to speak to?
Do you want me to call the roll again?
Um, I've been told I don't need to.
No. Okay. No. Okay.
We're all here. But I will ask you, are there any matters?
I was just going to clarify, since it was just a recess, not in a German, additional role is not needed.
Thank you. I've been schooled on that before. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to matters not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda or is there a commissioner who would like to pull an item or is there a motion? To approve the draft meeting minutes from March eleventh, twenty five.
Bill moved.
Second.
Right. Any discussion? All right. May we have the roll, please?
All right. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to the public hearing items, beginning with ZMA twenty twenty three dash eighteen. Albemarle Business Campus Amendment and the last of the staff.
Thank you, Chair Missile and members of the planning commission. My name is Kevin McDermott. I'll be presenting on this rezoning tonight. In lieu of Sid Shoff, who did the review, he's not in tonight. So. As you said, this is a, a public hearing for the rezoning ZMA twenty twenty three eighteen. Albemarle Business Campus Neighborhood Model Development Amendment two. Generally, the location is off Old Lynchburg, just south of I sixty four. You can see those parcels highlighted in the, in yellow on the map. This is directly across from the county office building and adjacent to the region ten offices. Uh, you can see the location. There were two areas actually of, of development included with this. This is a screenshot of the overall development plan. The original rezoning was approved in twenty twenty and it created five blocks. Block one is this one in pink. That is located on the south side of Old Lynchburg Road, adjacent to Country Green Road. And that block is already developed with a hundred and twenty eight multifamily units. Block five, which is this one in yellow, is already developed with a self storage and office building. Additionally, vision lane, which you can see lightly that cuts through the, the property here is also already fully constructed. Currently blocks two, three, and four are vacant. Uh, this amendment really pertains primarily to blocks two through five. It's approximately eight and a half acres and as I said, zoned neighborhood model development through the rezoning in twenty twenty. Blocks two through four are vacant, as I already mentioned. This once again shows the existing zoning of neighborhood model. You can see that we also have C one commercial. And residential adjacent to that and another highway commercial, or I'm sorry, C one commercial and commercial office. That's what the dark pink is. The light pink is the highway, is the C one commercial, apologies. Uh, the comp plan recommends community mixed use. That's the brown that you see there. The primary uses for that are residential, uh, community scale, retail, service and office uses. Additionally, places of worship, schools and public and institutional uses are allowed. The applicant is proposing to amend the code of development, application plan and proffers for the previously approved rezoning. I'll just start walking through some of the elements of these proposed changes. The first elements in his code of development are the uses in table A. This adds drive through windows is permitted by special use permit and also parking structures is a by right use. Is relegated to the side and associate of the associated structures. So that those would be accessory uses only. And they have, as I said, they have to be relegated to the side or to minimize visibility. That's the, that's the only change to the uses in the code of development. Now, the, the types of the square footage and amounts of use density. You can see here, this is showing you the non-residential square footage. The top. Uh, table you see here is what was approved in the twenty twenty one rezoning. And then the bottom below that is what is being. Being suggested for this rezoning. And you, what you can see here is that blocks two through four are all going from. Twenty thousand, twenty five thousand and four thousand, non-residential square footage respectively to zero in block two. Zero in block three and ten thousand in block four. So that reduces the overall total. From ninety four thousand down to fifty five thousand. That's the minimum square footage. Regarding the residential uses, previously there was only residential uses proposed in block one. You can see those are the ones that are already developed. With minimal or, or zero minimum residential units in blocks two through five. So the change to that is to go from zero, or I'm sorry, a maximum of eighty five, fifty six and thirty eight in the previous rezoning. To a maximum of two hundred and forty. The note that I have to make here is that. The total residential units previously were not to exceed a hundred and twenty eight. So that's the, really the main change here. Is that the hundred and twenty eight were entirely filled by block one. And so in order to get any additional residential, it needs to be, that note needs to be amended. And which is happening here. So it's not to exceed three hundred and sixty eight total, and those would all be found in blocks two through four. Building regulations, this also, this rezoning also. Increases the maximum stories in block four from three to four stories and the maximum height from fifty to sixty. Decreases the primary front minimum setback from five to zero. And this was due to sidewalk construction that in the field. Was identified as requiring that minimum setback change. There's also a note that would allow covered porches, balconies, eaves and other architectural features. To project not more than four feet to enter any required yard. The proposed changes to the application plan, I don't need to walk through all these. They're shown on the application plan. The highlights really are the updates to the residential use types that you see in blocks two through four. And then updating just general things like the instrument numbers for previous dedications that have already occurred. And one thing I do want to note is that they did remove an update or a note for existing transit stop that needed to be improved. That we, we may want to hear from the applicant on that. There is some confusion there because. Well, as we talk about in the proffers on the next page, they do have references to a development agreement that also requires that. Existing transit stop. So the fact that it's removed from the application plan may not necessarily. Mean that it's removed from the requirements. Finally, the last bullets are all about updating the roundabout and shared use path exhibits. These exhibits were developed during the original rezoning. Since then, the county and V dot project. To upgrade the roundabout has moved further along and additional or more exact designs for those have occurred. So this updates what is going on with those, with the amount of land needed and what the design of that roundabout looks like. So as I mentioned, the proposed changes to the proffer statement, proffer one A decreases the amount of the cash proffer. To the Albemarle County C I P from five hundred thousand down to two hundred and fifty thousand. That cash proffer was, was triggered when the first, when the. Site plan or the certificates of occupancy were approved for the hundred and eighty seven residential units. So that's when they tripped that. Four hundred and eighty seven vehicles per day number. So as I said, that, that. Proffer has already been tripped and the. Proffer funds have been requested by the county. We have not received those proffers at this time. They were, they were requested back in May twenty twenty four. One important thing to note with that proffer is that staff would like to see some additional information on which that reduction was based on. So some of the reasons that we have heard from the applicant are that previously built infrastructure is being impacted by the change in the V dot designs. We have not seen what previously built infrastructure has been impacted or what the cost of replacing it may be. We have not seen a estimation of the potential cost of the additional right of way that the applicant proposes to dedicate. And no change in the amount of traffic generated by this development is included with this application. Uh, also, as I mentioned, also the other proffer, the, the proffer for the roundabout exhibit really just references the new. Update and provides a new exhibit with the amount of right of way. I'll show you that in the next slide. But I also wanted to highlight again, that proffer three still contains language for a performance agreement. And then the county requirements for that performance agreement, this was enacted prior to the previous rezoning. It was a performance agreement that was entered into by the county E D A and the, and the applicant. It required, among other things, a reservation of class A of space for class A office space on the site. And that was timed. It was a period of, I believe, I can't remember the exact number of months, but the point is that that proffer is no longer required. During the time that, that he was required to hold that, no residents, no tenants were found for that site. And so he is no longer required to hold the property anymore. The county has provided the one hundred thousand in TIF funds. To the applicant at this point, but I will, as I mentioned, point out that there were other elements to that performance agreement, things regarding. Transit accessibility, the proposed transit stop that I mentioned, other elements like pedestrian and bike facilities. Through the, through the application. So staff would like to make sure that those are being carried through. Whether or not the performance agreement is still in there and there's still some questions about whether or not that's happening. Uh, this is that document which shows the updated. Right of way for the design of the roundabout. You can see that this light pink area here was previously dedicated. That was what was. Proffered during the first rezoning. And now the applicant is offering to also dedicate additional right of way. Point zero eight acres for the, the shared use path that would be constructed along the frontage is part of that project. The applicant would be actually constructing a portion of that across this section of the property. V dot would, would be constructing this portion. And that's what that additional right of way is required for. So overall, the positive aspects of this are that the request could result in up to thirty six additional affordable. So overall, the positive aspects of this are that the request could result in up to 36 additional affordable units within the development in keeping with the previous affordable housing policy of 15%. Highlighting that this, uh, application actually came in before we moved on to the new housing policy. So that's why the 15% is what was, uh, requested with that. Um, and that the request is mostly consistent with the neighborhood model principles of the comprehensive plan and master plan. The primary areas where we found it wasn't were related to mixture of uses. As I mentioned, the comp plan does require or does, uh, set an expectation for more of a community mixed-use area down there. We have very little, um, mixed use available in that area. It's growing heavily with residential. So while staff really does support additional residential, we also want to see that in a mix of uses. That information is both included in the previous comp plan. And it's what you all have seen in the recommendation for, uh, our update to the comp plan. So that's going to stay consistent. The concerns are that it's inconsistent with the Southern Western Urban Neighborhoods Master Plan and the comp plan and the NMD Principles for Mixed Use in Neighborhood Centers. The reduction in the minimum non-residential square footage requirement removes a significant amount of required non-residential area. Additionally, Mountain View Elementary and Alamooral High Schools are currently over capacity. The number of students would be generated by this development would contribute further to overcrowding at these schools. And the reduction in the proffered mitigation and transportation impacts. With all that, staff has recommended denial of this ZMA, uh, and I'll take questions.
Great. Thanks. Very helpful. Um, any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Moore.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, uh, in the concerns, you mentioned that it's inconsistent with the Southern and Western Urban Neighborhoods Master Plan. I wanted to hear more about how that is inconsistent with, uh, the plan for this part of the growth area.
Well, the primary, um, recommendation for community mixed use is for that, uh, residential serving, retail, office space and other, um, other, uh, non-residential uses. So this reduction down to 10,000 staff feels isn't really in keeping with that, with that idea.
I was wondering if we have any figures on how many hundreds of thousands of square feet of empty commercial space we have in this county?
I do not have that information.
Okay. So then, uh, should we, you know, does staff then still concerned that they need to stick to a plan of X amount of commercial space when we've got a lot of empty commercial space?
We are, and, uh, I, I'd be happy to talk about other, um, other non-residential uses, but I think part of that issue is that, uh, non-residential is really location-specific. And our, our problem is really that in this part of town, all we are seeing right now is really development of residential, and we want to make sure that there is, uh, services that, that provide, you know, the needs for all that residential. So really it's the, it's the fact that it's location-specific. If you go down there on that south side of town, um, all, all throughout that development area, you have the county office building, region 10 and one small gas station that's, you know, not far from here, but still, um, just a, a very small, um, older model of gas station.
I was there a few days ago. I think, yeah, that part of town, uh, is, uh, the, the, the folks I know there often go to that whole Wegman Zone, which is just a quarter mile up the road. The other question I had about the school capacity, which I always kind of wonder about, about school capacity as a, a thing. We don't, we don't use that for any other demographic group when we're assessing proposals, but that's beside the point. I've said that before. Also, it says that, uh, Alamooral High is currently over capacity. Is this in the Alamooral High District?
I'm sorry, I'd have to verify.
It's not. It's in the Monticello District.
Yeah, I've, um, okay, sorry. I was, I was picking this up from someone else and that was something I didn't catch. You are right, Monach- it is in the Monticello High School District. Apologies.
How, uh, how over or under capacity is Monticello High School?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'd have to find those numbers.
I can, I think I read somewhere that basically it's, it's, I may be wrong on this, so check me, but it's expanding. Even when it expands, it's still going to be at capacity.
Monticello, we're on that.
No, okay, so.
Monticello's get room.
Monticello has room.
Got it.
All right, that's all my questions.
I'll, I'll back up on that. And also in this, the other school system, remember we're going to get a new elementary school down there in that same feeder district. And so unless this project, if it goes forward, is going to be done in two years, there's going to be plenty of seats in that area for, for certainly K through middle school. So I, I would like to just have that noted that A, the high school has capacity and B, the elementary school has capacity down there. But what I, what I would like to, to have some sense about, and so I'm sort of telegraphing this to the, to the applicant. Is this piece of property still under the opportunities and opportunity zone sort of pre, which sort of launched this project in the first place? Is it still, is it still in, in fact, in, in pack, in, in place there since I know that there's been, we had two in Alamooral County, and this is the only one that was, that, that moved forward a lot of those many years ago.
Yeah, correct. That is, it is still within that opportunity zone. I, I do see that the staff report does say that, uh, Monticello High School is expected to remain over capacity or near its limit for the next 10 years.
Um, the other thing is, so you mentioned, uh, early on, just so that I have an understanding, so, so the applicant understands some of these questions. You mentioned early on that they were looking to be able to put a, a drive-up window in this, something that, uh, something that had a drive-up window. And, and, and so are banks, banks with drive-up windows, are they considered, do they fall under this or is this only for food?
Yeah, that would be any drive-up window.
Be any drive-up, whether or not it's for food or it's for, or, or it's for cash, for other kind of dough. Okay. Then, then can I have a, and this is, I think you were saying, so we're adding more people onto blocks, whatever that is, one, two, three and four on the south two, ones across the street. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, there we are.
You want the blocks or you want the numbers? Yeah, sorry.
So two, so two, three and four. Now, two is the, is the, you, is the, the, the God forbid, you have too much stuff in your house and you have to stick it in a storage place.
No, that's five.
That's five. Well, of course, it would be the biggest one. And it's, but, and ones across the street.
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking at two, three and four.
Correct.
And so we're going to go from having just sort of daytime traffic there, where, if it had been a commercial building, to now having given the people work, basically traffic all day long. So they come in, they go to work or they don't go to work. And so we're, if I'm understanding correctly, we have not received what, we have not received a traffic study or any kind of revised numbers on what, on what traffic looked like coming out of the, um, coming, coming out of the community.
We, we have not.
And, but yet we're still saying that the applicant's saying he, he, he wants to reduce the amount of money in the proffer that would be allowed towards traffic enhancements.
Uh, correct, yes.
And with no, with sort of nothing that you've seen yet, and perhaps the applicant has something in, in their portfolio, nothing that you've seen that says, and this is why. So this is the rationale for reducing our proffer for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not connected to the fact that they're providing the right-of-way?
They were providing right-of-way before.
It, there were multiple reasons given. One was the, uh, the additional right-of-way that the applicant's going to dedicate. Another, and, uh, the other one is that the additional right-of-way would impact, um, infrastructure that they've already planned for.
I got you.
But they've already planned. But I thought when we looked at this a while ago, that this was really about trying to add to speeding the, uh, or making more efficient the trap, the traffic as it traveled through that intersection, which is sort of horrible right now.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
I, I guess I'm sort of struggling with why infrastructure equals flow of traffic. When we're really the infrastructure that I saw on that, on that piece there was really about sidewalks and the cur, and sort of ability to turn in. But it wasn't really about trying to enhance on, what is that road there that comes into it?
Old Lynchburg?
Yeah, thank you. Old Lynchburg Road. That's not really sort of enhancing Old Lynchburg Road. There, maybe you'll go to that photo and, 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 and help me there. I don't, I don't understand how the improvement in infrastructure is helping the flow of traffic there. I guess it's basically what I'm asking.
The, uh, so the, the project overall, the roundabout project is intended to improve, uh, both Old Lynchburg and Fifth Street.
I understood that. I'm trying to see what the, what the, what the applicant's contribution to that was supposed to be because my recollection, it was really about that intersection there. And not about, and not about a, a right-of-way.
Yes, the, uh, the applicant dedicated, uh, a piece of right-of-way that allowed, uh, for the previous, for the previous design of the roundabout. And in addition to that, they, uh, proffered half a million dollars to, uh, to the county CIP that could be used for the infrastructure improvements. The county's intent for that $500,000 was to use as a local match for the, um, roundabout overall. And that, and that local match has already moved forward. We, we're already moving forward with the, um, the project with VDOT.
With the, with the anticipation that we'd get the 500,000 or?
Yes, that, that is the anticipation.
If we say, if, we don't say yes to this, but if the supervisor say yes to this, it's going to be a $250,000 hole in that, in that check.
That's correct.
I definitely need to hear some more.
Can I, I'm sorry, just want to bounce back to the school conversation real quickly before we get too far past Commissioner Moore. I thought I heard you saying, I may have heard it wrong, that the staff report referred to Alamooral County School?
Alamooral High School. It's in the Monticello District.
But it does say in, in the staff report that I'm looking at school districts, Mountain View Elementary, Burley Middle and Monticello High School.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was looking at the concerns block over here.
Oh, gotcha. On the back.
Over there in the back, it says.
No worries. And then on the, in this underschools on page 12, it says, both Mountain View Elementary School and Monticello High School are currently over capacity.
Okay.
Right. But the, but the elementary schools got in, we, we, we said yes to a new school there. Which is supposed to come on according to the school board, uh, according to the schools. It's supposed to come on in two years.
And that says the elementary school is expected to remain over capacity for the next 10 years. And Monticello High School is expected to remain over capacity or near its limit for the next 10 years.
Okay. I'll see if I can find my notes. And I was just, I was just, I was just in a meeting about that. And it had, and it had the timing of that new school coming on. Was it called Mountainside or something? No, it's not Mountainside. Whatever the school is that's right near the, the, um, assisted living place then, or the rehabilitation.
We've been referring to it as the Southern Elementary Feeder School.
Is that what they're calling it? Okay, that, 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 the, I was at a meeting like within the last week and they had Center Two and this, that school coming on by 27.
Got it. Okay. I'm just, that just makes me confused. Good to find out what this really does to the adjacent schools. Thanks. All right, Commissioner Murray.
Yes, could you tell me a little bit more about the parking structures and the, the statement here? So are parking structures currently not allowed as a standalone use in these areas or?
Uh, that, that would be part of the neighborhood model zoning, so it would have to be identified in the previous. Cause that, uh, neighborhood model, as you recall, is, um, you, you build your own code of development, uh, for that. And so previously the, uh, the, uh, relegated structures were not part of that.
Yo, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. It's more tactical around the policy. So if you submit a proposal and it's approved under an old policy, and you want to open it up and relitigate it, you don't have to now be in compliance with the new policy that's in effect? This seems kind of odd to me. It seems like the way it's written, you don't. You're still under the old policy. But we're opening it up to make a modification.
I'm sorry, can you provide a reference? I'm not sure exactly.
Sure, sure. So if a proposal such as this, which was approved under the old affordable housing, 15% policy, approved, ship is sailed, left the dock, now we want to open it back up and relitigate it, does it not have to be in compliance with the new policy that's now in effect?
Yeah, apologies. I didn't understand exactly what you're asking, but, um, we had set a date for when we would start enforcing that new policy. And it didn't come when the new policy was first introduced. The board had initially said they wanted to do additional work and create, um, their incentive program before we started actually enforcing that new policy. The application was submitted right before we started enforcing that new policy. So that's why it was still under 50%. If it, if it had come in after that date, which I think was probably just a few months after this, I can't remember the exact, actually this is probably, six to eight months after, but that's when we actually started enforcing the new policy. So anything now that would be reopened will be enforced under the new policy.
Okay, so let's make sure I'm tracking. So this was reopened prior to the enforcement date?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Cruz. I think it was my nervous presentation. I just have a quick question. So it, I, I didn't see in the, in, in any of the illustratives, uh, any kind of bus shelter or any bus stops? Are there some plan for, with, with the improvements of the roundabouts and?
Uh, yeah, that, and that was part of the question that I was trying to make when, um, so the initial, uh, rezoning showed on the application plan in the area for, uh, a new enhanced bus stop. That was also discussed in the development agreement. And, um, but the new proposal no longer shows it. And so it just creates some confusion as to whether or not that's still part of the proposal.
Okay, that's, that was a line out of the, yeah, cause I didn't see one in either.
Yeah, it's not.
Are there any nearby from?
There are bus stops in the area. There's actually one in front of this location. Uh, our, our issue is that it's currently, um, a, a small asphalt, uh, sidewalk with a sign.
I've seen it.
The idea, the idea was that the enhanced bus stop was intended to include a shelter, bench, et cetera.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farah?
Yes, thanks. My questions are primarily financial in nature. So the first thing I want to ask about, I just have two questions. First thing is the $100,000 sort of incentive grant for being, I guess for being in the opportunity zone and trying to spur development there. So the applicants received that, but they didn't build it to, sorry, they didn't build it to what they originally proposed. How does that work?
They were only required to reserve the, the area for that. So if the, if the county or the developer were able to identify a tenant during that time period, then they would, uh, then that area would be available for them to construct an office space in and put it in there.
Okay, so, so following their due diligence, they can't find that biotech tenant, then they get to keep the funding. Is that right?
That's correct.
Cause it was an incentive to try real hard.
Yeah, and, and I, uh, just as a timing note, I will point out that, uh, that, that incentive occurred right before, I think it was January before COVID started. Um, so it was a change.
Terrible time to go out for, looking for in-office commercial tenants. All right. And the second question has to do, this was talked about in the staff report. So they, the applicant is asking to reduce their proffer from 500,000 to 250,000. And I, I'm, I, if I read the application correctly, I understood the rationale being, well, they were giving some land for the roundabout. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And that's what's shown on.
And you were, you were saying earlier that we don't know the value of the land that's dedicated to the roundabout. So it's hard to determine equivalency?
Correct.
All right. And then, um, is it, would it not also be true, just in your opinion, as a person with the background in transportation planning, that the applicant is getting some benefit from the, the roundabout, improving the traffic flow and circulation at this difficult intersection? So they're getting a benefit. They're not merely giving up land and that's it. You know, it's not, it's not a zero sum total. Like it's, they're getting a benefit from having done that. And they went into this development, understanding that the roundabout was coming. And that they would probably, since it's a circle, have to give up some land, right? Is that your understanding?
Agree.
Okay, so, all right. I think I, I think I have the understanding of everything now. Thank you. That's it.
I had a couple of questions, kind of related to the, I guess, planning aspects of this. A lot of my questions have been answered, uh, which is great. And that is, I don't know if this is a fair question, but I'll ask anyway. If, if this application had come in as a neighborhood model district, the way it is now being proposed, I guess, based on the, excuse me, based on the feedback that you all have provided in the staff report, it would not be an acceptable neighborhood model district design. Is that correct?
I think that with the, the, this amount, uh, the proposed amount of, um, non-residential, that would be a factor that we would find unfavorable.
Um, so let's talk a little bit about, uh, questions that Commissioner Moore was asking. So there was a shared use path, I think, that was intended to, at one point, cross the Fifth Street Bridge over 64.
Correct.
And that's no longer planned. Is that correct?
Um, it's still a plan. Uh, we have, um, we sought funding through Smart Scale to construct, uh, or to improve that bridge that goes over 64 that included a, um, shared use path. So this is, the plan is ultimately to have shared use path all along this area of Fifth Street and a portion of Old Lynchburg.
So for now, the one that's shown on here, the reserved right-of-way for the shared use path is, would be a path to nowhere at this point, right? Until it's connected across Fifth Street?
Um, yes, except there is existing, uh, pedestrian facilities, if you call it that. There's a, a minor, um, a, a narrow asphalt path that does. There's a a minor um, a narrow asphalt path that does uh, connect through this entire area. So this is really upgrading one segment of it. And and I will add that we have applied for funding twice, actually, for once for the bridge and once to go south from here all the way down to uh, southward. So there's two, uh, there's been two projects to try and fulfill that.
And and just to add a little bit more detail to that, I think with the previous application, that looks like it's not going to be funded. A lot of that was the bridges, they were trying to get that shared use path on it, had to rebuild the deck and on and on. So I think what the VDOT sort of realizing is probably cheaper even to build parallel pedestrian structure there and and it's, this is going to be another, um, VDOT is already planning for another uh, design process, you know, project pipeline for that intersection in their next round.
Great, thank you. And then the last question, I guess, is about the um, the blocks and the design of the blocks. The, I see on page, what is this? There's no page numbers. Uh, maybe there are. Yeah, it's the code of development, page eleven. Um, it just has some graphics that show two of the of the blocks, but I don't see any graphic representation of what happens in other blocks due to the redesign or potential addition of residential. Is that right?
That that's correct. Um, there's a a faded design that was there from the previous and it said, the plan does say that that's conceptual only. So it really reflects the non, non-residential built out. So we don't have any design for what the residential might look like.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, any other questions for staff?
Can, and uh, Chair Miss, so can I just add, um, I I did want to uh, make sure I was correct. And with the transportation uh, numbers, we did receive um, a estimate of the number of trips that two hundred and forty units would generate. So that was one thousand ninety-eight. Um, the, and the old proffer or the new proffer does still include a maximum number of total vehicular trips, uh, not to exceed thirty-two hundred daily trips or five hundred and nine peak hour trips. Uh, the, it's hard to say exactly where within that range this might fall because we don't know the exact mix of residential units. But just wondering how like that they did provide some numbers and those are in the applicant's um, uh, narrative.
Great, thank you. All right, all right.
And I did want to uh, echo your correction. The Monticello High's uh, enrollment um, capacity, uh, expected capacity does have it slightly over capacity right now. It'll be over capacity by one student in a couple of years.
Got it.
There's that.
And that one person, we know who it is.
And I confirm that it is, it is two years. And I sent, I sent both of you that, the document from the schools.
Great, thank you. Cool. All right, with that, I'll open up the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Great, um, good evening, uh, Chair Missel, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with Shimp Engineering. I'm here tonight representing the Street Forest LLC, who's the uh, owner and developer of this project. Here with me tonight is Kyle Redinger. Um, he is the developer of Albemarle Business Campus. Um, I'm just going to go over a a few details of the proposal and then I'm going to turn it over to Kyle um, to to kind of hop into some of the details and to answer some of the questions and the items that were discussed um, earlier. Um, so just going over the project history, some of you have sat here and seen this project through every single one of its iterations from the first time where we came before you um, in in twenty nineteen with the planned unit development. Um, and then uh, modified that to a neighborhood model uh, district. Um, and then uh, we, you, many of you were here as well when we came before you for an amendment to uh, that NMD uh, to uh, permit uh, biotechnology tenant space to permit some larger building footprint sizes and taller height. Um, that was, as was mentioned earlier by staff, that was uh, right, I think, well, excuse me, that one, I think, was right after COVID. But everything else within uh, for the first approval uh, was obtained right before COVID. So a lot changed um, with uh, you know, the the financials and the reality um, of this project. Um, and so this before you is just kind of uh, showing the history and and the various approvals um, and revisions to this plan over time. Um, Kevin gave a great staff report, so thank you for that. So this is just kind of going over the the development. It's it's five blocks in total. Uh, the amendment before you tonight is spoke, is focused specifically on blocks uh, two through four. Uh, blocks five is uh, currently built out as office and self-storage space. Blocks one is built out with a hundred and twenty-eight residential units. That is the maximum number of residential units currently permitted in ABC. And so uh, the entire development is currently maxed out for residential units. Um, a summary of a a few of the revisions here, uh, the main for being for residential density, uh, increasing blocks two through four to thirty-four DUA. Um, revising the minimum non-residential square footage in block four, which is our um, kind of corner most. Um, if if Kyle had some more commercial tenants interested, this would be the most desirable block uh, for them to be located. Previously, that minimum in block four was at four thousand square feet, so we increased it to ten. But as Kevin noted, um, reduced the overall um, minimum non-residential requirements throughout uh, blocks uh, two through five or two through four, excuse me. And an additional uh, component of this application, and I know that Kyle has um, some additional information to offer uh, on this as well as regarding the justification for the reduction um, in the proffered amount. So uh, the proffer amendment is a part of this application proposing to reduce the proffer uh, to two hundred fifty thousand, but then also provide additional right-of-way. Um, that is, and the additional right-of-way area that you see here is currently is per the most recent VDOT plan. And I think Kyle will speak to this, that there's been um, quite a few iterations um, over time. And and he's worked through VDOT with those, but this is kind of showing the the most recent uh, proposal that we have in front of us. Um, uh, just kind of the main justification for this is that flexibility is key to continued project success. Um, and I'm just going to go through a few examples, which I think you all uh, may be familiar with throughout the county. I think one thing with these plan developments, we, you know, try to, try to get it right um, the first time. But market factors change, um, what can be built and can't, uh, you know, what's viable changes over time. I think COVID was obviously something none of us saw coming and that um, it didn't bode well for a project called Albemarle Business Campus. And uh, so I'm just kind of bringing up a few examples uh, in the county that of planned development districts over time and how large commercial developments were planned, but there really just wasn't the demand for it and there weren't the rooftops for it. So this is an example, HTC Area C, this was first rezoned um, back in two thousand and one, I believe. Um, and I wanted to call attention to blocks two and seven, uh, which remained vacant for um, eight, twenty years, basically, until um, the code of development was modified to permit residential uses. Block two is now built out with townhomes. Those are constructed. That project is completed. Um, people live in Hollymead Towns, more more rooftops in Hollymead Town Center um, uh, in in these locations. And then I also just wanted to call out the fact uh, that block nine um, is still currently vacant and block seven is nearing uh, submission for a final site plan. It currently has initial site plan approval for residential units. But uh, what built out first in in Hollymead uh, Town Center was a few commercial blocks. The hotel is more recent. The townhomes um, were built earlier on and that um, was because there was demand for it at the time. Kind of another example, um, just of of, you know, Belvedere and one of the commercial blocks there that permits up to thirty thousand square feet of commercial. Um, ever since that project was first approved in two thousand and five, I believe, block two has built two thousand square feet of commercial and the rest of block two is currently being built out as um, eight uh, residential or nine, excuse me, residential units um, in in that area. Another um, example is uh, Wickham Pond, which has a mixed use and commercial uh, component. Everything Wickham Pond has built out with the exception of block one. And so I think I just call your attention to these examples, um, just to bring um, some light to the fact that that flexibility is key and Kyle is really trying to make something happen here. Um, and it, so we feel um, that, you know, this allowing for broader zoning flexibility kind of, you know, gives him the opportunity to 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 move forward with that and also uh, to to have some activity going on um, in this pretty um, uh, you know, key area of the development areas. Kyle, I'll turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelsey. I'm Kyle Redinger. Uh, been developing in the community for the last twelve years or so. Seen a couple of y'all for the whole time period. Um, but just want to uh, thank you, Kevin, for your presentation. Just want to give you a little more background and a couple of key uh, facts that were associated with the project that uh, were not discussed, particularly related to the roundabout and VDOT. So when we first rezoned this years ago, um, the the thinking was the county wanted to do some sort of transportation improvement. This was a challenging intersection. You know, we recommend a stoplight because it's a lot cheaper, a lot faster to get done. The county wanted to do roundabout. We said, okay, sure. Uh, in exchange for that, we'll do a uh, cash proffer in addition to uh, land dedication. Um, I don't remember the exact timing, but at some point when we were under construction of the apartments, we saw the initial plan for the new Rita BDOT roundabout design. Uh, the prominent, you know, I couldn't unfortunately find it, but the prominent piece of that was the Stormwater Pond was, you know, predominantly on our property, taking up pretty much that entire uh, corner. And subsequently, that design has been reduced and changed over the last few years. So we've been dealing a little bit with a moving target in terms of what VDOT wants from us now. Um, but I think, you know, whether or not there's Stormwater Facility on there, it's not clear. It appears that's gone away in the most recent plan, but VDOT has not, to be clear, has not finalized their exact plans yet for the site. So it's a little bit of a moving target in terms of what um, they want on here. So the thinking was on the proffer reduction was that, you know, the county and VDOT and us don't want to go through a fight in a condemnation process uh, for this land, that rather we'd make a change to our plans. You know, we had other market factors that that are demanding more apartments there, at least down the road. Um, so the thinking was that we could put a deal together that revise our proffers down in exchange for this new land dedication without a fight where everyone would would be friendly. Can we, Kevin, can you put back up the roundabout exhibit or Kelsey?
Oh, this is on Kelsey's.
Thank you. So I know it, the the orange area looks relatively small. Um, uh, sorry.
It's on laptop.
It's what?
Did you want the laptop or you want?
No, hit there. They've got it on theirs.
I thought you said Kevin. I'm sorry.
Um, but it's not entirely clear to us how that's going to impact our site design. So we've spent, you've seen renderings, right, of the front of the site. We spent a lot of money on renderings, on site plan design, on putting infrastructure in. It's not clear to us, you know, I mean, there are plans floating around here and at some point they'll be finalized, but it's not clear exactly how that's going to roll out. We have some pretty substantially challenging grade on this side. If you've walked it, you know, the the corner close to Cavalier Crossing now at Kane, I think, is about ten foot uh, below street grade. And that corner, at least of it right now, is uh, several feet below grade. So presumably, we're going to be left with a pretty large slope uh, walking path that we're gonna, that we're gonna have to connect to. Um, presumably some stormwater infrastructure champion. So it's not, I can't honestly sit here and say, oh, you know, here are the dozen plan changes we're going to have to make. You know, we did renderings, we did some site plan, but not, you know, we didn't have anything finalized because this VDOT plan was floating out there. Now, on the, on the business side, the other thing that was happening is like, well, you know, how can you show a tenant uh, potential building or commercial space? Or how can you go to a bank and ask for financing when you don't know if you're going to own the land in one or two years? Um, so that's been additional challenge, in addition to COVID and all the marketing challenges, you know, we've sort of said, you know, let's, the hope was that this plan would be totally done by this meeting. It's not. So I can't sit here and say, oh, here's my direct impacts. Obviously, we can take a, you know, a standard market calculation of the value of land and calculate that and do the proper reduction that way. Um, but the harder parts are, hey, we had to wait an additional four years while VDOT and the county figured out what they wanted here for the roundabout. And furthermore, we couldn't do anything regardless because no bank's going to finance an asset that potentially could be condemned uh, through VDOT's process and then, you know, that if if anyone's been through that, that's, you know, it's ten-year legal battle that you don't, no one, no one really wins in. So it was really a lose-lose, I think, without some sort of amendment to our proffer situation. I'm not saying that our current plan is is ideal or perfect. Obviously, the staff didn't support it. Um, and I think, I think ultimately, we would like to see a a full VDOT plan that's done in ink before we come back and sort of adjust the proffers in in more specific detail.
Great. I think maybe we could leave it there in two times.
Oh.
Well over. And we can ask you questions though.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, we can continue if we want to. Who would like to start with questions? Christopher Farah?
I I guess, um, maybe you could go into a little more detail about the, all that VDOT complication. So are you saying that because of the uncertainty, that you don't know exactly what land they're taking and what the impacts would be or whether they'd be creating new steep slopes or whatever challenges that you anticipate having additional expenses? And that's why you want to reduce your proffer from five hundred to two fifty?
Right, so we, you know, we rendered a whole site with an office pad, for instance, that didn't assume there was this, you know, ten-foot strip taken out adjacent to where we were going to put a graded sidewalk. And, you know, we don't know, at this point, we don't know how how the plan's going to have to change it. It doesn't look like a lot on that, but it it may be. Um, it's just, it's hard to say. And it's, I, you know, if you're looking at this from a, you know, being corporate and I've got VDOT condemnation coming down the, down the pipeline, that's not, you know, a very secure feeling for a tenant potentially that wants to be there a long time.
Okay. Can I ask just one clarifying question on the same line of questioning? So from this exhibit, it looks like you're dedicating, you would be dedicating permanently point zero eight acres, right?
Yeah, I think I assume that's the accurate calculation.
The rest of it's temporary or already reserved, right?
Yeah, we've made it, we've made a prior dedication as part of our original proffer package that's already been completed.
Yeah.
And that was based on.
Two fifty, the two hundred fifty thousand, that's essentially, you're looking at the point zero eight acres.
Ri- right. So when we, when we, the first plans that we saw when we started this application were for a Stormwater Pond that took up that whole corner essentially, and that's been reduced. There were additional stormwater outflows that were planned potentially on our property. Those are not shown in this exhibit. I don't know where those stand now. Presumably, they've been engineered away. But again, I haven't seen the final plan. So I I think generally VDOT's been amenable to being more friendly to our site situation. Um, but like, like I said, we've sort of been shooting at a moving target in terms of that reduction. But ha- had it been the the pond, for sure, that would have been, you know, an adequate number. But I think probably there's some negotiation that needs to happen after we get the final plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Durlock?
Uh, yes, thank you for your presentation. Can you shed some light on the bus shelter situation? Is it in? Is it out? What is it?
Again, this is a VDOT issue. So when VDOT came to us with one of the early plans, they said, we're going to put a bus stop on the other side of the street from your property. And we said, well, we have this proffered plan that says we have to put one here, but it doesn't, you know, and I think we, Kevin was in the meeting or some other VDOT representative said, I mean, we're, it doesn't make sense for us to build a bus stop that's never going to be used right next to another bus stop. So that that was the thinking that we were just, i- if, and I thought the profit revised proffer had said that if the bus stop had been built on the adjacent site, we were no longer obligated to do it. So it just wasn't us building a bus stop for no reason. But then the intent is not to remove ourselves from that obligation. It was just, it really didn't make this. I think we also asked to not have to build a second path right next to the VDOT path as well, because that wasn't clear uh, in the proffer language.
But is, there's no bus shelter on 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 that, on your side of the street, right, except for that small?
Right. So, yeah, so our infrastructure improvements for the.
So we just, so even if VDOT would put something on the other side of the street, are you seeing a cross uh?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Can you see my cursor?
You're saying there?
Yes. Yeah, Kevin, can you know what the status is on that bus stop? Is that out of the plan now?
I I do not know. Um, I can look at the most recent plans I have, but I don't.
Okay, so with the most recent meeting that we had with VDOT, with Admiral County in the room, there was a bus stop right where my little cursor is. And if that's gone away, then this is a non-issue, but. There.
Oh, um, I can, I can. Oh, I can, I can actually pull that up. I have a copy of that. This is the previous design, but I don't see a bus stop. Or I'm sorry, when I say previous design, in October, we received a 60% design for this project. And it matches with what was used to come up with that amount of necessary right of way. This is the most recent design that we received from VDOT. I believe it's what the applicant used to come up with their their new right of way dedication. You can see that the the stormwater pond has moved. But I do not see a bus stop shown on this current plan. The previous application plan required an enhanced bus stop with with a shelter and a and bench. And so if there were going to be a change to that, I think what the county would ask for would be that even if it's not on their property, that they provide the the funding or the materials for the enhanced bus stop. Because that wouldn't be a part of, that typically wouldn't be a part of a VDOT plan.
Thank you. Thank you. What is the availability of the vacant units in block one?
For the existing apartments?
Yes, the 128.
And we're about three quarters full right now in our lease up, yeah.
What's the target market or the target audience for that? Is that student housing or?
We have a few students, it's young professionals, you know, UVA employees, you know, a lot of hospital system related folks.
Could you tell us a little bit about the the prospects for the non-residential? Like what's what's changed since?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, believe me, we we had, you know, office tent there, we would have built it years ago and you wouldn't see me here today, which would be great for everyone. But we, so we we started, we did, we do actually have one commercial tent on there, PS Fertility. It's a startup that got spun out of UVA that's received some funding. They they have a lab space in there and we were able to subsidize a lot of that construction through the storage building. Also, I know people think storage is only for people who have too much stuff. That's not untrue. About a third, a third of our tenants are small businesses in town and people storing stuff seasonally, you know, makers and stuff like that. So there is certainly that use that that does have a small business benefit, although it is not not very sexy. It's there. So we, so we, a couple of years ago, we, you know, there was, it looked, it appeared to be a lot of money flowing into biotech for biotech manufacturing. And we felt like with the biotech institute at UVA, that the timing was was very ripe for providing a site that was shovel ready for biotech tenants. You know, we'd, we'd worked with Thalhammer, a commercial broker, for years on that. I just hired another commercial brokerage team to also market that site. So the the hope is still that we can get a larger credit worthy tenant in one of those spaces. I think there's, there's, there, it is true, there's a lot of, particularly, there's a lot of demand for sort of light industrial flex for small tenants. And, you know, but unfortunately, by the time you like underwrite a new construction, you know, on a smaller building, the rents don't don't work for the smaller tenants. So you really need, you know, a large hospital system or out of town biotech manufacturer or, you know, Fortune 1000 type tenant that has the credibility and the resources to afford that that kind of rent. You know, I talked to the school department about putting a school there. You know, I don't know why that I'm kind of, this building is in Charlottesville, but you know, we've got a great site down Fifth Street. One day they could take over. So we we've sort of explored all commercial avenues that that were reasonable and just felt like a higher and better use might be to add, you know, an apartment usage on the site going forward. And that doesn't mean that we're not still out there with our commercial brokers trying to find a tenant. It's just been challenging. And furthermore, there's sort of macro factors in the real estate development environment that made things challenge. Interest rates when we started this project were zero. Now we're, you know, financing things that closer to 10% for construction loans. Material prices have gone up substantially, you know, it might be in another inflationary period. So there's, there's a host of challenges that made it a lot more expensive to build than when we started this. And that's, again, pushed rents higher and it made it more difficult.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah. So so when I think about, you know, commercial, the kind of commercial that neighborhoods depend upon, I think about you, think about Old Trail. You know, and think about you have a, you have coffee shop, you have several restaurants, you have ACAC physical therapy. You have a bunch of, there's a dentist, I believe, over there. So there's a, there's services that people that are in that in Old Trail would walk to. I don't see people regularly walking to this, the storage facility. So have you considered thinking about particularly, you know, as you, with the apartments, putting commercial on the bottom floor, something that would be services that residents would use? Because I feel like it's it's far enough here from other commercial areas that they would use those.
Yeah, and I think you're totally right. When we did the the storage building, we actually built an outdoor patio there. We put a grease trap in the building. So we were, we were hoping for a brewery or a restaurant or a coffee shop or something to go there. It just so happens we found PS Fertility. Yeah, and we're not trying to take away all commercial. We still have another, I think, 10 or 12, 10 or 12, 10,000 square feet. We're retaining on that corner for those types of uses that you mentioned. I just don't, you know, at least right now, there's not 100,000 square foot of class A office or biotech demand. And, you know, I don't, you know, I just don't want, you know, I don't want to, I don't like having properties that are inactive and just sit there for years and years. And, you know, we're going on five years on this site now and haven't had much appetite for the scale of the project that we wanted to go for initially. So, but, you know, the the idea is to reconfigure this. And and sure, I think with, you know, with the density that we propose, I mean, that for sure would require some over under type development. There's certain financing challenges associated with that. But like we did with the storage building, when you build a really big building that has other productive uses, or like you build a lot of apartments, you know, now you can subsidize costs for a gym space or coffee shop or dentist office as part of that construction process. And it makes it more affordable and reasonable for for more local type businesses. So the hope was that if you make it productive or something like that, you know, then we can build a speculative space, you know, more financially prudently. And and that gives us an opportunity to bring in those tenants that you mentioned.
Okay, but there were some of those areas you were reducing to zero commercial space, right?
We were reducing the required minimum.
Oh, the required minimum. Okay.
So so really, I mean, this is just about us adding the option to add apartment uses on the site. We're not changing the scale or scope of the building substantially. It's, it's just really adding that option. And I think that sort of begs the question for me is like, you know, I think it probably makes a lot of sense for us to defer this, get the final VDOT plan back. But also, I I just like to hear from the planning commission. I think the key question for us is what, you know, what is an ideal mix in terms of, you know, residential to commercial? Because, you know, if 240 to 10,000 is not appropriate, you know, can you give me guidance on a number that, you know, you would be more supportive of? Or is that an appropriate number to start with? I think that's, that's a big question, I think, from the planning commission. As we can work out the proffers, I think, when we have the final plan and get a number that's justifiable. But really, that question is more a planning commission question.
So I think what I just heard you say is you're requesting a deferral, but you'd like to hear our feedback on some of those specific items. So why don't we just quickly can continue our questions for you? Because that'll maybe help clear up some thoughts. And then I I have some comments for you on on exactly that point, if that's okay.
If I'm understanding, good to see you. I mean, I will say to you that I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that you couldn't get, well, I never thought you were going to get the biotech people, but I said that a number of years ago. I'm sorry not to see the design because I thought the design was forward looking. I thought you were trying to bring a different sort of visual, sort of visual, sort of commercial look onto that Fifth Street that I was actually quite pleased with. And I'm sorry that's not going to happen. But I got a couple of questions for you. So when you look at blocks, ah, here we are, Chelsea, I can't see that, madam. Thank you. Is that three? Usually, you're the person that I can't, I can't see that number. Although I'm getting new glasses tomorrow, so maybe I'll change that. So three and and two, no, three and two, two and three. Right, the lavender one and the aqua one. That's where you're saying that you're going to look at a a minimum, a zero minimum commercial, right? And the rest of it, assuming that it stays at zero, the rest of it will become residential. I'm I'm understanding that. And that you're asking, you're asking, will we perhaps come back and ask for that to be four stories or five stories?
I think four, four stories from the road, from our internal road grade.
Your internal road, because the back, the lavender piece slopes down a good deal. And so perhaps when you come back, you'd make that a bit taller. Since from the, from, from, from Fifth Street extended, it would, the the visual on the slope of that might give you some more height there, which then would be allow you to increase the number of affordable, affordable units. Where would you put, where are you putting the the structured parking? On both the lavender and the and the aqua piece? Or on all three of them are a common structure for our structure, structure parking?
Is it all of them? Just three and four. And so the idea, if we did, you know, feasibly, most realistically, it would be a podium style build. I'm not sure if the economists would support this because it's not an.
Got it.
Urban site.
And then on block, on the, on the golden block, not the one with the, everybody has to store their grandmother's stuff block. But in the one in front of that, I guess it is block four. The orange block, thank you, the orange block. That's the one where you're going to have, you're still having zero commercial, minimum zero commercial. Are you going to have, I couldn't, I couldn't quite follow. What's your commercial piece on that one?
10, 10,000.
But that's the 10,000 one. And then above that, you'd have residential.
We have the app, yeah, the app.
You'd have the option to put residential. Okay, so you're asking my question, whether or not I think that's enough? No. I think if we look at a 10,000, that's really basically a small, no, that's not even small. That's actually a very small, that could easily be a single person, a single occupant space at 10,000. Because that's really, that's not, that's not very big. Or you could have some small, some small offices there, which would get you back in that format. But I was, if I was trying to enliven that area, I would ask you to do something larger than than 10,000 as a minimum, as a minimum. That's my, that's where I would sit on that. Particularly, I mean, if you could do, I'll, I'll leave it that that's in your coming back to us. So there'd be two structured, or would there be three structured parking? Would something behind four, would that be all surface parking?
Yeah, I think three. So, yeah, the the corner piece or 10,000 is, I don't think we would do.
But that would be surface parking. Okay, that makes perfectly good sense to me. Okay, that would be on my point, Chair, if you're asking me, I think 10,000 commercially. If you're going to try and enliven or give some options for for the, we were saying, you're talking about 240 people could possibly live there? Or 240 units could possibly.
I mean, I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty urban.
Yeah, well.
Realistically, it's, you know, about the same size as block one. So realistically, it'd be 120.
120 units, 120 units. Well, if you put 120 units there, plus 120 units across the street, you're starting to get the sort of the number of people who might look for or be able to support some type of service there. And so that's why I think 10, I think you'd be underselling yourself for 10,000. Plus, remember what what you have across the street. You got the county office building with that whole suite of people that are across the street. And I don't know what what happened with Southwood. Southwood was supposed to put a commercial sector, you know, as you came in, they put those apartments. I don't think it's going on on the right. I don't know. And the apartments, the last time I was down there, didn't look like they were putting any commercial in the apartments. Then, oh, oh, come on, Michael, come on in.
Yeah, I'm, we've been talking to those guys a little bit about that, too. And I think, my understanding is the commercial was always going to be more internal to the site. They've, they've been, they're sort of working towards the internal part of their site.
Okay, well, then that answered my question. So that in fact, may in fact lead you to some decisions that would be helpful as you're planning that, the golden, the the golden block.
Commissioner Murray, thoughts?
And kind of echoing Commissioner Bivins, I did look up the average size of a Trader Joe's is about 10,000 square feet. So it's just small. It's not, it's not that.
That's what I was thinking. That size.
Yeah, it's a small, small grocery.
Like Costco.
I I was thinking of, I was reminded of some months ago when we were talking about the proposed development up 29 near Wawa, where we all kind of actually said, boy, this is like on a main road. It can handle the traffic. There's a lot of like potential to to really make this thing really dense. I I would encourage that. I think it's, it's just a quick shot to town. I think a lot of housing would be really beneficial in this spot. We often talk on this commission about like, well, you know, is that the right spot for a lot of housing? I feel like this one kind of is. It's surrounded by a lot of pretty dense housing already. I think you could go up, you know, to be perfectly honest. You know, up or down, depending on how it costs out. The, yeah, I mean, I I do concur that it it does feel like more than 10,000 might be good. It's not like a, maybe quite the level of rubbing point that it is for some colleagues. But with the the daytime office workers right across the street. And and again, if you've got potentially 400 ish or 350 total units in the area, that's a fair number of people that can actually support a thing. So that's, otherwise, I I think, yeah, I appreciate you kind of recognizing that the VDOT question marks make all of this a little funky.
I'll, I'll throw out a couple of thoughts. With all due respect to my colleagues, hopefully I'm not alienating myself. I'm not going to come out with a number for you for commercial or for non-residential. I don't think that's really possible because you're the one with the pro forma. You're the one that's got to figure out the market. You're the one that's got, you know, inputs and outputs that you have to balance. What I would lean more towards is what, what does good planning look like? And so I'll turn your question around and ask you the question. When you initially zoned this to a neighborhood model district and you had 20,000 square feet in block two and you had 25,000 square feet in block three, what were you thinking was a reasonable amount of non-residential use? And why did you choose those numbers initially?
I think we were parking limited on surface parking originally.
Parking limited?
Yeah, what we could support with a surface parking.
That's the right.
Design.
So your thought was that you were basing it sort of on parking that you thought, based on the requirements of commercial or non-residential parking, you had the square footage on the ground to be able to park that much non-residential.
Exactly. And then when we came back for the larger biotech building, we added the structure because that was necessary to make more usable square foot in in the building.
Got it. And so when you're designing a neighborhood model district, what is your strategy for understanding compatible planning uses? And how much do you take into consideration the influence of internal trip capture and things like that that helped to take some of the burden off of the adjacent roads as well as walkability and all of the neighborhood model principle issues?
And I, you know, I will say nothing's really changed from an internal pathway and connections and park and green space for the, from a design standpoint. So we'd still have to comply with all those prior, and I don't have the pretty renderings in front of me right now. But we still have to comply with all of that stuff that we've already planned. This is just a different use. And, you know, I think, I think, I absolutely agree that you want services internal and walkable. And, you know, that's a nice amenity for everyone living there. But, you know, I, it it does come down to a number because I have to put a number in the plan that someone's going to vote on at some point in the future. So.
Yeah.
You know, to me, there's like a ratio, you know, maybe it's 20,000, maybe it's, you know, if it's, you know, 50,000 like that, that's really problematic, right? Because that's really a back to office design.
Well, and that's where market studies come in, right? So you can look at your, your sort of concentric rings of study and what's your, what's your captured audience? And how does that influence it? So without a a real walkable way to get over to Fifth Street Station, it would seem to me that you would want to have more non-residential to support those units and the number of heads and beds in that general area. I just don't know what the number is. And I think the challenge which you faced is you designed for one market. The market changes, you come back, you have to design for another one, it changes. And then you get back, which I guess is partly why neighborhood model districts are meant to be as flexible as possible. But you got, yeah. The other thing that I'll just throw out there and and I've, for for me, the issue, as you pointed out, the VDOT question, right? for, for me, the issue, as you pointed out, the V dot question, right? Um, just understanding, I mean, if you're gonna say that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is essentially to offset the value of your point zero eight acres, which is like thirty-four hundred square feet, it just needs to have some substantial justification in addition to the fact that you were asked for it last almost a year ago and haven't gotten it, or, or then hasn't, haven't paid it yet. So part of me is thinking, well, if it was asked for back then, that's when it was due. If you're now changing that, it's sort of like, well, the, you know, that's sort of a, I don't know. It feels like it's vested, it's not the right word, but it's owed. So I, I don't know, was owed based on the rec, the request, which was upon this trigger, you will pay it. And that triggers occurred and it hasn't been paid. And now you're sort of redoing the, the rules. So I, I'd have a real challenge with that personally, but.
Yeah, and I'm not a lawyer, but I, you know, I was instructed, this was the best way to petition the board for that, for that proffer change to go through this process. So.
And I, I may be the only one up here who thinks like that, but just throw that out there.
No, I would join you, Chair, because that was my whole point when I asked, uh, Mr. McDermott on whether or not the county would forward what its proposition on doing, I forget, you know, that they have various ways that we can do, but we'll, we'll kick in this amount of money. If the county's gonna kick in this amount of money based on a five hundred thousand dollar anticipated payment from the applicant. And now the, and, and so we, we, I assume we received the, the funding to do that based on that package. Now, all of a sudden, we're saying that package is gonna be done. But now we, now we have a, a proposition to have a, a, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar space gap that we've gotta fill. That feels as you were, as I think one of us, I think maybe that was Lisa was saying, so you're gonna get the benefit of this, but you're gonna pay half of what you committed to pay.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, that just feels, you know, the good thing about it is that we don't have to deal with the proffer. It's supervisors that have to deal with the proffer. But I also know our supervisors hear us when we say things, well, that just makes me confused. I wish I could get a deal like that. I'll promise you a half a million dollars, and then when the deal comes through, I'm gonna give you a quarter of a million dollars. I would be in business.
Well, I'd just also point out quickly that the, the changing of the mix to more residential means more cost for the county. We're, we're going to have to send those kids to school. And, you know, not only are they going to private schools, so it, it's more expensive for the county. The county wants more commercial because tax wise, and, and the county's administrator said in the budget meeting town hall last week that the county is overly reliant on, you know, residential real estate taxes, that we need more commercial, so.
But we've still got the applicant up here, um, and we are still in, uh, uh, the public hearing. So are there any other questions for the applicant before we open it up to the public?
I just had a, a comment. Um, I can't give you the perfect mix of thousands of square foot of commercial to residential. But I do just say, I really like the idea of having commercial on the first floor and going dense on this site because it is really close to town. So it means if people are commuting to town for their job, it's a very short commute. And hopefully there could be better transportation options in the future. Maybe you could get your bike all the way to town, it's really not that far. Um, if you look at like buildings like, and this isn't that dense, I understand, but the Pearl District in, in Portland, they have some really wonderful apartment buildings with first floor commercial. And, and I've talked about that, where you can ride the elevator down to the first floor and get your groceries and ride back up to your unit. I mean, those kind of, I, I think we don't have that kind of stuff in this region. We don't have like the kind of design that I see in other, other communities. And I'm not trying to say we're gonna be like Portland, I'll go, I'll go crazy, but.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I just, I just feel that, um, you could do something a little different here. If you're getting a lot more of the residential, then you'll have enough of a customer base perhaps to, to lure some people. And there isn't a lot nearby that you can walk. You can't, I mean, Fifth Street Station's up the road, but you can't walk there. Um, you really can't. And so I think you'd have a much bigger customer base of all the residential that's coming around you. Um, but I, I mean, I, I do, I do sympathize. I didn't think the biotech was really gonna fly myself either, but I was excited that you were gonna do some kind of different commercial space that doesn't look the same and was actually modern and forward thinking. So whatever you do with your buildings, maybe you could be a little more creative since it is more front facing than what you've already built, which is more, you know, in the back, which is just kind of standard. So maybe, um, wow us with a little bit more innovation in the design and, and make it have a play, a characteristic of place making. You know, that, that there's a there there. I know I've arrived and it's something special.
Plus one to that. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you both.
Chair.
Uh, is that, yes, sir.
Chair. Can we?
You know, since the applicants asked for it, we actually can.
Okay, okay.
If anybody's made the trip tonight to comment on this, um, application, I just wanna give them an opportunity to speak. I don't have anybody signed up. Anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, well, with that, I think we closed the public hearing. And, uh, we've heard the applicant's request for a deferral. Would anybody like to?
Could, could we just clarify that just for the record? I mean, can we have that, if the applicant is interested in a referral, can we have the applicant request that again, please?
Yes, to make a formal statement.
Would the applicant please request an official deferral and let us know whether it is to a date? Well, it's not that date, is it a date?
Well, that would be up for the applicant to request.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to request a referral, uh, for the next available date after the V dot land, I guess dedication is finalized, if that's possible.
Do we have a date for that? I can't give you a date specific, in other words, no. Okay. So what that means is that we would need to re-advertise that, so, um, but, but we can certainly take the applicant's request into account. Uh, it just won't, we won't be able to identify calendar date as of today. But, but I, I think his request is satisfactory. And now again, if it's up, if the commission would like to consider a deferral, it would be up to Commissioner to make that motion, um, for a deferral.
Thank you, thank you, thanks again.
Both our districts.
I know.
My part's already developed. All right. You're, you have all the issues. Um, I, 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 I moved to accept the applicant's for, uh, request for a deferral.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, can we have a roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Bivin?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you both.
Just a little programming note, I was over texting the V dot engineer, trying to figure out what the date was. He's cooking dinner, so he didn't have it right off the top of his head.
Didn't drop what he was doing for the county call?
Yeah, but I just would say that, you know, I'm doing this while we're waiting for Becca to come up. I, I know that the, they're in the design build process right now. They started with the intersection at, at two forty and two fifty out at, um, in Croze. And this is gonna be, they're very close to finishing up the design. So we'll be able to work with the applicant on that one question.
Great, great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to SP twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four Spring Hill Farm, and I'll ask for the staff report.
Thank you for your patience with the, uh, musical chairs. Um, I will be presenting, uh, this special use permit request, which is actually an amendment to a nineteen eighty special use permit. So I'll give you some general information about the location of the property and the vicinity of the request. Go over the history of this one. It is, uh, a type of item you probably never see again. And, or it's unique in terms of its zoning history. And then I have some slides in terms of the specifics of the request and what, uh, has changed since we issued the packet. Um, and we'll go over the status of that. In this case, uh, it is an application where staff has recommended denial. And just like the item before you, you may recommend approval, denial, or, um, at the request of the applicant, uh, who's been advised that, uh, requested deferral. In this case, this property, uh, subject to the special use permit is located, uh, west of town and just south of Ivy, our former, one of our former villages in the comprehensive plan. Uh, looking more closely at it, it is generally between Grassmere Road to the north and Dick Woods Road to the right. And each of these slides, uh, is oriented, uh, to talk about the property between Grassmere and Dick Woods Road. And then, uh, some of the lots are showing up there from prior, uh, prior, uh, plats associated with Spring Hill Village with Lob Lolly and Spring Lane primarily. I mentioned the history of the parcel in nineteen eighty-one being when the special use permits were originally approved. They were approved under a prior section of the ordinance that allowed you to cluster, um, twenty-one acre lots. Basically, you could, uh, you could create as many two acre lots as the zoning allowed. And also, um, there was the availability of, um, twenty-one acre lots could also be clustered. In this case, not all of the lots that could have been clustered in nineteen eighty-one were, uh, platted. And the residue was, uh, included a, the special use permit included a condition for the residue that a special use permit amendment was necessary for that to be developed. So what we have before you this evening is an amendment to that nineteen eighty-one special use permit. There was prior history that we outlined, but those permits have expired, those special use permits are no longer valid. So that's how we jump from back, that's how we're jumping back to eighty-one, if you will. Uh, but in between eighty-one and today, there was a special use permit that you reviewed in, uh, twenty twenty-two that approved a corner of that, um, adjacent to Dick Woods Road, uh, to be developed for two residential lots. That included, uh, conservation areas as well, but we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But they are limited to six lots of at least twenty-one acres in size, based on this history. So that's what we wanted to make sure was clear. Um, we can refer back to any details if you'd like. This is the location map again, and this is showing you where those two lots were created off of Dick Woods Road. Um, so now I'll go into a little bit more of the specifics of the proposal and the property, um, that are subject to this twenty twenty-four request. But in this case, uh, the property has, again, Grassmere Road to the, to the north there, has a number of water resources, uh, Little Ivy Creek and Ivy Creek along Dick Woods Road. And you can see in the purple, the associated stream buffer, and in some cases floodplain. And the orange is the, uh, are the critical slopes on the property. It is primarily forested. There are some areas, uh, at the end of Spring Lane that are, uh, cleared. And there are some existing roadbeds that the applicant noted that were associated with, with prior activities on those parcels. This is the lot layout that was included in your packet that shows the configuration of the six, uh, the six tracks, if you will. The tracks that we refer to are those parcels that would include the residential, uh, home sites. Those home sites are, the building sites have been shown and the driveway locations, uh, from multiple access points. And I am going to kind of zoom in in a couple, in a couple of minutes to show you where those driveways are and some of our staff concerns with those. Um, this proposal included, uh, some conservation areas as well. And, uh, those may be platted separately or be included on lots. I think in the original proposal, in your packet, they were separate tracks or lots. So we gave you the acreage breakdown. Um, one of the concerns that staff has is the acreage in, um, individual, individually owned residential lots. Um, twenty-one acres, um, is the minimum. And with six of those, we feel like the acreage could be reduced down to as little as a hundred and twenty-six acres devoted to residential lots. This is the new proposal that was just emailed to you yesterday that we received over the weekend. Uh, the critical slopes are now highlighted in green. The building sites remain the same, except for there was one shift to avoid critical slopes. Uh, the prior plan in this, and this plan as well, show a hiking trail. In the prior plan, that was proposed at fifteen feet, now it's proposed at six feet, reducing the width of, uh, that impact in those areas. Um, and then in this case, the applicant has increased conservation area on lots. This is a concept plan, this is not a final plat, but, uh, again, staff still has the concern. Uh, we have not been able to review it, um, much further than that. And there's some elements that are remaining the same. Um, and I will show you in a second where the access points again and the driveways are. The major change, as I said, is the designation of additional conservation area, which my understanding, to the extent I've reviewed it, is that some of that conservation area would be on the residential tracks and some on the, uh, what I understood to be the original conservation parcels. Again, it hasn't been subdivided. Um, staff's recommendation is that, uh, the conservation parcels, uh, be greater in size and less acreage on residential lots. Uh, but we provided that breakdown for you as far as the increase in, uh, conservation areas going from seventy-eight to, uh, combined total between those tracks or those areas and acreage on tracks up to two hundred and eight. Uh, so we like to remind you whenever we talk about a special use permit, the framework that we are reviewing and analyzing the request. Uh, a big part of special use permits, of course, is, is, uh, impacts to adjacent properties. And in this case, uh, you know, the community meeting was held. Adjacent properties were notified of the meeting. You've received emails and support. There've been some general questions. Um, and generally, there was, uh, support for the request in terms of larger, uh, residential lots. Uh, I think that one of, some of the owners noted that they, um, they like knowing what, what was gonna happen. And it's been, uh, a large residue parcel for, for many years. Uh, but in terms of the rest of the special use permit criteria, uh, we wanted to focus on the comprehensive plan, uh, and the character of the parcel in terms of the change from a larger forested block to, uh, one that would be bisected and, and fragmented to some extent for this residential development, which we know in the comprehensive plan, um, the primary use for the rural areas is agricultural and forestal uses. So, um, segueing to that, um, there are some concerns with inconsistency with the comprehensive plan in that regard. I already mentioned residential tracks, if you will, and conservation areas, increasing those. There were some conflict points that we identified, uh, with driveway locations or stream buffer locations. Some of that might have been adjusted, adjusted with this latest proposal, but the amount of disturbance remains, um, the same and a concern to staff with the location of the building sites, which is driving the length of driveways and the multiple access points. Uh, we noted in the report, uh, that we encourage a single access point, and it's by, um, an agent waiver that we would approve multiple access points. So we thought that that should be analyzed with the special use permit request that hasn't been submitted yet. Uh, but segueing to some of the specifics that we wanted to point out, just to give you an idea and make sure we're clear on our concerns. This is the location map again, and I, I've broken up the next couple of slides into just two inset, inserts so we could try and, and look at that a little closer. And I have used the updated proposed lot layout so that you can see those critical slopes a little bit better. Again, Grassmere is in the same location, and we're zooming in to that corner of the parcel where lots, uh, three, four, five, and six are, which we had, had flagged as, um, some that there were, were definitely some concerns about. This shows you the existing entrance points. There are some shared driveway locations. Uh, but again, highlighting in this slide with the, the bold outlines, the location of the building sites and what we feel like are opportunities to, uh, improve their locations to address rural area, um, conservation concerns. The rural area setbacks are not that, um, are, are fairly minimal. It's, it's a, it would be a seventy-five foot setback from Grassmere. Um, internally, it would be twenty-five foot front setbacks, twenty-five foot side setbacks, and thirty-five foot rear setbacks. So, you know, setbacks aren't driving this, and, um, we believe there's an opportunity, um, to change that. I believe they'll, they'll cover in their, uh, time, uh, what has, um, led to this configuration for them and the proposed building site locations. And the next slide, just going over to the other corner of the property, where primarily lots one and two are proposed off of existing Spring Hill, uh, primarily. Uh, this, this has Dickwood Road, Dick Woods Road over here in the bottom quadrant of the parcel. These are where those existing lots were created with the prior special use permit, lots one and two, and then the, the lower portion of three, uh, showing those, highlighted again for you, showing those building sites and the access points. We think there's opportunity over here as well, again, in terms of building site. We think there's opportunity over here as well, again, in terms of building site locations. Reducing access points in the number of driveways. Um, this plan, I know it was sent to you very last minute, but these blue lines that you've seen on the plan are those conservation areas on the lots. I know it's very hard to see um each bit of detail, but if there's anything you want to circle back to. I think we have what we need for your discussion. Again, we're recommending denial based on the concerns that we have that um, it's conflicting with goals of the comprehensive plan in terms of the fragmentation. Also, uh, we don't have a plan with the level of detail, even at the special use permit stage, we feel like would be appropriate. Uh, you know, given our policy to recommend approval of. We did note that this, um, you know, the positive aspects, I think generally um, they're continuing their approach to um, offering conservation areas. And we've discussed the prior special use permit conditions that got at conservation. And I mentioned um, the uh, I didn't mention it in my presentation. I mentioned the, we haven't received any strong objections from owners and the positive aspects from that uh, positive feedback from the neighbors that did attend that community meeting. There were more than twenty there. And then again, we, there's data both from the applicant and I mentioned it that there um, in terms of sort of the lot pattern in the large residential, while it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan and is consistent with activity in that part of the county that um we're familiar with. So I will pause for you um to ask questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you. Very helpful. Commissioner Farah?
Uh, this is just a quick question. So you were talking about there was forty-one lots available, thirty-three were used, then in twenty twenty-two, two residential lots were used. So there were six lots remaining. Cause I, I, I know in some emails with the applicant, there was a dispute about whether it was one, one more lot.
It, the, we've confirmed it's six.
Okay, and the applicant understands that as well?
Yes, it, there, there was some discussion about whether it was really five, not more than six.
Oh, okay.
Six is definitely the, the number.
Okay, and I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm glad you picked up on the uh, the length of the driveways. Because looking at, I do think that what they submitted over the weekend is an improvement for sure. But um, in terms of fragmentation of the landscape, breaking it up with roads, um, it would be much better if the houses were scoo, were scooted closer and without that long driveway that just causes more fragmentation and disturbance. So, uh, you know, there are ways that this development could be improved to be lighter in footprint. That's it.
A couple of questions for staff. Thank you for the presentation. So, I mean, my understanding, we're still reviewing what was submitted. So the original submission is what's in front of us today. It's like, am I correct in stating that?
But yes, that's what's reflected in our analysis in the staff report.
Right. And so both in the original and even in the, even in the uh, the new one that was, that was sent in, it, are there still, well, there, there was encroachment on stream buffers with driveways. Is that correct?
There is one uh,
I didn't see that mentioned in the, in the concerns, but I, I thought I,
It was lumped in. Um, I can go back to that slide and show you which, which track it is. But there is a, one location where the existing access is within the stream buffer and critical slopes.
Thank you. No questions for staff.
Commissioner Murray? Yes, so because this is a special situation that goes back, you know, to, now, do the lots have to be twenty-one acres?
Yes.
So they have, so they can't be smaller than twenty-one acres, um, even if they're clustered?
Right, that we don't have that opportunity anymore in the ordinance for them.
That's a shame. We should. Think about an AC forty-four. I hope we can revisit that.
Can I ask a follow-on question on that, the cluster question? I guess I'm just confused about that. Thought we had, we had a cluster ordinance and we have a grandfathered ordinance that is um, the state changed the cluster ordinance. And I understood from Scott Clark, we kept our old ordinance that predated what the state updated.
There's uh, Mr. Herrick may want to, I saw him,
So we have a rural preservation development ordinance that remains in effect. That's not the proposal that the applicants have before us tonight, so.
So they didn't, you're saying they didn't take advantage of that other opportunity?
That, that's correct. I mean, there's, there's an RPD ordinance and, but that's not the plan that the applicants have submitted.
But that is an option that they could have taken.
Theoretically, they would, they would have to, they'd have to meet the, the criteria of that. There, they'd also have to get their prior special use permit amended because the special use permit, the prior special use permit limited them uh to further subdivision, that they could not do further subdivision without an amendment of their SP. So they'd have to get the prior SP amended and then also meet the criteria for the RPD development.
It'd be two-step process?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Bevins?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Mr. President. Is it, is it, so, am I understanding that all of the lots need to be, all the tracks need to be twenty acres? Twenty-one acres, at, at a minimum, twenty-one acres?
Yes.
So then, in the, in the new one where it has track six is six point six five acres, are we not considering that, or is that not permitted?
It's a conservation area.
I believe it was a conserv, only the conservation areas could be less than six acres.
So they're really only talking about five then tracks for people to build houses on?
Six.
Six. So there's kind of be one, yeah, yeah, but this one, there's one, two, three, four, five, six tracks. And then there's three conservation areas. And track six has six point six five, track five has twenty point five. I'm just trying.
Yeah, the parcel could just twenty-three point two, and she's showing you the conservation is six point six five. They can't develop, they, they have to conserve six point six five of that as they proposed.
So I, I was hesitant to throw so many numbers at you, but that's why I went quickly and wondered if you wanted to come back to that.
Yeah.
So this, this is conservation area on the tracks. So this is,
On the land.
This is not reducing the lot size for the residential tracks. This is designating areas on those that would specifically be conservation areas, which were not shown in that uh before.
On before, so on, on, so on, on the plat which we received, which are, with the staff report where it says track one had fifty acres. You're now, we're now sort of, sort of go to track one also has twenty-two acres worth of, of conservation land, conservation area on it.
Yes.
So it's basically half.
Yes, in some terms.
So Chair, I will say, I'm finding this terribly difficult to deal with two plats that we just received actually today. We didn't receive it over, you received it over the weekend. I appreciate that. But we received it um, you know, yesterday, of which it's, while I may have been, I'm, I'm not even gonna say what I was. I'm just having a hard time making a decision based on what it feels like us is dealing off of two different textbooks. And one textbook was done in, at the beginning of this whole process of which it seemed reasonable. Now we're looking at a, at a new textbook that has different sort of language in it. And it may be fine, but I, I would prefer if staff could actually read, go back and do an analysis off the new information and present us something that has something to feel, otherwise, I'm not feeling as if I have the appropriate amount of information to make an informed decision, not just, now, we'll, we'll,
Or enough time to.
Well, we will keep moving, but I just, I need to say right now that this is feeling unnecessarily complicated. All I will say.
Got you. Commissioner Moore?
I mean, I, I, I think I um, get it. It's the short version.
Shouldn't be in that room.
But I mean, you're, I, I guess, I guess I'm echoing Commissioner Bevins a little bit. It, it does, uh, it's taking some, some mind grappling here a little bit to, to receive new information on a pretty kind of like tiny print map. Um, I think I got it. I do understand, I think some of the, the reason for this seems to be that there was pushback and say, hey, this needs to have more conservation. Needs more land in it, it's more acreage that's conservation. Um, uh, and so that's what they came up with, but it was sort of kind of lickety-split, last, lasting that kind of deal to, to staff, to, to forward to us. I'm open to, sorry, that's about all. I'll just echo that part. Then I'll, I'll hear the presentation.
I just had one, two, two questions, clarification. I'm trying to find it now that where it's states that the minimum or the maximum disturbance would be limited to two acres. That in here?
We, we provided for your reference. Um, you know, we noted the history of when the special use permit, the more recent ones have been approved, they've included a set of conditions to try and further get at disturbance on the residential tracks. So this was, these were conditions that were included on the prior special use permit that were there for reference. And I think, you know, what we have discussed or the applicant has indicated that they would be, you know, acceptable to them again.
Okay, because I, I thought I saw that in your staff report, and I, that's helpful now. I also saw it in one of the comments from the homeowners association or somebody who said they would stick with the two acres. And I was just curious, I mean, we don't know really without measuring distance, but how, how realistic that is. But we can talk, I think.
Is that including the drive?
Yeah, it does. It includes everything.
So that seems like it would be over two acres.
It's gonna be over five.
Long driveway?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I do have another question, Chair, for when you're, when you're ready.
Thanks. Just one other thing, and that was, I, I actually, I'll save that for the applicant.
So, so my other question is, since we're looking at the, the revised, the revised attachment with the conservation area summary on it, am I to, are we to, to understand that if this were to go forward, that these conservation areas would be um, a covenant on the land, so it would, it would move with the land? Because there was one piece in there, I think in the, in the, in the applicant's email that said, there's a benefit to this with, if the owners, if the new owners, assuming, if the owners were to decide to keep the conservation easement. Because if that's true, then this doesn't mean anything. If, if the owner has the ability, because she could decide, I don't care about the tax thing. I just want to have, I want to be able to do what I want to do on my land. And so if the owner comes forward and says, well, that's really nice that this development company said I could have twenty-two, I have twenty-two acres of conservation area, but I don't want it. And so my entire lot is now going to be able, I'm going to be able to do whatever I want to do on my, whatever that lot was, on my fifth, on my fifty-acre lot. Is that's, is it, so my, basically, my question is, is the conservation area fixed if it were to go forward? Or is it simply at the, at the desire of any potential buyer?
So we, we would expect special use permit conditions with, that run with the land and run through the development review process through subdivision and building permits.
So the conservation easement would be, would be attached to the SP?
Yes, and we, getting the wording right and the layers of, of regulation with this one, we are looking for two things. We're looking for as much area to be in one owner and, and not subject to the individual future residents down the road. We know it, we can't control who owns it, but it kind of taking, you know, what, what we do with RPDs, like there's a preservation track. So having as much in uh that, that conservation track as possible. But because the lot sizes have to be twenty-one acres, we need more layers of regulation to get at our goals. And that, where those additional special use permit conditions come in that do, that aren't optional. And oftentimes, you know, the plats, they will be listed on the plats and would run, you know, information that's with the lot through our process. And when I say it goes through the process and uh when they would apply for building permits, it should be clear on the plats that are required to be submitted, what the restrictions are.
I think we might get some good feedback.
And just, and, and just to add to that, Commissioner Bevins, if you uh turn to page seven of the staff report, it talks about the suggested uh conditions. So that if the commission were to recommend approval, um, staff would recommend that it be with certain conditions. One of which would be, again, on page seven of the staff report, condition one B, which is that it has to, that the development has to be in general accord, including the location of conservation areas. That would be the, the mechanism by which staff in the future would enforce the location and size of the conservation easement. Um, if the commission recommended approval with these conditions.
Thank, thank you, counsel. I, I, I think it was, it was, it was the, the phrasing in the applicant's email that said that, that inferred that a new owner, that the, the eventual owner might decide that they did not want to have the conservation easement.
Well, that, that, that wouldn't be an option if the commission were to approve this with the proposed conditions.
That's what I wanted. I wanted that to be very clear because I just didn't want.
Be, because then if, if those were somehow, if a future owner decided not to honor those as conservation easements, it would be a zoning violation.
Cause it's like, you know, although keeping the non-residential areas an active resident, like, I don't need it. But as long as it keeps flowing with it, I'm fine on that piece of it.
But as, great. Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry for.
Sorry, but it, but as a clarification of language, these would not be conservation easements. They'd be not dedicated as an easement.
And, and that's correct. I may have misspoken when I've referred to them as conservation easements, they're conservation areas. But not, but, but um, at, at least not by, by means of this, would they be considered conservation easements?
But it is, it is true in other localities in Virginia. I do understand that some localities do have requirements that open space be dedicated as an easement. Is that, that is true, right?
Not typically as a land use condition.
We don't do it.
All right. Any other questions for staff? No. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Good evening. Um, Rebecca, I, I don't have um, uh, the um, ability to, to uh, could you put on the um, the plan, the revised plan? If I can refer to that.
Use hers?
Hers, and I want you to.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that plan, that's the one. Okay.
All right. Would you like the full plat, sir?
Excuse me?
Would you like the full plat?
Let's just see how, let's, yeah, see if we could get that. Yeah, that, that looks.
That one right there, that works for you?
That's, that's good. Anyway, I'm Ethan Miller. Uh, I've been for, we've been before you uh two years ago with this project. Uh, I'll skip most of the history of this. I've heard, uh, I'd like, I think the best thing for me to do is give you a brief view of this and, and answer some of the questions uh that were raised by the, the commission. There is some misunderstanding. I, I think I'll be able to clear up a lot of it. Basically, what we have here is we, my wife and I were um, acquired this property nineteen ninety-three, amazingly forty-two years, thirty-two years ago, from my wife's grandmother who had, was whose farm this was. Uh, when we acquired the property, there had already been uh the approval of SP eighty-one and eighty, eighty, eighty-one dash one, eighty-one dash fifty-five. There were the existing thirty-three lots. So what we, what we were, um, we acquired in nineteen ninety-three, where was there a couple unsold lots and then four hundred and forty-two acre residue, most of which was in forest. I think there was a picture we saw uh up there of the, the aerial photograph, which showed a majority is in forest. And it still is in the forest today. Most of the forest uh is um hardwoods, um oak and um tulip poplar. There were certain sections which were lobolli pine. Unfortunately, they were decimated by a pine beetle infestation that Almar County had, maybe twenty-five years ago. And so they had to be clear cut. Uh, pine lobolli has regrown in about twenty to thirty acres of the property, but it's, it's still quite young compared to the mature hardwoods. What, what we're doing here, the, the good news is that we, that we work with staff and we do agree on one thing. We agree that at least theoretically, there are six additional lots, and so we don't have that issue before us tonight. Um, the question is, well, what, what are we gonna do with that? And um, you know, we have a restriction uh under, zoning ordinance is encouraging, has a minimum density, of course, of twenty-one acres. And, and I take some exception to the notion that we are doing residential development. This is what the ordinance provides in the rural area. It provides for thirty, a minimum of twenty-one acre lots, which can be used for forestry or agriculture, as well as uh residence for the owner. So it isn't, uh, you know, to call it residential development out of character in the rural area. No, not, not at all. This is exactly what the ordinance is asking for. It's asking for large lots. The, the, the question, of course, here is, well, well, it's forest. So, so um, well, what, it's, it's forest use mostly and then, and then agricultural use. But what, what our proposal is saying, and we proposed this in the beginning, we, similar to the, uh, the, the uh twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, uh, zero thirty, which you approved uh, uh, in twenty twenty-three, we restricted the, the residential clearing, uh, the, the clearing for residential purposes to two acres. And so on the, on the southern two lots, lots one and two that you approved in, in twenty twenty-three, of a hundred or so acres, only four of those acres are, can be cleared for residential purposes, which essentially, uh, you know, preserves the rest of it for forest or agricultural use. Um, there's, there's been some misunderstanding here, the distinction between a conservation area and forest or agricultural use. Um, the ordinance doesn't require conservation. It is encouraging forestal use and agricultural use in the rural areas. And that's what this is. If only two acres of each of these lots can be cleared for residential purposes, what's gonna happen to the rest? If only two acres of each of these lots can be cleared for residential purposes, what's going to happen to the rest of it? Well, it's going to be either forest or agriculture. Now, we're dealing with the issue of land use taxation, which is a huge incentive for owners of property to have their property remain in either agricultural or forestal use. They're, of course, not required to do so, and I don't think we could do that. In other words, I don't think we could, we could say to the owners, you must have forestal use. But if they simply abandoned it, what would we do to them? I'm not sure that that's really workable. In any case, so when we look at this project, we have currently three hundred and forty-two acres of property. And of that, of the three hundred and forty-two acres, only twelve acres can be cleared for residential purposes. That leaves ninety-six percent of the property, three hundred and thirty acres, which will remain in residential, excuse me, agricultural and forestal use. It seems like, you know, that's, that's, that's what the ordinance would favor. If we were developing this simply by right and not with a special permit, we'll get to that point in a minute. If this was simply a by right division, there, there would be no ability for the county to, to restrict the number of acres that was cleared for residential purposes. So here, because it's a special use permit process that was initiated for whatever reason in nineteen eighty-one, the, the planning commission has the ability to put additional restriction on. We're comfortable with that. We want this property to be, to be conserved. My wife Diane is, is, is a person who's really dedicated her life to conservation, not only in Almar County, but literally all over the world. In South America, rainforest and in Asia, et cetera. So the, the question is, well, what is going to happen to this property if we don't divide it? It's three hundred and forty-two acres. Does it have to be in forest use? No, who knows what will happen to it? One of the things that the, the residents, you'll hear from them tonight, they're here, that's been a concern for literally forty years. Well, what's going to happen to the rest of this property? Originally nineteen eighty-one, when the first two SPs were approved, the, the, the advocate, my wife's grandmother, had left areas, had proposed future development. In fate, on Spring Lane, there is a, a right of way for additional, additional roadway. And then on Loballey Lane, at the top of Loballey Lane, they called it a temporary cul-de-sac, because the intention was to, was to subdivide it further. What happened and why wasn't it subdivided further? The answer is, you know, the, the first Spring Hill Phase One lots sold fairly quickly, but the Phase Two lots were again, subject to market conditions. And in, in the late eighties, and they didn't sell. And so the, you know, additional development wasn't proposed. Then Diane's grandmother died in nineteen ninety-one, and the property stayed in her estate for a while. And then Diane and I wound up with it, and we really haven't, of course, we haven't done anything with it for thirty years. So, so, so here we are. The, the, we think this is a, you know, what, what, what we're, if we're going to have ninety-seven percent of the property, ninety-six percent of the property remain in agricultural and forestal use, we think that's a good result. Now, in, in terms of the various changes in the timing, it's a little bit of a moving target. We, until we got the staff report last Tuesday, we hadn't heard at least directly in writing from the staff that they, that they felt that we didn't have enough quote unquote conservation areas. So we, we said, okay, well, we'll put some in there. Well, what is a conservation area? A conservation area, and we can talk about the legalities of how, of how to put that in, and, you know, clearly, you can, you can have it as a condition that makes it a zoning enforcement if you do something different. Or we could have a perpetual, perpetual restriction, essentially like a covenant restriction, which is in favor of the other lot owners. If, if there's misunderstanding that the, that the owners could opt out of, the owners of these lots could opt out of conservation, that wasn't the intention, it was simply that they wouldn't necessarily keep the property in forestal use. They may just decide to abandon that or agricultural use, they simply stop growing crops or doing whatever. In any case, as far as the roads, our attempt has been, the length of the driveways, there are a lot of existing roads. This property has been logged and a farm for several hundred years. We have made an attempt to use the existing roads, existing logging roads, to minimize disturbance. So we're really not creating a lot of long driveways, we're just using what's there. Now, the question is, well, what if it just stay, what if we don't divide it? Or even if we do divide it, what are driveways? You know, if you, here's the, the logistics of logging. If you want to log property, you have to bring in trucks. You need logging roads. So regardless of what happens to this property, you're going to have logging roads. If it stays in forestal use of three hundred and forty acres, you will have logging roads. Similarly, even if you have short driveways to the residences, if, if the residents want to continue to have forest on their property, the trucks are going to have to get there to cut the trees down. That's what forest use is. In any case, we can talk more about the specifics. In, in, in terms of, of, you know, I, I think this is a good project. Hopefully, the, the planning commission will look at it and say, you know, it's the certainty issue. You know, we have, this, this is three hundred and forty-two acres, which is four miles from town. And, you know, the political winds today are political climate is, well, we don't want to have further division. But, you know, they can change. You know, political climate can change. And who knows, ten years from now, twenty years from now, when the rest of us, none of us are here anymore, you know, a board of supervisors may decide, hey, this is, looks like a great product, piece of property, it's so close to town, let's rezone it for additional, for additional, let's turn it into village, village residential, let's have additional lots. Who knows? The residents obviously would like to have certainty. This is all that's ever going to happen to the property. And we're comfortable with that. So hopefully, the, the commission can see that and, and approve our project. But I'm, we're happy to listen to the concerns of the commission today, tonight. And if there are things that you want us to do that seem reasonable, then we're certainly willing to, you know, to work with you on that. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before you sit, sit down? We may have some questions. Nice try. Any questions? This is Firehawk.
Yeah, I have a question. I understood what your comment was. I, I did understand your comment about logging roads. I, I worked a lot with forestry agencies all over the South. But I still would suggest and actually hope for moving those residences closer down the road, closer towards the entrance to the property. Because a, a rural logging road is quite different than a driveway that's driven up and down daily by residents in terms of the amount of disturbance. Over time, if somebody decides not to log that land, then that driveway, that road that goes off into the woods is going to eventually fill in and close in. So if they're going to log it, they're going to, not going to be logging it daily. They're going to be logging it for a period of time, maybe it's six weeks, and then they don't come back there for twenty years to that area. So if they're in short pine rotation, if they're in hardwood rotation, it's going to be a much longer period. So, and I don't, do take your point. We don't know if landowners are going to want to use forestry or agriculture there. But I still would, in terms of habitat fragmentation, it would be better for the environment if these houses were moved closer to the entrance. And looking at the topography there, it does look like driveways. And I didn't, I haven't like got out a scale ruler and measured this, but it looks like four, five, three, one, and possibly two, those houses could be scooted down and not have the lot go all the, the driveway go all the way back into the very far back forty of the lot. Where your, your maximum, that's more disturbance than if you were to bring the houses closer in.
Well, I understand your point. However, you know, it's a typical thing, it's, it's people who are building these houses, they want the, they, they want what they call the prime building spots.
I, I understand that.
So you look at, for example, you look at lot two. There was already a residence there, there was a summer house that was used as the original farm. It burned down some years ago, there's still the chimney, et cetera. It's a beautiful spot, you look at the mountains, it's lovely. To say to those people, well, you can have seventy-five acres, but we want you to be right at the cul-de-sac, so you have no view. When the, we have this beautiful property, where, where there used to be an existing house, and you have a lovely view. It, it's, you know, in terms of marketability, that's, that's tough for us. You know, you're going to substantially impair the, the economics of the project. Similarly, lots three and four have a beautiful view of the Blue Ridge to the west. To say to them, well, I want you to build, I want the guy on lot four to build his house a hundred feet from Grasmere Road down in the, you know, down on this, which, when he has no view, when you come up the hill and has a gorgeous view of the sunset, you know, again, it's, 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 that's, that's the purpose of the roads. But when you look at, you look at one of the things the staff has said to us, for example, is this waiver of the single point of access. Lot four is the best example. If we have a single point of access up here at, at Ivy Depot Road, look how far it is from Ivy Depot Road to the house side on lot four, as opposed to saying, well, we can, we can access that on Grasmere Road, use maybe two or three hundred feet from Ask, rather than requiring a driveway and an entrance all the way at Ivy Depot Road to serve those lots. In any case, you know, I understand your point. We can work on, certainly willing to work on, on the issue of, of the driveways. But again, here we are before the, the planning commission and the board. In many respects, this is a conceptual plan, and those are details. In other words, conceptual plan is, can we have six more lots? What do they look like? Should they all be twenty-one acres and then have something called a, you know, a hundred and twenty acres of, of a two hundred acre conservation area? If we have a, you know, like rural preservation tract. We have a rural preservation tract, and this is the key, and this is kind of point of disagreement with staff, is who takes care of it in perpetuity? The good news about having the lots, of having the lots like, like this, or this configuration, is the, the best steward of these, of these forests and these properties are the people who live there. If we, if we reduce the size of lots to twenty-one acres and we create a two hundred acre rural preservation tract, who is going to deal with it? Who's going to take care of it? Where's the money to take care of it? Who's going to contribute to it? Is it going to be the lot owners? I don't think so. Is it going to be the owners, well, of the other lots? They'll say, well, we have no control over it. So to, to me, and this has been our experience, and we've had other projects where we had problems, in particular, one of the ones that my wife's mother-in-law did called Far Hills, where we had a rural preservation tract with, with nobody responsible for it. You know, as the generations go by, as, you know, who's going to take care of that eighty acres? Who's going to take care of that, that two hundred acres, make sure that, you know, it's, that it's taken care of? The, the truth is, there's nobody. So here, the best, as I said, the best stewards are, are the owners of the houses.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if you set it up, and I understand the two-step process our, our counselor told us about, but if it was a conservation subdivision, the normal way that you would do that is that the, all the owners would pay into a common fund that would pay for someone to take care of the residual conservation zone. This is quite common and well documented. I think that the, to keep in mind is that you, by putting the residential far back there, I understand the market, everyone wants a beautiful view, but I've also worked with landowners in this county and others that are concert, I, I understand Diane's lifelong commitment to conservation, I do know that. But if they are most concerned about preserving, preserving the quality of that landscape and the health of that landscape, that they have voluntarily, on their own, on their own lots, where they could put their house anywhere on it, scooted it closer to the road, and that is the county's policy. If you've talked to Scott Clark, who's our conservation planner, that's what he's been pushing. This is not simply just something that would be developed anyway. You're asking to develop a tract that is rural and agricultural and put residential on it. And so our job is to say, okay, well, maybe that's reasonable, and looking at the development around you, all around you, it's residential, but does that mean that, that we just repeat the same pattern? No, you've got larger lots with more conservation. But I would still submit that you can, to the degree that we can minimize the footprint and minimize the disturbance, that's what I'm after. So I'm not, and we're not, we haven't heard from the public yet, so I want to shut up and let them talk. But, you know, I'd really like to see how we can do this in a way that is meeting your goals for the market, but certainly also conserving the maximum amount of land and disturbing the least amount of land. And I'll just leave it at, as food for thought for that, till we get to more deliberation on the dice.
I think the issue of disturbing the land is one which perhaps is difficult to see. It is difficult to see. What we have now is mature forest, very little undergrowth. And so the, the, the roadways are, as I said, they're already disturbed, and since they're already there, that, from the logging, from the logging of fifty years ago, and, and.
Yeah, I understand that, but they can overgrow over time. And I could, if you, if you want to get really boring, I can send you article after article about road fragmentation, impacts of logging roads and impacts of residential driveways, but we don't have time for that tonight.
Well, I'd say this, I mean, the reason that the, that the roads didn't overgrow is because of the tree canopy. There is no undergrowth. So they won't overgrow, unless you cut the trees down, and then they will.
I'll, I'll just leave it at that and let others have a turn.
Okay, anyway.
Thank you for the insights here. I'm just curious if you could touch a little bit more on any outstanding staff concerns? I didn't get a chance to look at your new plan, unfortunately.
Well, well, what the staff concerns were that, in the staff report, that their staff wanted additional conservation areas. And so we, we responded to that and added another hundred and seventy acres, or whatever it was, to be put in conservation. And really what that means is that you can't build any structures, et cetera. And, and those would in fact be restrictive covenants. In terms of, would they be conservation easements? You know, again, they could be zoning, I mean, I don't know what, how could the county of Alabama is, is set up to, you know, to receive conservation easements. I'm not sure if Virginia Outdoor Foundation would want these things. I mean, somebody has to take the easement. It, it has to be somebody, and, and in, in the case of an easement in gross, it would have to be Virginia Outdoors Foundation, or I guess a county, because easement in gross, in other words, not attached to real estate, are not going to run with the land. Okay, and then the, the question, okay, in any case, again, I, I think, I think the, the county attorney's view of it is a, as a zoning restriction, I think that's probably the right answer, is that, that it becomes a zoning restriction. The conservation easement, conservation is really a zoning condition. And so a violation would be a, a zoning violation. I think that, that legally, that would be what, how it could be structured, is it might accurately.
Well, it could be, I mean, certainly that's one alternative, and that's, I think, what's being proposed here tonight.
Hope that answers your question.
Well, is that, I, I think there were other concerns, though, there was.
Well, the other concern had to do with, again, the size of these lots. In other words, we have a seventy-five acre lot. What the staff would prefer, as I think we heard tonight, is that all the lots would be essentially approximately twenty-one acres. And then, then whatever the residue was, two hundred acres, would be a very large area called conservation area. And, and again, my, I don't have any problems with the notion that it's going to be conserved. After all, we're only going to clear twelve acres out of the three hundred, three hundred and forty-two acres for residential purposes. So it's going to remain in forest and agricultural use. Now, the question here is, well, who's going to own it? Who's going to own that property? And if we create this essentially a world reprobation tract of two hundred acres, who's going to own it and who's going to maintain it? And my view of it, this is, you know, our view, is that the best stewards are the people who actually own the property. You know, if I buy that, if I build my, whatever, million dollar house up there, I'm going to be very, I'm going to be, and I live there, I'm going to be very concerned about, are there hunters, are there poachers, or, you know, is the land maintained? If, if, if instead it's owned by who, the, the community, the, the property owners or her, I mean, there's, you know, they're, they're just not as good steward as the person who has the, who's invested in the house. That's, that's my view of it and my experiences. Now, obviously, there are other people of other experiences, but, but I'm not sure that the homeowners, I mean, I've, they're here tonight. I'm not sure if you said to them, well, I'll tell you what we'll do, they can, they can speak to this, the homeowners association folks in phase two are here. How would you folks like two hundred acres that you have to take care of? You know, I, I suspect, and, and by the way, you have to increase your dues another five hundred dollars a year to do it. You know, I'm not sure that they would be that interested in that. I know, for example, I heard this today from the phase one owners. Phase one is essentially less impacted. And what we had proposed was to give this area one over here along Dickwood's Road, which is the land between the lots and Dickwood's Road, essentially across Ivy Creek. We proposed to give them that, give that to the phase one owners, and we, and we said that we would build a hiking trail as a recreational purpose. And I heard from Jim Foster, the head of the homeowners association today, yes, we'll take the land, but we don't want the hiking trail. Why don't you want the hiking trail? Well, they don't want it, or they don't want to pay to maintain it, and we were going to build it, but they don't want it. Okay, well, then we'll give you the land. Homeowners associations are funny, funny groups. You know, particularly when you're requiring them to pay money to do something, but in any case, hope that answers your question.
Awesome. Mr. Murray?
Yes, so, so as a matter of clarity, and the county attorney can confirm this, or county staff, the county is set up to receive easement donations.
Okay, fine.
So, so that is, that is something the easement can accept.
The applicant is certainly willing to do that, then.
Yes.
In other words, to make these conservation easements and give them to the county for the county enforcement, that's fine, that, that is, that's a good solution, then.
Yeah, so, so that is something that, that can be done. And it is my, you know, so several times in, in the, in the document, you referred to the property still qualifying for land use valuation as if it was an amenity.
Excuse me?
As, as, as if it was an amenity. I think the.
I'm not sure I would use that.
I think the, one of the issues I have with that is, of course, we pay a penalty to the city of Charlottesville for every property and land use valuation. We, we also, we lose, we lose a lot of money for these properties. Honestly, if it was up to me, and, and it was allowed through this, this process, I mean, I would rather give, you know, twelve, have twelve houses on two acres than, than, than the six, six houses that we have now on this.
You're talking about local composite index?
Yeah, so, so I think what's, so. so, so I really think, you know, I'm looking at this, I'm seeing the 21 acres. I'm sorry, I'm seeing the lot size, you know, and also, you know, for full disclosure, I grew up just, just down off of Morgantown Road, so I'm very familiar with this area. You know, across the tracks from this is a historic black community where, growing up, a lot of people there didn't have running water or functioning septic system. And so this really is a, across the tracks, literally, kind of situation where you have these super large lots with very wealthy homes that couldn't possibly ever be affordable, you know, from these. So it, to me, it just strikes me the wrong way. I would love to see if there's any way to have a rural preservation development where some smaller lots were available. I mean, at least making these lots as small as possible. I question for, well, I mean, is there, is there a point at which, if it were allowed? And that is the thing, is there bonus density for rural preservation or?
I don't believe so. I mean, I believe that the, that the RPD is set up to allow preservation tracks and then a certain number of lots per preservation tract. I don't believe that bonus, but I can certainly look into that while while this discussion continues. And I might, while I have the mic, offer one correction, and that is it's the Conservation Easement Authority that would be the owner of conservation easements rather than the county itself, but
Oh, that's true.
So, but but the, but the county does have an entity, a county affiliated entity that does hold conservation easements, and I think that was your point.
Okay, and and staff, the other question, so, well, the question is, so staff had mentioned that there was an area where the driveway was going through the stream. Could you, could you talk about that?
Well, the driver does not go through the stream. He goes through the stream buffer. And it's, 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 again, that's, that's been there for, that's been there for, that's part of the logging road. It is not through the stream, it's through the stream buffer. And and one of the things that we wanted to do in terms of the lots four, five, and six, and and we said this in the, in in our resubmission, was if those lots entered from Grasmere Road, there would be no stream crossings. Whereas if you had to bring them in from the, the Ivy Depot entrance, then we would have to cross the stream to get there. We'd have to cross a tributary to Ivy Creek. So we thought that, you know, one of the things about the revised proposal, which had three lots entering from Grasmere Road, was we wouldn't have any stream crossings themselves, just a crossing in the buffer, in the buffer, in the stream buffer, it, which is that driveway to lot number three. So I'm interested in your notion of 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 the history of the property. Obviously, I, I don't know much about the property before 1984, which is when we moved there. In terms of the, you know, the historic community that lived there. You know, that's the history of Virginia. This was a big plantation house from the 1830s, and then there were the workers who were probably slaves, and they lived in small houses nearby. Even after the Civil War, they, they moved into little houses. And, you know, again, that's the history of rural, of rural Virginia. I'm, you know, I'm from Pennsylvania and originally, anyway. But I, and I think that, you know, of course, that's not, you know, if you look at the, at the Ivy area, and there was a picture of the plat, of the area that we had here, it's heavily developed. It's not just those houses on Morgantown Road. It's all over the place. In other words, Ivy in 50 years ago may have been just a bunch of farms, but it isn't anymore. And in fact, in 1981, the notion was, well, this will be village residential. That was abandoned for whatever reason. But in any case, this, this is not, you know, an area of rolling farms anymore. So this is the largest parcel there. And the question, as I said, the question is what to do with it. And I think this is a reasonable proposal. And if you want to, if you want to come back and change the ordinance, you know, we're constrained by an ordinance which says, if you have 20 acre lots, we have an ordinance and a comprehensive plan that says we want to encourage forestal and agricultural use, which is what our plan is. We limit the clearing to 12 acres, and the rest is agricultural and forestal. And there's a concern that, in my view, we have, we've done everything we can do to comply with the, with the ordinance and and the comprehensive plan. And yet, there's a lot of concern that somehow we haven't gone far enough. Puzzling, in any case, well, we'll, you know, if, so I understand your point. If you ask the owner of these, the prospective purchaser of one of these lots, do you care? There was 35 acres. They'd probably say, no, in fact, I'd rather have four acres. But that's not what the ordinance will let us do. If somehow we could get there and put the rest of it in conservation, fine with us, fine with us. But under the current ordinance that we're faced with, we can't do that. So in any case, I mean,
Because you could do 21 acre lots.
It could be 21 acres, as I said. Well, you know, if if that, if, well, you know, again, part of coming before you tonight was, you know, we've been discussing this with staff for literally four months and sort of going around in circles. And so my view of it was, well, let's hear what the commission has to say. Let's hear what your concerns are. And then we'll go back, and if, you know, if we can, you know, if the commission said to me tonight, well, you know, we'll probably get to this point, we'll say, you know, we'll ask for a deferral. If, and we'd like to take into consideration the things that the staff, that the commission seems to want. If the commission comes to a consensus tonight that we want you to reduce the lots to 21 acres, fine, we'll do it. And then we'll have this big conservation area, and we'll try to figure out what to do with it. I don't think it's perfect, but if that's what will satisfy the commission, then certainly we're willing to, to consider it, we're willing to work with the commission on it. But I wanted to hear what you folks had to say, because after all, you're the ones making the decision, and the staff is simply trying to interpret the ordinance, and the staff has staff's position. And and but what's important is, is what you folks think.
Great, thank you. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Murray? Mr. Bivens?
If I might, if I might just answer Commissioner Murray's question about bonus density, there is a bonus density for environmental standards, leaving a certain percentage wooded, but it does not apply to rural areas zoned property. It applies to development area properties, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you want, if you want to talk about rezoning, and we can talk about rezoning, but again, that's a subject for another day.
The last, you faded out, you said it doesn't apply to
Does not apply to rural area zoning. So the bonus density applies to development area zonings R1, R2, and so forth, for leaving certain amounts wooded. So there is a bonus density for leaving properties wooded, but it does not apply to rural area zoned property.
That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Mr. Bivens?
Mr. Miller? You have two other commissioners before you turn and walk away.
Go ahead, I apologize.
You have, you have, I, I'm one of the commissioners who's going to ask you a question. I was going to ask you an easy question. I was going to ask you a really easy question, which I thought you would be a slam dunk, but maybe I'll sort of step back for a second and give you a hard time. But so, which I'm, I'm capable of doing.
All right.
So, so just let me understand what you're, what you're saying to us. So on track two, which has a, which has a surface area of 74 acres and some change, on your, on your, on your revised piece, you're saying track, oh, my phone, I need my phone, because I can, I I hate small print. I can, guys, on track two, that you would, you're saying that some portion of that 40 acres and some you'd put in a, in a conservation area.
Right.
And so my question is, if I come to you with a million dollars and say I'd like track two, what do I get? Just describe the property, what do I get? I know you're going to tell me I can only build on two acres. I understand that. Well, what do I get to do with the rest of the property?
Well, the rest of the property is currently in forest and agriculture use with, with, with the current owners.
As you as the owners.
My wife and I as the owners. So then you transfer the property to new owner. There's no requirement that the new owner continue the property in land use taxation. That's a different issue.
That's not the issue that I'm asking. I'm asking you about the conservation area.
Oh, conservation, in the conservation area, you can't put any buildings there or any structures.
And if I understood what you said to one of my colleagues, that, well, you're going to put that in the deed. So that's going to be restricted covenant in the deed.
Correct.
Okay, and so I, I understand that. Now, let's go back to this whole idea of going to 21 acres, because I, I'm not, I'm in a different space about that. And can you just sort of go through your narrative again about your, why you believe that it's, that it's preferred to have 71 acres with a bit of, with a bit of it set, set, set aside for, for a conservation area as opposed to having 21 acres and then having
Sure, sure. My view it is this, so let's, let's restrict the lot two, for example, to 21 acres. And then the rest of the 74 acres is in some conservation area. And, you know, and we'll go to each of the lots and do the same thing. Okay, so owners of, so then we configure the lot lines. Well, the question is, what happens to the area that's in conservation? Who's in charge of it? And what do they do with it? So if it's going to remain in, the comprehensive plan says we want it to remain in forest and in agriculture. Well, so we put this in this conservation, we put it in conservation area, and someone's going to own it. Presumably, it'll be us or our descendants, or we'll sell it to somebody. Well, then the owner, and I saw this this weekend in Dragon Run in Middlesex County, where these folks had given their property to, to the nature conservancy. And I was shocked to see the nature conservancy had clearcut all the Loblawy pines. And I thought, my God, you would think the nature conservancy would, would do selective cutting. And I was told, no, they needed the cash. So they clearcut all of the, they left a little boundary around the Dragon Run, and they clearcut all of the Loblawy pine. And I thought, well, that's kind of unusual. Like, you know, I was surprised that the nature conservancy would clearcut Loblawy pine. But I was told, well, you know, that's, that's the reality of things, you know. So again, so, so the property goes to who? So it goes to, we sell it to somebody or my heirs, or, you know, it's 20 years from now. And they say, we don't get any money from that conservation, let's just clearcut it. And 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 then we'll regrow the trees, it'll take another 50 to 75 years. And that's, that's forestry, that is forestry. But it's not the forestry, the kind of forestry that these residents are going to like, just like what happened with the pine beetle, when we had to clearcut 20 to 30 acres of pines, the residents were furious, up in arms. Well, there's nothing else we could do. We had to clear, and David Tice, who was, was our consultant, said this, you have to clearcut it because the only way to kill the pine beetles. So anyway, what does forestry, it gets a bigger intellectual question. What does the Almar County Comprehensive Plan mean in the rural area to say we want to conserve forest, forest and agriculture? What do they really mean by that? And and does that have any, and what does it mean when, when the rural area is very close to a densely developed area? Maybe Kirk, Kirk Hughes, who's our
Hughes. Say your name and location into the mic for the record.
I'm okay? Yep. I'm Kirk Hughes. I drew the plat, and I've surveyed the property. I've been surveying the property since, I think, 1984. All those roads that, that Ethan's been talking about, for working this property, I've walked on probably all of them, surveyed most of them. The, the idea that there's going to be, there's going to be six new driveways lying, for the most part, in beds of roadbeds that exist. Those, those will be gravelled, in some cases, they'll be asphalted. All the erosion semi-control features will be put in, if it's required, best management practices will be put in to control any additional runoff. The, there, I have an estimate that there may be 1.6 acres of land that will be disturbed for the driveway. 1.6 acres for all of them. So this concept that you're discussing today seems to focus more around the size of the lot and in the length of the driveway. Most of these driveways will go in, houses will be built. And the community, except for those people on Loblawy Lane and Spring Lane, will never see those homes. Never. You can't see them until they cut the forest now. When they cut the forest down, if they did, you could see it. But that's not what the, what we're proposing. We're proposing to save, put all this area in the conservation area to protect building into it, but also encourage people to manage the property themselves. The, the 21 acre has been around since the RA ordinance came about. And I remember going to the Board of Supervisors meeting, commission meetings, and listening to the concept of how this is going to work. Well, I recommend you take a look and overlay the 1979 tax map, which was the form that was used to create this. And the idea was that they were going to protect, this ordinance would protect the rule character of Almar County. And they put a big bite in it to say that if you, you, you have to build a road, you have to build a road standard to a VDOT standard to put in three lots. You do two, but once you got to three, you had to go to a larger standard, bigger road. So people didn't build those roads for the most part. They built houses along the roads, had 250-foot road running, two acre lots, three acre lots. And the rule character that everybody was talking about was those, most part, I believe, was the Sunday afternoon drives, going out, driving through the countryside after going to church or dinner, lunch, or whatever, and look at how beautiful Almar County was. Now you do that, and that rule character is what you see is not the same. There's all thousands of homes that were built on these, those rural, in rural areas that are on those roads. Whereas if the county had allowed them to put driveways back in and put, develop the residents back in there, only thing you would have seen was the driveways for the most part. So my heart's not in 21 acres, you know, bigger is better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thanks, Kirk.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just had a one or two. No, it's okay. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to confirm, I was looking back at the, the two different SPs that have been in effect, the one from like 81, 84, the first one, yeah. That one had originally, what, 41 division rights and only 33 were used? So there's, there's some left, or there, there were some left before it sort of came back in 2022. So we had an agreement, or we had an understanding in the county that we could go up to 40 some
41, right.
41 units around here. And then also, back at that time, there was a village with village housing. I think I might be one of the people you're talking about with future political headwinds, incidentally. But, but I wanted to hear more about the kind of forestry that you've been practicing for these last few decades on the property.
The kind of forestry we've been practicing?
Yeah, well, you, Commissioner Bivens, you alluded to kind of
No, that's right. Well, you see, what we, what we have here, we had two different portions of the property. One were hardwoods, and the, and the other was, was Loblawy pine. And in large measure, the Loblawy pine was fully mature, and so it was harvested and then replanted. Now, in terms of the, the hardwoods, we've been taking out tulip poplar that was fully mature. We haven't actually, I don't think we've taken out any oaks, because I think they're longer alive. But we've, we've got, really, that area of the property is, it's interesting. I've learned a lot about, about forests. It is that the, the evil doer, I, I call it, are the tulip poplars, because they kill everything else. So you see, it's fascinating to go through these towering tulip poplars, and all of the understory is dead. All the pine tree, all the other stuff, it simply grew faster and killed everything else, with the exception of the oak trees. And my son, who's a, who's an environmental sort of farmer, explains to me that oak trees have natural, have a natural protection, that they, they send out some kind of stuff, you know, in the, whether it's some chemical into the soil that poisons other trees that can't get close to it. But, but the tulip poplars need to be harvested, but they're going to be harvested selectively if by these owners. But if we, but if we use a commercial forester, and I have unfortunately hired those people or had a consultant hire them for me and watch what they do. And they just cut everything, they, they show no mercy. They have these big hydraulic saws, and it's all gone, simply it's leveled. Whereas if you have, if you have the owner who's built a nice house, then he's willing to selectively clear a few trees here and there. In terms of what's going on now, we're selectively clearing the tulip poplar, and my son is milling the boards to build a horse barn. So I'm watching as we take out the, some of it, we, we took some of it to, you know, Augusta Lumber, or we took some of it to, to, you know, self, as, you know, his board stuff. And other stuff, he's turning it, you know, he's, he's milling it. So, but again, it's been selective. And we've left the really nice trees, the ones that are specimen trees, we'll leave them there. And the ones that are, you know, so-so, we take out. And so as you go through, but we've been doing it slowly. And, you know, but again, is it commercially viable? Well, compared to what? Compared to selling it as, as residential home lots in Almar County, where the properties are assessed at, you know, last property they were sells for 1.5 million? Well, well, no. Commercial forestry is great, but this close to Charlottesville, in this heavily developed area, you know, is 342 acres a commercially viable size of a, of a, of a forestry tract? The answer is no. I've dealt with international paper, which is a Um, I've dealt with International Paper, which is a mega paper company that has literally 2 million acres in the South. Of 2 million acres of pine trees, which are a crop, and they use it to make paper. My wife has dealt with the, you know, the the old growth forests in the Northwest, in Oregon and and Washington and Vancouver. And I have been with with her, you know, in in Northwest, in the in Oregon, to see the clear cutting of the old growth forests. And yeah, they'll grow back in 150 years, you know. And the history of the Southeast really is that the old growth forests were all timbered. And they don't exist anymore. And so, and most of the, according to the work my wife has done and shared with me, that most of the lands, the forest land in the Southeast is in small tracts owned by private owners, under acres or less.
Sorry, if you want your, if you want your comments on the record, do you have to get up and? Yeah, you have to.
Be on mic.
Identify yourself, please, and you're, we know, we know where you live.
Diane Miller. Um, uh, yes, I mean, I ran a foundation for over 40 years that.
You speak into the microphone.
Primary agenda was climate change and with many different initiatives. And as far as forestry, yes, we spent about 15 years trying to invest in the old growth forests, both in Oregon and Washington State. Um, ended up unintentionally moving the issue north to, and the markets, north into British Columbia, because they're the same salmon runs, there's the same fisheries and um, basically, that's how the market shifted to respond to all the pressure. In terms of the Southeast, we then turned and looked at the Southeast because a lot of us were based in this part of the country. And um, all the tracks remaining, not all, I'm being very, very general, but the predominant configuration in the Southeast, in the Appalachians, are 100 acre tracts privately owned. Um, I've also um done carbon offsets with Mesa, um, where I've tried to absorb, you know, any of our environmental damage when we were flying all over the world doing these things. Um, and, but it really takes one by one. It's not like the federal forest lands where you had a larger issue that you could address more globally. So, um, yeah, everything we're looking at. And and then the other thing I would add, which I I will say I only recently learned with, um, I've become a Virginia master naturalist in, you know, my next chapter. And um, it used to be all chestnut forests here. They're gone, they're gone. And tulip poplar has completely taken over there. As Ethan said, they're fast growing trees, they're weak trees. Um, and they do um push out the understory. Um, so we've got a fun, it's it's not commercially viable, this land, that that's a joke. Um, and I I do, I'd love for you all to hear from a couple of our um neighbors because.
That's coming soon.
Yeah, they, yeah, they they really, you know, I can, I think they can speak the best to who's gonna really, really shepherd this land. And, you know, we've lived having the conservation tract with subdivisions that we've done. And it's a frickin nightmare. I mean, I'm in the next generation from something my mother did. And we had these rural preservation tracts that were designed into these subdivisions. It's like, oh, my God, I mean, thank God, we finally sold the last one of them, but we didn't sell it without buildable land for the individual.
Sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Moore, did you get to your answer?
Uh, I got an answer to that question. My other one was just, um, uh, it was alluded to earlier by Evan um, that this this property so far has been in a a land use value taxation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And and and, you know, I'm interested in the comment, I guess, the story said that about, well, this is, this is a great penalty.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yes, it just, it it has been. And I just, I think a staff question possibly is, when a home is built on a home site, that's not part of land use value taxation. It's gonna be taxed at the regular freight rate.
Correct.
Um, yeah, but then the rest of it, if a new property owner chooses to put it in land use value taxation, uh, it it can get that sort of steep discount.
Yeah, you know, I I maybe, I'm all in favor of land use taxation program. When you look around, and that's, of course, it's it's a Virginia, it's the state of Virginia. But but what would happen to this property if it wasn't in in, if it wasn't in um um, land use taxation? How could you, how could, how could it be viable to have a forest with no income for 50 years and be paying $50,000 a year in in real estate taxes because you valued it at the value of?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure.
I appreciate the thorough answer to my question. Uh, no, no, it's all good. And I think.
And the good news is I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone. Um, we have two people signed up to speak tonight. And I'll need some help with this because they're both Patrick Dorsey, although one says the other. So I'll need to, I'll need to go with that. So Patrick, okay, Patrick Dorsey first and then Patrick Dorsey, the other, we'll go second. Thank you.
Patrick Dorsey, the old one, my younger one is back there, better looking and taller. Ah, I'm not gonna address anything other than what will the new owners do? Uh, my wife and I are originally from Ohio. We went, well, she forced me to move to Sarasota, Florida. Uh, 10 years, I was watching the previous presentation, kind of concerned me. Because we moved to that little beach town, Siesta Key, 10 years ago, 13 years ago. It was a quiet beach town set for three months of the year. And then 10 years later, it grew by 25%. It's a miserable place to live. Yes, it's sunny. It takes 40 minutes to go 12 miles. So when I think about some of the questions that came up or what would, what would the new owner do? So I don't know how, when I drove here the first time, I came here four times to look for something. Every time, I'm almost drive off the road because of the mountains. So, uh, just beautiful. I mean, you're so spoiled. I kind of disagree with the comment about, and I agree with Kurt. You don't realize what you have here. When you put houses right next to the road, why would you do that? You have those mountains. It's beautiful. You drive around. You're just so used to it. It's like people got used to the ocean, but it is wonderful. So we bought a track or lot too. So I I literally drove up on it. The dumbest thing I ever did, I said, I want it, and I called the realtor. I want this. It's overlooking a pond. I wouldn't cut a tree down. I wouldn't even mow the grass there. I mean, it's so beautiful, so quiet. You can literally hear your heartbeat here. You can see the stars. I would never, I know, and I know this is the vibe of the neighborhood. Uh, the whole area, that's how I met the other Patrick Dorsey. So our intention is, we like to get Track One. And the the driveway that you're talking about runs through a pasture. And I've had 170 foot, 200, we've always lived in the country, like I said, in Ohio. So we understand conservation. And that is our intention, to build a house there, to live peacefully with the neighbors. Uh, I I mean, I'll do forestry as needed, but that's what our intention is. And I think that's what you're gonna find the intention of everybody. It's kind of tribal, I've noticed, in that neighborhood. If you came down and you started doing things like mowing down trees, disrupting the neighborhood, I think they'd put the torch out on you because that's just not the vibe. And I've drove through it, I drive through it every day. Uh, my wife and I bought a house here. We bought that lot and that's our intention to build on that lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Dorsey, the other.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I'm Patrick Dorsey. I live on Plantation Court there in the upper left of your map. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you to the staff. Uh, it's really an impressive display of thoroughness that we're seeing here. Appreciate your care, taking care of our county and our neighborhood. We sent in a letter. I encourage you to review it. Uh, in the few minutes that I have, I'm gonna focus on two of the concerns that I think emerged in the comments tonight. One is the location of the access points and the other is the rural character. With respect to the access points, um, if your goal is to minimize disturbance, you do not want to build a mile and a half long road through the forest that is essentially the shape of a half moon. And that's what will be required to access all six of these lots from any one of the possible entrance points. It will also, on the other hand, if you allow for the driveways to be constructed on existing roadbeds, you will have, one, a more permeable surface, two, less roadway overall, and three, wildlife can circumvent the areas. Speaking strictly from the perspective of someone whose kids run around and play in this neighborhood every day, I think the consensus of the of the neighbors is that we would all rather have the passage here allocated in sort of smaller areas. One, come through Spring Lane, two on Loblawley, the others from Grassmere Road. Seems like a common sense solution to sort of preserve the natural beauty that we've all come to expect. Um, I think that's that's going to give you all of the benefits um, of the natural beauty and none of the detriments that you would get from this this long road. I understand that there may be some procedural requirements that are required to effectuate that that arrangement. And I think Ethan would probably be would um understandable when it comes to those. The second is consistency with the rural area. Um, this is a special place. Um, you all know that, we know that. Um, if we want to consider whether or not it's possible to have a subdivided property of 21 to 70 acres interspersed among smaller lots of two to five, the answer is yes, and I know that because we're doing it right now. One of the uses for a rural area is for people to live. People live here, people will continue to live here. Look at Spring Hill Farm in the middle. It's been a farm since the 1800s. Um, it's a really special combination of large, estate-sized residential, two to five acre lots. Uh, and we hope to soon welcome some additional neighbors on on larger lots. I would encourage you to be pragmatic. Do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. What you have right now is an opportunity to cement something very close to the property's current use for generations to come. The first part of the presentation this evening highlighted the pitfalls that come if we insist on obtaining perfection in a way that is not commercially viable. And so I would encourage you to accept this as a very good 85% solution uh, in a way that's consistent with the values that I've heard many of you express. I'd certainly welcome the opportunity to answer any questions. Um, I represent 17 of my neighbors, um, and I'm happy to share any of those views if if you're curious.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have anybody else on the signup list, but if anyone else would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and general area of residence.
Good evening. My name is John Hedges and I'm with my wife, uh, the owner of the original Spring Hill Farm, right in the center, 420 Spring Hill Farm. Uh, our property boundary arguably, uh, or our property is arguably most affected by this project because we share the, I think, the longest contiguous boundary with the residue. What are we really talking about here? Six lots and 300 acres. Saw what kind of time you all spent this evening talking about the prior application on which 128 units were put hard by the road. We're talking six lots. That that's a teaspoon. And what's going on? And I don't understand really what the difficulty is with this. 21 acre parcels? That's about as exclusive and as unaffordable as it can possibly get. But that's what the county ordinance requires. As a matter of fact, the applicant, though, we're averaging 50 to 60 acres per lot. That's as low impact as it could possibly get on the land. Driveways notwithstanding. Our property is in land use for both forest and agriculture. And as we heard earlier, as we heard the applicant talk about, the best steward of the land is the landlord. I was out there today removing bad trees, Atlantis trees, from the area that's in forest on my own property. My wife and I work on it every single day. We spend money on it, thousands of dollars a year in fertilizer. That that's coming up soon. Take care of the land. Uh, finally, generally speaking, we support the project. The applicant has been very responsive to the area. He's reached out, he's addressed concerns, and they really care about this project and what it is they're doing. And the best thing the planning commission can do is approve it without any further delay because what are we really accomplishing here with further delay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this matter?
My name is Walter Zirkel.
Sorry, sorry. You might say it one more time.
Walter Zirkel.
Thank you.
I live at 585 Loblawley Lane. Uh, I just think it's a rare circumstance when you have a developer like Ethan, who has worked so closely with the residents that are already there to come up with a plan. And he has changed the plan multiple times to reflect the needs and wants of the current residents. And we have a plan here before you, which we believe is a no brainer. And there may be technicalities that need to be ironed out, but conceptually, what's the holdup here? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Not seeing anyone, anybody online?
No, sir.
All right. Would the applicant like to come up and address any of the comments that were just raised? You don't have to.
Very briefly, um, I I think, as you can see, the the, and I, you know, the the existing residents like this project um, because it can, it preserves the property. Um, and, um, you know, I think, I think it's, uh, um, that's what and that the issue of certainty to them, you know, I think what what Bud Zirkel has said, you know, I've worked with them, they like this project and they'd like to see it approved. But if we have to work on some technical issues, sure, we're willing to do that. But change the rural character of the property, I don't think we're doing that. And again, uh, you know, uh, the 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 issue for them and for Almar County is, you know, what's gonna happen to this property? This is a good use, but if we, if we don't, if if the, if we can't come up with something to do with it, then we'll kick it forward another 10, 20 years and who knows what will happen. But in any case, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And I'm gonna just use some cherished prerogative just to ask a question of staff if I could. In the staff report, there's number three, staff has the following concerns with this request. And forgive me if you stated this before, I've just forgotten. The last sentence of of number three says, including the waiver of section 14 dash 404 of the subdivision ordinance. Can you clarify what that is, please?
Yes, thank you. Uh, that is what they were referring to as a single point of access. That's what we often refer to it as, uh, that they would, that the lots would all be served by one access road. Now, we are not suggesting that's, um, what should happen in this case. We're open to a 404 waiver, but uh, it's not been submitted. And I think for the reasons we pointed out earlier, um, we we need to see what we could support in terms of the access points and go through that additional analysis and criteria in that section of the ordinance. It's not required to be submitted with a special use permit, as I mentioned, but it can be submitted before the plat process.
Great. And then you also say in there, I should have started with this. There are outstanding staff comments and details requested to complete the review of this request. What other ones are there? Is it just the ones we've touched on in terms of relocating lots, shortening driveways, things like that, conservation areas?
Yes, I think, I think that covers it all. I had it on the slide. You know, we we've asked for some additional information. I think what you've seen is, um, you know, just the formatting of the plan and readability and able to confirm some of those things. You know, one example was a detail of the hiking trails. And uh, we're trying to wrestle with, as we do with any SP, what, you know, how much should we, how much do we really need with the SP versus what can be covered by a condition? And we just haven't gotten to that point yet.
You haven't gotten to that yet. Is that what you just said?
Well, right, this, with these plans, yes.
Yeah, gotcha. And then just one last clarification. For for reference, you have included draft conditions which are consistent with prior approved special use permits for the parcel. These are draft potential conditions that could be finalized before the Board of Supervisors. So what you've stated here are amended draft conditions based on today's application that reflect the earlier special use permit conditions. Is that right?
Yes, and I think it may not be all that we need because we are talking about the remainder of the parcel. It's a different application than before, uh, but it was provided as a starting point and background, for background purposes.
Right. And has the applicant had a? And has the applicant had a chance to review those at all and provide feedback? Or is this, this just, they saw it for the first time in the staff report?
They, we did not circulate conditions before the staff report.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you.
If I may, I mean, I did, I did talk with staff about this application before this evening, trying to understand, you know, at the applicant's request, kind of like, what's the process? Why it seems to be taking a long time? And so in speaking to Ms. Ragsdale, part of the, she did give them the option to say, I have some concerns, but you know, if you want to wait longer, then I will give you those notes and then you'll have a chance to revise them. But you wouldn't have been able to come to tonight's commission. In other words, it would have delayed them. And they wanted to get this before the commission and so they chose to come tonight, understanding that she would not have had a chance to do that next round of comments for them to kind of fine tune it so that perhaps we might have come here with a recommendation to support.
Yep.
So I'm just letting you know that that was the applicant's choice. And then we also heard tonight was that the applicant also just wanted to see what we had to say and that they were potentially willing to work on it some more. Then they, then his last closing comment was, well, maybe we'll just wait 20 years or more. I, I mean, I don't think it's like one extreme or the other, a deferral or 20 years. Like that's slow in the county. So I, I just, I would just feel comfortable if I had, if I had the surety that staff had been able to resolve all the comments with the applicant and had, and was ready to recommend approval. Obviously, we can disagree with staff. We can say this is ripe, this is ready. But I've already heard from some of my other commissioners that they don't, haven't had enough time to actually digest this and figure out, is this the right solution? It, I commend the applicant for trying to hurry up and make some changes to make it better. It is better. It's just a question of whether it's ready.
Thank you.
Notwithstanding some of the public comments that it's ready and let's just hurry up. Perfect.
Please.
Yeah, and I think I, I agree with a lot of those comments. I would say that the board of supervisors has got to prove it, right? We recommend.
We're recommending, right.
And there's opportunities to work with staff between now and, and the board of supervisors. And I think the changes are at the margins. There's only so much you can do here with six slots. So there's already, I've, I've seen improvements from what we, the original submission and, and what we're seeing today. And with some further conversations with staff, I believe they can have it ready for the board of supervisors with potentially an approval.
I have a legal, I have a legal question along those lines, not challenging you, but we have what was advertised to the public and then we have what was submitted over the weekend, which presumably the general public did not get to look at. So can you go off of something that isn't the actual submission? That's just a question, not a, not a statement.
Well, it, it has been submitted, it's just not what, what staff has reviewed, so.
But also not what was advertised.
That's correct.
Okay. But it's official because they sent it in. Okay.
Well, well, I would ask staff whether it's been processed and accepted as at CDD at this point. No.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by processed and accepted. I mean, we've received it, we have the documents, so we have not sent it around in terms of reviewing it as a new submission.
Understood. So it's before the commission, but without CDD review.
Okay, that, that was helpful.
Mr. Clayburn, any thoughts?
No, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Kirozana on this. Coming into this, I was kind of learning on the fly, which I don't like doing because I did not have a chance to study the, the new plan. But after we have litigated this for about an hour and a half or two hours, I think I'm in a spot where I would feel comfortable with the applicant working with staff to fine tune anything that needs to happen before the board supervisors meeting. As long as it's, as long as that's susceptible from a legal perspective, so.
I guess one question just to follow up on that is if we were to go that route and we were to say, just hypothetically, we recommend approval with conditions. We have some conditions here, they're incomplete. Would we be concerned about not seeing a complete set of conditions? Would we prefer to see those before they go to the, would the supervisors prefer we see them before they go to them? That's just a question to have in our minds. Otherwise, we're basically recommending approval or recommending denial based on conditions that are not fully reviewed by the applicant or by staff.
Are the conditions going to change much from what we've been discussing here for the last two hours?
I don't know. So, yeah. I just, I'm concerned that the applicants haven't, had only seen these when the staff report came out. And that there may be significant changes.
Haven't been able to make the modifications based on the staff.
Right. And there may be some.
Maybe they have a different opinion and they want to wrestle back with the staff about, okay, we want to change this, but not that.
I guess they could, I mean, that's why a deferral is used, right? Because then they have that opportunity to do that. But anyway, for what it's worth.
Mr. Murray? Yeah, so, so concern I have, and this is a question for staff, is, is there really any practical? If, since these conservation areas are, are part of the lots, right? So they're proposed to be as part of the, are they, are they proposed to be as separate?
They're part of the lot. Conservation area is part, it's like an overlay of the lot.
So they can put a barn in it or something.
Okay, so. So for some of those, I mean, they're not going to be able to put a structure there anyway because it's stream buffer. So you're not really getting anything there. But then in terms of, like, let's say, for example, they, but they, they're not limited to any other use. So for example, if they were to do agriculture, they could clear all the way to the stream because we have no ordinances protecting stream buffers from agriculture. So they could clear the lot from front to back the whole way. And that would be an allowed thing to do, correct?
Well, theoretically, there's not, I mean, I guess I just want to also ask, is there anything that, like, as the applicant said, there's nothing that makes them farm it. Does there, is there anything that prevents them from making a giant lawn out of it? Except for the conservation area? Because that's what a lot of people do in the world. I'm not talking about the character of the people who testified tonight, but you know, they put their big house and then they mow everything down. And that's not the same as.
But is there anything from key term of the conservation area until law? I mean.
The conservation area they'd have to leave alone. That's what they would have to not disturb. The rest of it.
Does, does it say that though? Is it spelled out that they, they have to leave it far as dead?
They could cut down the trees for agriculture, I guess. You know, it's, it's an, it's an, this is still rural area. So they still have to follow the rural area rules.
The only thing these sort of draft conditions say is the location of the conservation easement or areas.
So, so, so my point is, these, these areas are going to be under land use valuation anywhere. They're, they're going to be of an acreage that they're going to automatically qualify for land use, pretty much, as long as they fill in their, their paperwork. So anything they do there is going to be an allowed use. So if they go and they, they clear every tree and convert it to hay, whether it's nominal hay or not, it's still allowed. So there's practically no difference between the areas that are designated as conservation and the areas that are not designated as conservation. They're, they're the same, they're exactly the same. There's no practical difference between the two.
Well, you can't build on the conservation areas.
I, I don't think they're planning to build there anyway. They're planning.
You can't suppose that. I think, I mean, so, so.
Your mic, Mike.
So, I mean, one of the things, so, so, you know, we're in this, so if I might, I don't want to cut you off if you, if you still get, if you still get. So I walked in here sort of being very annoyed because, you know, I don't like to get a bunch of stuff that I can't read before. I'm still annoyed, but I'm at least more positively inclined with the loquaciousness of the, of the applicant. So he's gotten me there in that way. And so I also am, you know, one can do what their land, what one wants to do with their land. Except on this particular place, some, we're saying that some of it's going to be ag and some of it could be forestal, it could be ag forestal. But there's a carve out on it that's going to be a conservation area, which according to, and this may be what I'm asking for him to be, according to the applicant, would be a restricted covenant on the deed. If that happens, I'm cool. Because I do know that it is absolutely a pain and a pain for the entire community to have to look off, look after that, that land. It will go to waste. And I think we have much more, I think we have much more incentive for an individual to use the land and to make sure that it looks good as, as long as he or she is living on that land. Than is, than it is to sort of set it aside and let it be a 300 acre wilderness that no one's going to use until the owner and the owners, and the owner's offspring decide that they're going to, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to log it for some particular reason. I, so I'm actually in a, I'm actually in a positive state as far as, as far as voting yes for this, even though I'm still annoyed, because I think it's, I think it's answered the, my basic question is like, what are you going to, who's going to have responsibility for the unused space? And I, I'd much prefer for the homeowner to have, or the property owner to have that. And basically, can we make that run with the property? If we can make that run with the property with the various exclusion, stay out of this Larry, stay out of here. I'm, you know.
I'm sure it would be a deed restriction. That's how they would structure it.
And that would, and that, I think gets to where I was concerned. Who, who has, who would say over this piece of property at the end of the day?
But I'm, I'm just not sure that deed restriction outside of the one thing of not putting a structure there isn't enforceable.
Well, I think it is. I mean, it, it, well, it's enforce, it's enforceable by a, by a zoning violation, which given the, given the nature of that community, I don't believe they let slackers come by easily. So I do think there will be individuals who sort of, they, they will self, they, they will, they, they were.
Hold one another, Ken.
Yes, that's the right word. Thank you. That's, that's the more appropriate word than what I was going to use. I think we'll get sort of, we'll, we'll get compliance and say this. I think, I think you have enough people there who will ensure that compliance takes place.
So I mean, if someone clears the entire property, so we, you and I know there are large properties in Albemarle County that are cleared from front to back that get land use valuation ostensibly because they're doing hay.
Right.
But because they're, they're farm estates. And if you or I drove past there, we'd look at that and we'd say, yeah, it's a law. It's a law. But, and, and so that, that could very well end up be the situation here. The, the other thing I'll say too, is that if the concern is having, making sure that it's a managed property, why not have five small lots and one really large lot owned by one person that has more likely opportunity of being managed and, and ran as a farm or an agricultural operation?
Well, I think we do. I mean, I think we do. And I, I will also sort of, sort of, you know, so, so while you're, while, while you're sort of offering the, the not charitable case for this community, I'm going to offer the charitable case for this community. And I, I believe that, that they will, they, they will want to be invited to the Christmas party. And so as a result, I think they're going to want to be good neighbors. And so I, you know, I live in an area that's similar to this on another part, in another part of the county. And you know, there is, there is community pressure on you to act right. Unless you're from Connecticut and went to Yale and then you don't, you can do whatever the hell you want to do.
There's also, there's also track record.
Yeah, there is also a track record. And so I, I, I am less concerned about bad behavior here than I would in some other places. So why, as I said, I came and sort of really like snarky, like what is this piece of?
Good question, or more?
Thanks for that. I, I also took a minute to, to kind of realize what was happening with the new lines on the conservation areas and, and it did take a moment. So some of my comments earlier were a little colored by like, what's, wait, wait a second, this is late breaking. But that said, we're all a bunch of smart people up here. We can figure stuff out. So that's what we've done tonight. I do appreciate the applicants done logging over the years in a mindful way. And also that realistically, this is not the size of, of a property where logging can be like one's whole income. For the, I mean, in all likelihood. In this case though, with the logging that's taken place and this responsible way, the, the use value taxation, if we still want to keep talking about this ag forestal economy that we supposedly have, has made that possible. I, I, I also see there's some unrealized divisions from the eighties sitting there that, that never did get divided. And that's right here on this parcel property. Also, just a bigger picture question that you know I'm going to bring up is we have unrealized villages and our capacity for sort of organic mindful growth throughout this county has been stymied. We've lost half the development area that we had back in the early eighties. And so here we are trying to squeeze everything we can into where we are. You know, the county ordinances that we have prevent affordable housing in the rural area. They do. I said this before, you know, the, the median new home build in the rural area is close to a million dollars. Now, well, you know, this commission had a different proposal a while back to build some affordable housing in the rural area and everybody me said no. So, all right.
I wasn't here.
You weren't here.
Thank you. As long as we're just real clear about that.
So today, we have an A or B situation. I do wish there was a C where we could have something, you know, like that, but that's all right, you know? The A here or B here is, is we've got some folks who are aging and keeping the forest going until one day they don't. Or we could, you know, approve sort of six homes that are, that are nice homes that the neighbors are fine with and that add to our tax base in a meaningful way. I'm going to choose B and kind of like the Spring Hill Farm owner, I don't see what the big deal is.
With the money.
I just have a couple of comments, but I just want to make sure everybody's gotten a chance to say their piece. All right. So just a couple of thoughts and then I'll entertain a motion. You know, we spent what, two hours at least talking about this? And I just want to mention something that's kind of obvious. And that is the reason we're spending two hours talking about six lots, which is a teaspoon, to quote somebody who mentioned that, is because of how much we care about the rural areas and the quality and the beauty that allows you to listen to your heartbeat when you're standing on your property. And so that's why we're talking about this stuff. And I think that's absolutely critically important to continue to do that. So appreciate all the time that everybody's spent doing that and the appreciation that we all have for the gift that we have in Albemarle County. Also, you know, from my standpoint, I would support this application. I would want to ensure really more just sort of the, I guess, logistics of this in a sense, or the specifics in that these conditions were well thought out, were actually discussed between the applicant and staff, that there was time to do that and get to a point where there was agreement before it went to the board of supervisors. If that is not possible, then I think it needs to come back to us somehow. So I would say somehow having the ability to talk through this as a, as an applicant and a staff would be, would be an important aspect because I wouldn't want either one to not be adequately represented.
So is that a question for the staff as to whether they believe there's time to do that before going to the board?
This item is not scheduled for the board of supervisors and scheduling it for the board of supervisors, we're not limited, we, we have control of when it gets scheduled and we're not forced, you know, not forced. But the ordinance provides the provision and certainty for the applicant in terms of how soon they can have a public hearing with the planning commission. They can elect to go within the timeframe established in, in the ordinance. But for the board, it's much flexible timeframe. I would ask if you're recommending, you know, if you're leaning towards a motion to recommend approval, that we just take a minute and make sure that we are clear on any additional comments that you may have or just acknowledge what you're okay with. But staff, you know, it's not uncommon for staff to need to clarify conditions in terms of the intent of the conservation areas, for example, and make sure it's clear what can be allowed in those. And then these conditions before add additional restrictions on agriculture in relation to stream buffers that would not, not be, you know, these conditions are adding to and applying things that wouldn't be applicable to agricultural uses otherwise. And it actually doesn't allow agriculture in the floodplain. So it is more restrictive in that regard. And, you know, we, anything that goes from the commission to the board, especially in this circumstance, would be tweaked a little bit, wordsmith, we may need to add to clarify things. But if you're recommending, the, the other thing is the reference in these conditions is to the February 20th plan and not the March plan. We would update something like that, for example. But if you're not asking for things like driveways to be reduced, as an example.
Would you mind going back to the applicant's plat, please, that they showed for us? The bigger one, thank you.
So just to be clear, I mean, I think part of your debate, I've heard you talk about was, for example, lot three and the driveway going through the buffer and over to the other spot there. Are you guys looking for us to like try and still move some of these building lots around? Or are you all feeling that with the conditions on the, with the conservation areas and some of the restrictions that they have, that the layout is something that you can agree with and that we're really trying to work on the conditions?
I mean, I'll speak for myself. I didn't see unless they're missing it, that there's anything in here in your draft conditions that talk about moving any of the parcels.
Well, I mean, we were trying at one point to move towards having 21 acres and larger lots. So it sounds to me like what I'm hearing you say is basically the layout that's basically shown here is something that you all support. So it sounds to me like what I'm hearing you say is basically the layout that's basically shown here is something that you all support. It's the conditions. It's not, because our concerns, our concerns were lengths of driveways, encroachments in the stream buffer. Some of the, you know, the, the relatively, uh, using the development lots across the whole parcel. As opposed to try to concentrate the more in one area and leave a larger parcel. My understanding where you all stand now is it's not really the, you don't have an objection to the distribution shown on this plat. It's getting the conditions right. Is that, is that fair?
That's fair for me, but I don't know if I'm speaking for everybody.
For me as well.
I think there's, we wanna, we wanna, but my understanding is that the, that the submission that was made in February, is that correct?
This is the one, uh.
March.
Was made in.
Yeah, this was, this was, the one you saw on the screen came to you, came to us on Sunday afternoon.
Okay, it's got a March 22nd date.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So, um. This is, uh, the latest, uh, application plan or concept plan rather that was emailed to us. And, uh, you know, like I said, it is flawed in some ways in terms of compliance with the ordinance, which your action tonight does not waive. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that, um, there are some ordinance conflicts.
And those being?
The 404 waiver and then the location of, uh, any, you know, this is not an approval of a 404 waiver. This is not an approval of your action of, uh, critical slopes waivers. And it's also not an approval of disturbance to the stream buffer, uh, that's not, not permitted. So we just wanted to make sure that was clear. That was in the staff report, but we want to cover what this action does and doesn't do.
You mentioned the.
Or recommendation.
Critical slopes. I didn't think there was a, right, we're in.
Wait, wait, unless you wanted to speak to deferral.
I wanted to speak to deferral.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, this has been very helpful, uh, the, the, you know, when I, when I, earlier in my presentation, I said. And we were, we were going around with staff and I very much wanted to hear what the commission had to say. I've listened to all you tonight. I think I've got the sense of it, although there are a couple of issues that, 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 uh, that I wasn't, I'm not quite sure I got the consensus of. For example, I'm not sure where you folks are in terms of, do you want only 21 acres and one big common area? Or do you, are you comfortable with this? That I'd like to know. But in terms of the applicant is, is, is willing to, the applicant would like to request deferral to work on some of these little issues. Um, which I think when it come back to you relatively soon, work with the staff, work on the conditions, we're happy to do that. Um, having heard what you folks say, but I, I think we can certainly, there's, there's, there's no problem. If you don't, for example, if the commission says, we don't like the driveway to lot three, well, then we'll move it.
And I think you, I think you've heard what, what we've said specifically. So thank you.
The most important issue that I need to hear tonight is, uh, the, the staff was pushing towards 21 acre lots. As opposed to the large lots that we had and, and gentlemen, that's what, that's what we were dealing with. Um, the staff didn't like the large lots, that concept. The staff wanted, uh, more of the rural preservation concept with, with 126 acres in, in lots and the rest and, and that's, that's a.
So you want, you're looking for clarity on that.
We need clarity on that because this is very different. And you know, we can realistically, we can work with, we can work with either. Um, but we need to know what the commission thinks and we'll do essentially what the commission, if the commission says do this, then we're willing to do it. So anyway, so we request defer, but we'd like some clarification on.
He's asking, he's asking for.
I'm sorry, go ahead. But we, we request defer, but we'd like with that defer, we'd like some clarification if this, if the commission would be willing to do so. Uh, to express their view on that issue. So that we go back to staff, we're not arguing with them over what is the commission want. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to say, uh, like, um, I do, uh, would like some of the driveways to be shorter. I'm not asking for all the driveways to have the lot sticking right on the road. To be clear, it can be set back. There's a lot of land to work with here. But I would like the driveways to not like, you know, three, for example, is really quite long. I'm com- I'm comfortable with the applicant working with the staff on that. I don't need to sit here on the dais and prescribe a driveway length. Okay. But I'm just saying that. Uh, you know, that would be more in keeping with the county's policy of not over fragmenting the rural area. Understand, I, I'm gonna have a long discussion again about logging roads and how long they take to close in. Okay?
I, I think what I'm hearing you all say is that we should work for a reasonable layout of the house site. We're not striving for maximizing a single parcel to, and minimizing their, you know, the remainders to 21 or 25 acres.
I think we're comfortable with their conservations, uh, you know, their conservation area.
And we can, we can massage the conservation areas to make sure those work. So.
But yeah, what, what I would add is that so the March 22nd, 2025 proposal. Got a lot better.
Right.
Understood. It's in the direction that.
Go from there.
We, yeah, go from there. Make your comments based on that. Work with the applicant.
Agreed.
On what you're, on the 322.
And the 404 waiver, if you feel it's appropriate.
But I think it's at the margins where we're talking about.
Yeah.
I appreciate, I think we have a very good direction. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, uh, so we're clear. I'm not, I am not looking for a 21 acre.
We understand.
Cookie cutter lots. So that's not where I'm standing.
Yeah.
I want to be real clear about that one.
I think we're, I think we're in agreement on that.
So, okay, great. I will just, just express the minority opinion. Um, I, I don't need 21 acre lots, but I do think there would be value in having one of the lots much larger. Um, and not, not as a conservation lot or a conservation area, not managed by anyone, but by owned by one person. So that one large remainder lot could be, could be managed as a large lot. I know I'm the minority in this, but I'll throw that out there.
But don't they have to have a minimum of 21 acres? So you, you, you can only get so large with this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if you reduce the size of the other lots, you end up with one remainder lot that's much larger.
I don't know.
I mean.
If, if I, yeah, I don't know. Cause I don't, I don't know the unicorn landowner who's gonna be the, you know, the John Muir of land ownership. I, you know, like this is a nice idea, but I don't.
But, but I was gonna.
I don't know that that's true.
Well, what I, what I was gonna say here is that the applicant and staff have heard our rich and deep conversation. And, and thoughtful. And, and, and I think we've heard from the, we've heard from the applicant that the applicant would request a deferral to some time in the future. Um, can we, can I ask us to vote on that, please?
I would love to do that. Would someone like to make a motion?
Just one last question, um. Um, we could defer to a date specific and therefore not have to go through the advertisement. I'm thinking, you know, um. Two months, like late May, we're in late March, the late May or early June would be a good time to come back to the planning commission.
I think it will take us that long. I think we can be back in, in 30 days. We can be ready to do that, whether the commission has room for hearings.
We're having a difficult time hearing you, mister.
I'm sorry. Um, I think we can be back in 30 days. I think these issues can be resolved relatively quickly with staff. Uh, we certainly are able to react quickly. So it's just a matter of, uh, simulating what we heard tonight and changing the plan. And coming back to you. I mean, we can do it relatively quickly. I don't think we need two months.
I just don't know what our agenda is. That's.
Sure.
Yeah, there might be other people than you.
Put you in.
Put you in.
So just give us.
The date. We could accommodate, we could accommodate them on May 13th.
May 13th?
May 13th, okay. Is that the forest school application day?
No, that's gonna be a very long hearing. I don't think you should do that.
No, that's a bad one to do it on. Uh, May, May 27th would be a good day to do it.
27th? That gives plenty of time for staff to also, staff needs to write up their comments to you and give them to you and then you respond, right?
Okay.
I'm just asking. It's all written down. There's no anything lost in translation.
I mean, as long as the applicant is requesting deferral to May 27th.
Exactly.
I moved that the planning.
Okay, fine. We'll, we'll request a, a referral to May 27th. That'd be.
Thank you very much for accommodating our schedule.
Thank you. I know. Now you're, you're going slow and now we're going too fast. I motion to accept the applicant's request for deferral to the planning commission, uh, meeting of May the 27th. And using the, um, March 22nd submission as a basis for revisions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. New discussion. All right, can we have the roll, please?
Okay.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Um.
Hi.
Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Vivens?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to committee reports. Any commissioners have any updates?
Sure. All right, the, um. The, the Croze Community Advisory Committee, um, met and, um, they covered a lot of the same ground that we did. Um, they talked, um. You know, they, they talked about the, um, the conference of plan and in terms of thrive economies. So there's not really a lot I could convey there that you haven't already heard. Um, but one of the things that was interesting to me that came up from matters in the public is they had, um. Um, someone from the fire department that was there in the audience and, and they brought up the, the issue of, um, electric vehicles. And one of the things that really places, was putting a lot of more demand on them was that. When, uh, you have a vehicle fire with an EV, those fires are a lot more intense.
Yep.
And something that I never really thought about before in terms of the impact on fire services.
That's interesting.
And you also, it's not that they're more intense. They also take different, they take different materials to put them out. So you, you just can't spec, oh, I'm gonna go hook up, hook up to the hydrant. Throw it, throw some water on that bad boy.
Cause it's like a hazmat?
Yeah.
Yeah, like nickel and whatever is in it.
The other reports?
Uh, I've got two more technically. Um, one is the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee met. Uh, it was mostly presentations. I think at this time of the year, we're all kind of like, what are we actually doing here? Um, but there was a nice presentation about, uh, LIDAR, this, uh, sort of test system that is happening in the county. Yeah. At four different intersections, uh, basically using, uh, it's like radar but light instead of radio.
Yeah.
Um, and so you might've read about it in Sean Tubbs' news product or otherwise, but, uh, it's kind of cool. Um, it's not actually being used for any enforcement at this time, but it's just kind of being tested. Uh, the other is technically the RIO 29 CAC met, but it was just part of the, uh, budget presentation at the center. And, um, there's a robust conversation about taxes. Not all anti-tax.
Yeah, right, yeah. The others?
I don't know. We went to the CAC, but you can report if you want it.
Well, I can keep it quick because it's just to piggyback on what Commissioner Morton said. So it was a, a town hall and it was about the budget. Um, and, um, I thought it was interesting. I mean, it was, first of all, I learned a lot in the initial. Where you could sort of walk around to different booths and talk to different people. I learned a ton about different things.
Yeah, I like that format.
Yeah, me too. Um, planning, I mean.
Meet the staff.
Yeah, uh, yeah, parks and rec, police. I mean, it was, there was a lot of really interesting discussion. There were, let's see, I guess the online comments were a little bit more about why are we spending so much money? Um, why are you raising your, our tax assessments and also raising our taxes? And there was an interesting comment about the legal requirement of keeping tax assessments up to date, basically.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's state law on how you assess a property. You can't.
So that was helpful to share.
There are brokes for people whose income is not robust.
Right. So that, other than that, it was.
Can I chat really quick after I told you to do it? Um, I was so excited about, um, the fact that we're going to continue, um, spending on police and fire and rescue. That we did a lot of expansion with grants, but that we are going to continue as a county to underwrite that. And that's why the taxes are going up four cents.
Yep.
On a hundred dollars, but, um, we now have, uh, paramedic coverage 24/7 in our rural fire stations. Cause you know what? People hurt themselves after five o'clock. So I'm just really excited about that. Fires too, a lot of them are at night. So it's really great to, to get the extra coverage, police and fire and rescue. So I'm all for it.
And we're transitioning out of volunteers too, because our volunteers are.
Yes, because it's hard to, it's hard to find people who can just go at a moment's notice. We're just in the rural area waiting for the alarm.
I think besides that too, the, part of the factor I learned as well, not to make this go too long, but, um, is that the requirements to be a volunteer firefighter have gotten really pretty thick. I mean, ongoing training for months and months and months. And, uh, you know, it's hard to get people who have that kind of time.
Our neighbors actually entertained at one point in my neighborhood that let's get an old fire truck and we'll, you'll get some water from the James. We'll put out our own fires. We'll make our own little, and they looked up all the rules.
Yeah.
Like, we can't do this. Crazy.
Mutual aid is not quite the answer for fire.
Someone's house is burnt down.
Any other committee reports?
Sorry.
All right, we have four, four supervisor meetings to be updated on.
Really, and three of those were, the first three were budget work sessions. The only one that'll make you excited was March 19th. And that was an extremely quick evening. We got out by seven o'clock. Um, it was, uh, the Charles, Charlesville Community Church, the parcel was down by Avente, down on about 20 south. Was before that it got passed six to nothing.
Okay.
Um, the, the buffer issue between the.
The, the vanity?
Yes, between the, you know, vanity and the, the, um, and the church. Um, I think it's sort of getting resolved. It sounds like the subdivision is like actually coming back and planting some of their stuff. Some people were a little bit upset about it, but I think, and there was talk about moving the road off the property line. But it feed, the, the private driveway on that church's property feeds the, the house behind it. So it has to really tie in at the same spot. So ended up a little bit of talk, but it eventually passed six to, six to nothing. But that's the real item from the board to update you on.
Thank you. Discussion and vote on May 6th.
Well, it doesn't, I'm so sorry. It doesn't say vote. It shouldn't say vote here. Um, basically, what I'd like to, can I have the, um, the screen, please? Isn't that nice?
We're getting really wild in our habitat here as a county.
So.
In the back.
It's right to the back of that property of the conservation.
What I'm showing here in the green is the, um, calendar to finish us up for the, um. Uh, 10 chapters of the conference of plan. And what I've highlighted in yellow there are planning commission dates for, um, the remaining items. Obviously tonight we had community facilities. Um, what I would like to request is a special meeting outside of our normal, um. Rhythm of meetings, and that would be on May 6th. So that we can have an extended discussion on transportation and that would be at 6:00 PM. On the 6th. I don't know if you all could check your calendars and if that is generally acceptable, we have quorum. I'll, I'll ask the chair to, to call a special meeting. You don't need to vote on it.
Yeah, I think it's on our calendars.
Yeah, we, we, we actually, um, we sent you out an invite, but I just wanted to double check verbally because we hadn't really done that.
So I would.
Oh, but I have it at four. Oh, no.
And the procedure would be for the chair to call a special meeting because it's not previously on the, uh, commission's calendar. So I, do I just essentially call a special meeting on May?
May 6th at, at 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. And, and what you would do is you'd spend, you'd send out a notice. Staff can help you with that. Great, thank you.
That's fine.
Okay.
No, that was a question too. Historic, cultural and scenic resources and community resilience, are they both on the 13th?
Yes, sir. We'll do those on the 13th. And you see us trying to wrap up with the board of supervisors here on, uh, beginning of June.
So are those two a works on, during the work session?
We'll, we'll, yes, we'll take them all. Well. We, we will, it will, we'll make it get through all that day. If we, we might push into the six o'clock period to, to finish it up as needed.
Got it. All right.
I'll be calling none, but I think I already sent that. You guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be in Mexico with my margarita, but I'll be thinking about.
Excellent. Thank you. They have Zoom there. They have Zoom there.
I, I think my husband will divorce me if I do a PC.
I'll just throw out a new, this isn't really new business, but I just, um, staff and I kind of chatted about potential draft topics for planning commission briefings. So, um, I just threw together some, and this was, these are all draft, subject to change. If there's something missing, just email me, I guess, and let me know.
The ones for council?
Here's an extra.
And staff?
You're.
This is the same thing we had the other day?
I kind of added a couple of things under transportation.
After I heard the cat presentation on Lupe.
And we don't have to talk about this now, but just take a look at it and see what you think.
Like 30 minute briefing, like in a work session.
And generally, I think one of the things.
Economic development or those kinds of things.
One of the things that I was, I was thinking about how to respond to this, we do make similar presentations to the board. Uh, for example, we do a quarterly report on transportation. And I think maybe one way for us to sort of like provide you guys some of the information you're asking that we're already providing to the board. Is to send you the boards, the, the presentation we make to the board. Uh, maybe even give you the link to the board presentation so you can.
Yeah.
Sort of watch the, and that might be a great way to do, um. sort of watch the, and that might be a great way to do um, capacity to catch you guys up on a lot of these issues or we're, we're working, if the board's asking for something and save, yet still save time for on the commission's agenda as well as, you know, staff's resources to prepare for agenda items, but still keep you up to date on, on topics that you're interested in. That was a, that was a good idea from one of my staff members.
Good. That's good.
Yeah, I think if we can do double duty, it's great, but we would get, I wouldn't say quarterly, but we would get um, reports or transportation, housing um, on occasion. And it's just, it's been a while since like a lot of the, we haven't had, so.
Some things are worth discussing.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, I'm fine doing double duty, but there's a benefit of them coming and we can ask questions and then have a conversation where we couldn't do that if we're just watching it on. So that it was, it was kind of a, something that we did as a matter of course where
Before
we would
BM before Michael.
Yeah. So I would love to see that come back and maybe not all of these and some of these we can certainly, but um, yeah, we haven't had that in a while. We haven't had transportation one or housing or, and I think that's why that some of these were pent up.
Yeah.
That, we hadn't heard, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business, old business or items for follow-up? All right, hearing none, I will adjourn the planning commission until April eighth, twenty twenty-five uh, at four PM. And I will not be here for that, but it'll be in the capable hands.